It's all data.
The I T and yeah.
Yeah.
I T guys.
Ready to start the board supervisors meeting. For January seventeenth, two thousand twenty four, we will start with the pledge allegiance.
Like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item on the agenda is. Fiscal year twenty three nonprofit budget presentations.
That's a correction fiscal year twenty five nonprofit.
Oh, it is twenty five, of course.
It's no, you read it correctly.
It's it's like in the movie Anchorman, when they said whatever you put on the telephone.
I'd be the same way, too. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. All right, we just want to start.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair members of the board. So again, we got nonprofit presentations. So we had, we tried to break it up between the two meetings. So we had, we had planned for six. I think we only have, we have two here to present this evening. So. I think for a matter of time, so Legal Aid Justice Center, they are not here this evening to present. So if we want to move down to B, we have Piedmont, Virginia Community College here to present. Then we've got Dr. Jean Runyon, and then the Flavanna representative, Dr. Lang. So if we want to start with Piedmont, we can kind of get moving on on those presentations.
Okay, great. Let's do it. You all ready?
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Again, I would like to recognize Dr. Fred Lang, who is on our college board, and Dr. Scott Jemreese is our Vice President of Finance and Administrative Services. And so at Piedmont Virginia Community College, we are really.
Yeah, you just let me know when you go to the next slide, sorry.
Really excited to be the community's college. As you know, we've celebrated fifty years of excellence and impact. And as we're continuing to look forward to the future, really focusing on making sure that all of our pathways lead to a job. So if a student comes to us to earn a credential, it leads to a job. An associate degree, it leads to a job, or it leads to transfer to a four-year institution that then results in a bachelor's degree that leads to a job. So we take our role as a community college very seriously. So I wanted to go ahead and share just a little bit by location. When you think about the city of Charlottesville and the six counties that we serve, you see that ten percent of our headcount are residents of Savannah. And we dive just a little bit deeper by the numbers. We think about our student headcount who enrolled in credit courses are just over almost sixty five hundred students. And when we think about the number of Savannah residents that are attending school, we have about six hundred and forty seven individuals who attended Piedmont Virginia Community College in the year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. And again, that's ten percent of our overall populations, our credit population. We're really excited that of the Flavanna County High School graduates, twenty three percent of them came along and finished and to work at Piedmont Virginia Community College. And if we go a little bit further, we also have a presence in the Savannah Correctional Center for Women with thirty six students, and it's always a privilege to come to the commencement ceremonies and recognize their accomplishments as well. We have residents who also come to workforce services to earn short-term industry credentials or customized training. And of the one hundred and fifty that pursued those services in the last year, eighty one earned college credentials and thirty six earned industry credentials. And a lot of the residents take classes online, most likely because of the distance and the opportunity for access that online courses do provide. We're super excited about our partnership with dual enrollment. If, when we look at the numbers of last year, we had a hundred and eighty seven dual enrollment students earning thirteen hundred college credits, which saved the parents over two hundred thousand dollars in tuition. We do not charge tuition for our dual enrollment students. And when it comes to local funds, it's really important, the contributions that you all make really help us, help make us to be in an excellent institution and to be able to provide the services and support we need for our students. I'll turn it over to Scott.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. As you mentioned here, when it comes to local funds, it does help our support programs expenses are not paid through state funds. Being one of twenty three community colleges, Virginia Community College System, our funding model for our operating budget is pretty similar to like a school divisions, K twelve school divisions budget. You get a portion from the state, a portion from the locality. For us, we get a portion from the state and then tuition. But the local budget that we get and we're here to for our formal request, it does help kind of fill in some some budget gaps to help support, do enrollment support in terms of advising, counseling, staff. It also helps some auxiliary services in terms of parking safety measures, and every little bit helps. As one of twenty three in the V C C S, the Virginia Community College system really is funded in the twenty third percentile in in Virginia. And so every little bit helps for us in terms of operating budget. Next slide here, you kind of see breakdown within our service region. As Dr. Ryan mentioned, Charlottesville and the six counties surrounding us. You kind of see how it's broken down based off our projections for enrollment trends and what that means for our total local request budget for F Y twenty five. And so you see highlighted there, the portion. So right now, we're forecasting out to be about twelve percent. If y'all can do anything you can do to increase that percentage, that'd be great for us. It'd be great for you, too, because it's a great place to be. Proud of of the students that we get from Flavanna County and citizens. So. That is our formal ask here, and then we will finish up with. Really, our commitment here, we think about what makes P V C C excellent, what we're striving for. So you see it's access completion, community impact. We're committed to that. And Dr. Ryan, if you wanted to wrap up with anything or.
Just want to say we really value the partnership that we have with Flavanna County, and we look forward to continuing to serve the residents of the county the best we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Is. Are counties mandated in the state of Virginia to con- to contribute a percentage of the funding? Okay.
No, it's not like the requirement of K twelve. It is not. And actually, it varies by different community colleges and what relation they have with with localities. And so. Some have a whole lot more that they get from locality, some don't get anything from locality. And so what has been traditionally the arrangement here between P V C C and the service there has been a consistent difference.
Thank you.
So. And I was just doing some quick math here. It looks like y'all are taking. It's about ten point nine, an average of ten point nine, based on, like, if you divide the money you're asking up Flavanna by the number of projected students, it's averages out to about ten point nine per locality. Is that on average per? I only got through the first three, but looks like it's trending that way. Okay, um, does that include so? And I work with you all at FUMA through our dual enrollment program as well. Always a great experience. I appreciate all that you do. Does this include the dual enrollment figure? So if a student at Flavanna dual enrolls at P V C C, does that six forty four include in that figure? Is this just on campus numbers?
That's included.
It's included. Okay.
Hey, think about the return on investment for that, too, in terms of the savings that each family is getting that would be originally associated with the cost. What the school division would not be charged for that as well as only getting fees. As was mentioned before, it's a no brainer for students to start at P V C C. They can transfer out, be successful, come up to that return on investment is huge. So from a fiscal agent perspective, I know you have a lot of really important decisions to make in terms of the county's market. But you think about the future, and you think about the economic investment that is the students and your citizens here, the return on this investment is, I'm not trying to get all shark tankish. But it really is a great investment.
I just have one more question. It's not really budget oriented, but since it was in your presentation. And I know it says PVC supports the legal or the goal of the governor to ensure that. So I understand it's his goal, but you're all supporting it. So it says all high school students graduate with either associate or other. We hear a lot today about how there's a lot of conversation about not everybody needs to go to college. The workforce needs a lot of people who go to work and and go into the trades and so on. So. That almost seems contrary to say that all, hopefully all students graduate and then go on to get a degree of some sort.
Well, it's not just a degree. It'd be like an industry credential. So have students who come to us for C D L, so they'll leave with a C D L license. So there are shorter term credentials. We all actually partnered with Savannah and all of our, except for Buckingham, to submit a lab school present of proposal to bring students from the counties to our new Bullock Center that opens up in advanced manufacturing. And so that, hopefully that will be approved, too, because it is a pathway for students who do not necessarily want to earn an associate degree or need to, but they want to go into the workforce in some of those areas that you just mentioned.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, two of the previous I T people in the county had went to P V C C to get their initial skills. Transitioning in from other fields, whether it's helicopter mechanic or emergency services.
I mean, I can give you a personal experience. My son went through the workforce program when he got a high school to get a welding certification and through the program. And so it certainly does a lot of, you know, even like, you know, trade related degrees too and certifications.
And do a lot of things, H V A, vintage culture.
Yeah.
Right. Kind of stuff, a lot of good programs, emergency services.
That's a huge part of the governor's initiative. It's not just to go get the woman credits it is for workforce credentials and getting ready for what they determine their success to be and moving forward and a little bit else. So.
Yeah, yeah, great. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you much for the opportunity.
Yeah.
And then the.
Yeah. You guys are ready.
Yeah, you're next on the list. Yep, no, you're fine. And this is Sarah Parr. Yes.
I have my coworker here, Billy. I'm sorry, I said. She is going to be our new development officer at Hospice Piedmont, so you guys will see her in the future and not me, because I am the worst at presenting. Already. So thank you guys again for your time.
And ju- just one thing, just if you all would be up close to the mic, because this is all on YouTube and we want to make sure we get all the audio and everything.
Sure. Now, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So again, my name is Sarah Grace Parr. I'm from Hospice of the Piedmont, and thank you guys so much for meeting with us. Go to the next slide, please. Hospice Piedmont has served over one hundred and thirteen different patients in Flavanna County, and not only that, we have also given five thousand five hundred patient days. This doesn't include our family that have had our bereavement services, kids who have had, you know, attended child grief camps and workshops. I will say that Flavanna County is where I'm from, and I asked so gradually from Piedmont, by the way, shout out to you guys. And it is so, so wonderful to have a grief service here that is accessible that I didn't even know existed when I was residing in Flavanna County. We also have a palliative medicine service. So the difference between palliative and hospice services is that palliative, we can actually have our patients go and have curative treatments. Hospice and palliative have been working together to provide education to our community and provide those care for this patient. In addition, we have Hospice Piedmont Education, where we provide educational talks to, you know, communities, churches, whoever really requests them, and we're one of the only hospices in Virginia that certifies nursing credits to our staff. Oh, I absolutely, I'm sorry, I forgot. Hannah right there, that's Hannah Barton. She's our community navigator. She actually will call and check on the community members, make sure they have access to any services regardless of their affiliation with Hospice Piedmont, just to help them navigate. We also have the Grief and Healing Program, where it's bereavement services, not only for people who have lost a loved one. As you can see, there's also ones for people who have lost pets, who have lost spouses. There's hybrid versions. There's also in-person, in-person meetings, and we hold memorial events as well. Our Kids' Grief and Healing Camp, that's me, by the way, guys, is held twice a year. We have one in our northern region and one here near Charlottesville at our Camp Friendship. This is Almora County. We do day camps, and I will tell you that those camps are life-changing. I picked up a little girl who actually resided in Flavanna County. She didn't have a ride. We went to that camp, and when we walked in, she was scared, alone, and not a hundred percent sure of, you know, anybody sharing this grief with her. When she left, she was bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, and she actually talked me into stopping and getting candy. So. Very lovely program. Volunteers play an essential role in at Hospice Piedmont. Half of our, not staff, but obviously they're volunteers, but our staff and volunteers are equal. We have the same amount of volunteers as we do staff. We offer services like beyond our veterans for our veterans who are getting hospice services. We have death duels, which is a new program, pet therapy, our eleventh hour Virgil respite care, and also companionship volunteers. We also have inpatient care facilities, both the hospice house and the acute care center. The hospice house is our home away from home for patients, for patients who don't have, you know, means to have round-the-clock care. Our inpatient acute center is right there on Ivy Road, and for not only the patients who need a break, you know, who need inpatient care, but also for the caregivers who need a break from that twenty-four-hour care. So that's available. We are so grateful for y'all's consideration, and we do appreciate your time. And again, my name is Sarah Grace Parr. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Palliative care, when did you start that program?
Palliative care, we started in two thousand and one fully. We kind of did a silent launch of it in two, in twenty twenty, but obviously something happened in twenty twenty called COVID, so we couldn't do a full one, but. It's grown at least twenty one percent in last six months even. So it's providing not only the palliative services, but also referrals to our hospice programs.
And Camp Friendship is in Flavanna, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's what I meant to say. So we have Camp Friendship, and we also do triple C. I'm thinking of triple C, excuse me.
Didn't you say grew up here?
No, well, I grew up in Shadwell, but I lived at the lake for the majority of my adulthood.
Who knows fifty-three well.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So you've got to request them for three thousand. What's your operating income and operating expenses for the year?
I will tell you that our operating cost looks a lot worse on paper than it is for real, because our palliative and other programs are philanthropy, philanthropy run. So our grief and healing services, our kids' grief and healing, it's a hundred percent philanthropy. So even though we do charge fee for service and per diem rates as a hospice, we do not provide those without philanthropy. So.
You said one hundred and thirteen. Individuals in Flavanna serviced. Is that since you've been working here or was that in the past, like, year or?
That was fiscal year twenty.
Fiscal year twenty.
And those are just patients. Again, that doesn't include the bereavement services we provide to caregivers. It doesn't include the sessions for children or people who've lost.
Well, there's a lot of cross, you know, cross as well, too. My mother was at the, at the house.
At the hospice house, a beautiful facility.
She lived in Almora, so, you know, still serving.
It's also available to anybody in any county. We have a twelve-county service area, but Hospice House has been known to take people from different states even, you know, depending on.
Been there to pick people up.
Yeah.
Oh, they're so.
My mother.
Our nurses are, are angels, for sure.
It's my, my father, on his last day of life, they transported him there, and it, it was. It was a game changer.
Yeah.
The experience we had, how they kind of got him settled. And and that, they made us settled. It was, it was almost a, a positive moment, because it was relief for him and all of us. And that's, I credit so much that to the staff.
Right.
So.
Yeah, our, our staff, again, is, is amazing. Hospice House, like it says in the, in the PowerPoint, it's a home away from home that not only give the patient comfort, but family members and loved ones as well.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And again, sorry for jumping on.
So that's it. So, yeah, for nonprofits, yeah, we had, like I said, just Piedmont and Hospice of the Piedmont showed up this evening, and the other four could not make it. So. So if we want, like I said, I'm happy to pull up any of the other budget requests for them. Again, I can't specifically answer any specific questions for the, for those requests. But if, if you don't want to go through any of those, we can break and go into closed session before the six o'clock meeting starts.
We've got a little bit of time. Is there anything, anybody else want to discuss that maybe?
Well, as I was reading through these, a lot of them looked like overlap with other programs. And now that I'm on C P M T and social services, there seemed to be a significant overlap. So I'm wondering, why aren't they taking the services from social services, C P M T, C S A program? Why is a nonprofit in there trying to fill the hole or duplicate something that already exists?
I, I, I mean, I think that a lot of these organizations provide services that complement and supplement the work that C P M T and social services is doing. I mean, the reality is, so social services, I'm sure, first, how you are kind of overwhelmed with their job to begin with.
I went through that brief in the day.
There's definitely, you know, this other part that's there. You know, example-ready kids work, you know, to help kids get prepared early on. Hospice of the Piedmont, certainly social services and providing hospice services. So there's a lot of complementary services, I guess, that they work with together. You'd have to be more specific and say, here's this overlap. And then they get that, to get that answer, and I wouldn't be able to give you that answer.
No.
And the other thing that I found remarkable when I was going through both their orientations is both the C S A and the social services stress that they have regional and statewide oversight of the money that they're allocating for different programs, whereas you may not have that oversight at a nonprofit.
Boy. Well, Ready Kids was a good example, because I noticed also. Part of one sentence is regarding who they're counseling. It's victims of child abuse neglect, exposure to domestic violence, under trauma survivors. And having a number of years ago been on C P M T for a, a number of years. It certainly is a lot of what we did. And I just, I meant to call Kim today and yeah, ask her thoughts on overlap and so on, and just didn't get around to it.
And then one of them, it caught my eye. They used the terms blended and braided, and that was in Brian Moeller's presentation to me. And that was, what, three days ago, Monday? So when I see the same words or the same slide deck, I'm like, it just makes you wonder why, you know, that'd be like the, you know, each department in the county having their own nineteen person. Makes you go, well, why wouldn't we centralize this?
The person to answer those questions would be somebody like Brian to tell you that, yeah. So, you know, one of the, what's the?
The social services.
Well, I was talking to that, too, but. What's the, that's the interview.
Oh, Sherry Stater.
Oh, the group, foothills.
Yeah, yeah. For example. You ask the Sheriff's Department what they think of foothills, and they'll tell you why it's an important service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I think a lot of these services, I mean, I know some of those similar questions have been asked over the years, and, and I know some of the answers were, they may not be like an overlap like this. Some of them may have a little, a little collaboration in what they do, or maybe a tiny bit of overlap. But I think, I think what, what's been heard over the years is mostly there's separate services, and maybe they treat a different, a different clientele a little bit. But again, without having specific examples or having anyone specifically here to answer those, I, I can't answer anything specific on those.
And some have stronger footprints and presence in different areas as well, too. Like, yeah, Chip has a presence here in Flavanna, which, you know, maybe you don't get from another group that doesn't have it here, but still comes out best, I think, so.
And, and honestly, I think a lot of these nonprofits, too, I mean, from, from individual board members, I think. Again, I'm sure a lot of these folks, if, if you wanted to sit down and really dig into what they do and meet with them, I'm sure they'd be happy to kind of discuss and and go through kind of what is their direct population. Again, you know, these meetings are good. It's kind of to come and give a high level overview of of what, what each nonprofit does and kind of what the request is. It's kind of hard to really kind of dig into really understanding really the population that they serve, whether it's young, old, and and kind of what the needs are.
Is, is region ten, would it be safe to say it's comparable as far as relationship to the state and to the counties to T J P D C? And that is it? I mean, it's. You're going to be a part of a region, although we, we had to fund them. It's directed that you have those planning districts in place, right? That's by the state. We could not have a planning district commission.
Yeah, the, I mean, the Region Ten Community Services Board, I mean, I mean, yes, I think.
A creature of state.
Yeah, it's a creature of state, but they also, I mean, excuse me, yeah, I mean, like, for instance, you know, they serve, you know, Almora, on the city of Charlottesville and stuff like that. So, yeah, I mean, so there are kind of a a regional entity a little bit from this particular region ten. I think probably, I can tell you, Mr. Moeller would be able to tell you more about Region ten.
Region ten was part of the four pieces of the C S A.
Region ten is, is affiliated with, with C S A and kind of some programming. So there, there is overlap, and there's a lot of time where, like, C S A and what they do, they will, because they necessarily can't provide the services. C S A doesn't provide the services, and sometimes social services and the schools can't provide the services after, like, for instance, through C S A, Region ten is a partner as part of the C S A program.
Gotcha.
I can tell you what Region ten used to do. Man, they got way back when COVID happened. But they used to supply service in the community, in the school system that was in doubt. If we had a child for lack of better term, was it?
Yeah.
We could contact the C S A person who was in the building to pull that kid, work with that kid, get that kid to calm down. Now, we ought to pull administration, counseling, or as a teacher, we have to leave our kids for someone else, but we try to work with that kid to bring him.
Our kids to someone else, but we try to work with that kid to bring him back.
Yep.
So I hope that they're starting to get back to doing that. Because I can tell you, that was. That was a really huge service they provided that meant many different at school system and it's not. Been there for the last, don't ask me how many years, pre-COVID.
Yeah, and having the mental health coordinator, Kim mentioned that today, was huge. Um and and more than just her, I've heard it from multiple people, how. That's an issue in the schools and that addressing it's important when they have those breakdowns.
I can echo Mr. Sheridan. I know the majority of our kids at Fork Union aren't aren't children of taxpaying citizens, but we have a few, but. Uh just to echo his point, some of the services they provided um with us at Fork Union and and some of our kids, I mean, some. I'm sure Mr. Sheridan tell you, sometimes you get in those schools and you get a situation with a kid where there's not one person on staff that's qualified or knows how to handle that particular situation. Um and and, you know, we only have two hundred, three hundred kids. I mean, multiply that by a few times in 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 the in public school and. You know, sometimes you need that service there to, you know.
So region ten has serviced. Kids at film. That's interesting.
Did y'all have somebody that was there?
No, we would.
Could reach out to them.
We could reach out to them um and and sometimes if we had a student that was um. You know, we felt was either armed or potential harm that we they would, they would take the student in um and and. Spend some, have them spend some time there and.
And they're the coordinators for a lot of mental health services.
Well, I'm just telling you, when they had people in our building, we believe three, one point in time, they had up to thirty people in our building that were. There to work with kids when they were at that point that. They needed one. All right, anything else? We will now recess for dinner and reconvene for a regular meeting at seven o'clock.
Mr. Chair, I move the Flannan County Board Supervisors entering to close me, present the provisions, section two dot two dot seven eleven A one and section two dot two dash seven eleven A eight. Of the Code of Virginia for the uh amended for purposes of discussion. Personnel, former employee of the Department of Emergency Services and legal matters background check policies for unemployed.
Second. Uh Mr. O'Brien has made the motion, sent it by Mr. Sheridan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Let's go to.
Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I would close me and adjourn to the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors convening again in session. Here is all the board supervisors that does hereby certify to the best of each of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from meeting requirements of their. Section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty has amended. And two, only such public business matters that were identified in motion by which the closing of this convene were heard discussed or considered.
Second. Uh, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Call him out by name. Uh, Mr. Goode.
Aye.
Mr. Hod.
Bye.
Oh, that's right. You're hot.
Aye.
Mr. Sheridan.
Ah.
Mr. O'Brien.
Aye.
Chair votes are. Um, all right, we'll now move forward with the, uh. We'll do the pledge of allegiance again.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then you call for adoption of the agenda.
You call for adoption of the agenda, but, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but you'll present it first. Yep, yeah. Yep. So, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So there's an action item here later from under bylaw changes since we changed the meeting. I talked with, uh, the chair about changing the order of things since we had that six to seven o'clock window to do stuff. So we'll get to the bylaws thing. So for this evening's to get some things done before the public hearings. What I'm suggesting is moving action matters under seven, appointments under seven A, presentations under eight. And consent agenda under nine, move those in front of the public hearing now. If we're really efficient, we might be able to get through them. I'm not optimistic, but let's just, let's just say we can. And the one thing I would also request is when we under action item, we move item Q, which is resolution authorizing participation in application of Aqua Virginia. Or an increase in rates, move that item before item M, if, if the board is, uh, fine was out.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree.
And then, and so what happens is whatever we don't get done in items seven through nine, those just kind of fall after the public hearings. So we would just pick those back up after the public hearing.
Yeah. But one of my concerns when Eric and I talked about it last week was. We talked about how in part some of us have noticed in years past that, uh, people were sitting around. While including citizens, if there is some item that was important, but they're going through a bunch of, uh, crud waiting. But at the same time, in order to try to create this more efficient schedule, uh, it did, it did end up putting them farther to the back.
Last one I remember was I remember saying V dot sat around for about two hours while we did a public hearing.
Yeah.
And the fire department had the whole crew in the back.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, once we get under item N, we'll talk a little bit about that. And there's not a whole lot to talk about. It's pretty cut and dry.
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda with the changes made.
Second. Uh, all those say aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Who did you give the second? Who did you give the second to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't announce him. Who was the second?
No, I was go to second. I, I made the motion.
Mr. Sheridan made the motion.
Mike and Mike. Sheridan made the motion.
Mike, Mike in the evening.
Mike and Mike said.
Good morning. We can talk sports real.
Okay.
Sports in the morning.
We probably make more sense.
Right.
Um, Penny Ministerius report.
Yeah, just got a few things to report. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um. All right. Um, so one, I'd like to welcome our new employee, Benjamin Sheridan, started in the Department of Economic Development as a small business development and tourism specialist. He started on January ninth, like a welcome him to the county. Um, also, um. Fluvana County Department of Social Services coordinated the Christmas sponsors program again this year. Um, there are thirty three sponsors that provided Christmas gifts for thirty seniors and a hundred twenty one children. A big thanks to Jane Wilson, who does a phenomenal job coordinating the program every year and to all the sponsors that also help, uh, help to provide gifts for seniors and children. Um, PAX Help twenty twenty four at the Fluvana Library again, uh, time to make an appointment. Uh, Thursdays twelve to four P M. And Saturdays nine to twelve by appointment only. Um, again, um. They can call the library. Well, actually, I'm sorry. They can call four three four three seven three zero nine eight four. There's a signup genius link, um, to, um, and any information they can certainly call the Fluvana Library to get more information on, on, and. Getting some assistance filing taxes. Um, and then, so good news. So the Center of Virginia Small Business Development Center in partnership with the economic development office. Uh, was one of, one of fifteen in the country, not, not the county, one in the country. Now that's was selected to receive a hundred thousand dollar grant from the U S Small Business Administration's Portable Assistance Program. So this is for a forked union business revitalization strategy. Um, so year one will allow for a part time SBDC business advisor at the community center two days a week. Uh, to provide business advising and connections to resources. Um, a consultant to engage community stakeholders by conducting. Um, a consultant to engage community stakeholders by conducting community meetings. And if the benchmarks are met, grant may be renewed after, uh, for two additional years. So, you know, as we talked about trying to revitalize, revitalize fourth union, this is a good way. The funds don't come through the county. They go all directly through the SBDC and just, you know, big kudos to, um, Ms. Schneck for, uh, kind of assisting and getting that, uh, getting that moving forward. So.
Amen. And I got a call yesterday from a Luca who grew up in the fourth union district who's already applied for that.
Yeah, good, good. And then what's, I think this is the last thing. Um, so then also, uh, SBDC has business plan one oh one, February twentieth, twenty twenty four, from eleven thirty A M. To one thirty P M. Uh, those interested can register at S V C V S B D C dot org. Um, discuss types of business plan models, components of business plans and the importance and the importance of a living business plan. Um, so good, another good, uh, um, coordination with the S B D C. And then just, uh, some, and that should not say adjourned. So forget adjourned. We're not adjourning. On it. Some upcoming meetings, January twenty fourth. Again, we have a special call nonprofit work session at five P M. Uh, Wednesday, February seventh at five P M. We will have a regular meeting. February seventh at seven P M. Will be the county administrators F Y twenty five budget proposal and a revenue expenditure brief. February fourteenth. This is not correct, Ms. Lee's, because we changed that. Let's just do this. Don't look past February seventh right now because I need to check something because I, I think that we decided not to do the February fourteenth meeting. Because it was Valentine's Day, if I remember correctly.
Did they take an alternative or just skipping it?
No, we, we, we did some reshuffling.
We did.
Did we not? We did, yeah. So, so forget fourteen.
Not doing the one that week, though.
What's that?
Not likely doing one that week where we're.
No, we weren't going to do anything of the week of the fourteenth.
And that happens to be, I was wrong last week. That happened to be the week that I'm on that cruise anyway. So. Wouldn't be here for it one way or another.
On my birthday, so.
Unless I do it.
So anyway, that's all I have to report.
All right. Um. No. We'll now open our first round of public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board should come to the podium. And state your name and address. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Yeah, if you're here to speak for a public hearing, this would not be the.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nobody? All right. See no one. We will close the first round of public comment.
So the first item we're going to do, I'm, I'm at that, pardon me, I'm at the hop around here.
Yeah, we're going back there to set action manage.
Um, let's see here. Actually, we were doing the Aqua one first. Yep. Sir Whitton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So a little bit of background. Um, Aqua Virginia statewide investor and water and sewer utility company. It ends operates several water and wastewater systems in the county. Uh, Aqua is a utility company whose rates are regulated by the Virginia State Corporation Commission. So Aqua has filed a rate case with S C C. Were increasing their rates. The case number is on your screen. And basically they're seeking an increase in water and sewer rates. They seek to increase their water revenues in the amount of five million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred ninety two. Dollars and increase in water wastewater revenues of one million, six hundred ninety six thousand dollars, hundred and twenty, sorry, one million, six hundred ninety six thousand, one hundred and twenty one dollars. And so the requested increase increases constituted approximately thirty three point eight eight percent increase in water revenue. And twenty one point zero eight percent increase in wastewater revenues. So with potentially, um, great impacts on many citizens in the county who use our. Uh, the resolution would authorize and direct county attorney to file notice of participation. And the rate case and to participate as a litigant and to keep the board informed of the case. Uh, the resolution would also authorize and direct the county administrator, county attorney to take. Or possibly taking any other action that may be necessary to protect the county and the citizens in this regard. And to keep, keep the board informed of those steps. The deadline to file the notice of participation is January thirtieth of this year. So a little bit of a timeline for the case. The deadline for respondents to file testimony after, um, filing a notice of participation is February twenty seventh. The deadline for S C C staff to file testimony and exhibits is March twenty sixth. The deadline for Aqua to respond is April ninth. And the deadline for any interested person to file comments on the application on their website is April twenty third. And then on April thirtieth, there would be a hearing examiner who would receive testimony from public witnesses first. And then the hearing examiner would convene a hearing to receive testimony and evidence from Aqua. S C C staff and any respondents who filed a notice to participate. So potential cost sharing, there is a potential to share costs of other particip- participating localities. I've talked to the county attorney of Bonita and Carolina County, County, and also, um, Middlesex County. They're only discussing it along the nineteenth. And so such costs that could be shared could include hiring expert witnesses. To include an engineer that specializes in water and wastewater and a certified public accountant.
And just one thing too, just to keep in mind, you know, in, in the staff report, we put approximately twenty five thousand for an engineer and approximately, uh, ten thousand for an accountant. Depending on how the board wants to move forward from a, from a legal standpoint, Mr. Witten could certainly handle it potentially, depending on what the workload was. Then if we're going in into this on a cost sharing basis, you know, we would potentially have to look, you know. Does, do we get an individual attorney? Do we hire, you know, these locales hire an outsourced attorney? Or do we just do one of the counties that have in-house attorneys? So those are some considerations.
So both bottom side and Caroline have outside counsel. Obviously, they have law firms that represent them. Middle, Middlesex does have a, an, an house attorney.
I think certainly the file, the, the filing to participate, Mr. Witten certainly handled that.
I've actually already drafted that. So that's ready to go with the resolutions approved tonight. If there's any questions.
Um, then we got, we had the resolution too, if the board wants me to bring that up as well.
And does each, so each county participating has equal standing? Is that?
Correct, as a respondent.
Okay.
So basically, you know, Aqua would present that, well, then S C C staff. And then the respondents would go last.
Okay. So you say what you said again, you have what?
The resolution.
No, there was, there's a resolution that was in the board package that I can bring up to board once, uh, I, I don't, yeah.
I don't need it.
No, I thi- I think this is a no brainer to protect the interest of the citizens. I mean, it's one thing to have a rate increase in line with inflation, but this is not in line with inflation. It's excessive to the extreme.
I think it also draws a line in the sand and says, you know, you don't do anything this time or act this time. It's, well, can we get away with it? And I realize the lawsuit's been filed, but, you know, I think this sends a message to what fifty percent of the people in the county, which I think one, a, a minimum of twenty people, right, Mr. Sheridan? And, and everybody's district are, are on Aqua. So I think we all have a, an interest here in, in saying. Um, you know, to the citizens that we see what's going on here and, um, we're concerned.
In addition to a mass of our businesses are.
Yeah.
Money not being spent here.
Yeah.
I move that the board is supervisors approve a resolution to authorize participation in application of Aqua Virginia Inc. For an increase in rates, S C C case number P U R twenty twenty three dash zero, 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 seven, three.
Aye, second. Uh, Mr. O'Brien made the motion. Mr. Hod seconded all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Um, passage five, zero. All right.
Let me go back.
So we'll go back to, uh, M. All right.
Yeah. So, so again, this is kind of goes back to, we change, you know, we, we moved the meeting up to six and we pull up just the, uh, the bylaws really quick, just some quick bylaw changes. Um, let's see here. So the only changes are. So right there. So one, since we changed, uh, since we moved the meeting up from, from seven to, oops. Since we moved the meeting from, uh, seven to six, we had to, we had to change when the meeting will adjourn. Um, so that's going to be no later than ten P M. So that's the only change there. And then the only other change is regarding the agenda categories. So currently, if you look at the agenda, we have, um. After public comments, we go to public hearings. We have action, we have appointments, presentations, consent, and then we go to unfinished and new business. What I would suggest is basically take, um, kind of do a flip flop and take consent and do that first, since those are kind of just non controversial items. Then do presentations, then go to action matters, appointments, and then, then we're kind of going back to public hearings.
Well, the only thing I'd say about consent agenda is that usually doesn't affect anybody but us. So if that's last, it's just something we get done with flash.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could. I mean, if you want to leave towards the end, we could put it towards the end, you know.
I'd leave that one at the bottom. The rest of them I have no issues with.
Appointments, I would say also, that's usually pretty quick too.
That could probably go, that could probably be first.
First or second after consent agenda.
The only reason I say is generally, I mean, we can, we can make some changes usually since appointments are actions, we usually have active and appointments right after one another. But I mean, if we want, I mean, I guess you tell me where you want.
Action matters can take a while sometimes.
They can, um.
We don't usually have this. The appointments don't usually have anything to do with the action matters, do they?
No, it's just, it, appointments aren't action that, and that's, I guess we could rename it. I mean, so you're saying do your.
I'd say put eight A first. Or you could do presentation, but I'd do eight, eight A is probably the shortest one in this.
So, so what we'll do, we'll forget the numbers, we'll renumber them, but so from the order of, you want presentations first, then you.
Or appointments.
Then you want appointments?
Correct. Or you could put appointments first and then presentation.
Yeah, appointments.
I think appointments take the least amount of time of anything.
Okay, so appointments, then presentations, then you want action matters.
Just keep it as you got it.
Action.
I'd put, I'd just say I'd put, I'd leave the consent where it is at the very end. Cause that affects usually no one unless we pull something. And usually you're answering those questions.
Okay, so put consent after public hearings then.
Yeah, I just, I, I just would leave that at, yeah, after public hearings because. Nobody's, nobody's tied in here.
Okay, so let me just, just to confirm here. So we have appointments, then presentations, then action matters. Then public hearings, then consent, and then we go on to unfinished, then new business.
Correct.
And we will, we will adjust those numbers. Um, and so again, that's the only thing that changed else in here was, yeah, just this, we'll adjust that in the bylaws too, to reflect what we just discussed.
Like, like you said, you consented just, agenda usually goes quickly.
Yep.
But that doesn't affect any.
Correct. Everybody agree with it?
Yeah. And Dan, we can approve this now with the changes as noted, right?
Correct. It's different than the planning question where they have to wait. Under our bylaws, they can be amended. Yeah, without notice.
Any other discussion? Ready to make a motion?
I'll make it. I move to, to adopt the twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors bylaws and rules of practice and procedures as amended with the changes presented.
Second. Uh, motion made by Tim, seconded by Mike Goode, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Chair votes aye. Passes five, zero.
Um, next, I, I'm sorry.
What's that?
You read the title, Mr. Chair.
I'm good with it either way. Item N, reclassification of two clerk of the court. Uh, circuit court positions, uh, Trissy Treadway.
This Treadway, I've got a couple of slides for your kind of justifications that, from what you provided, and then I've got a couple fiscal impact ones that you, that you've seen, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you so much for allowing me to come here tonight and ask for this. I'm asking that two positions in my office be reclassified. Uh, there are two deputy clerk one positions. Um, currently, one of those positions is vacant. Um, and one of those positions is filled by an individual who is actually, um, performing the duties of what, according to the current job descriptions, would be a deputy clerk three position. Um, she's been training under me, um, for about two years, um, to perform probate. Um, and so she has fully taken over that position, um, in doing that, and I now serve as her backup versus her serving as my backup. I'm not sure whether you're aware or not, but in Virginia, um, in a lot of the surrounding states and then states across the United States, um, there are probate courts, separate probate courts. In Virginia, the clerk serves as the probate judge. Um, and so that this individual essentially is making decisions relating to probate, um, qualifications, whether wills are valid, wills, um. Not valid, probatable, lots of individual decisions that have to be made with each estate, um, including lots of, um, laws relating to taxes, um, probates. Uh, real estate, um, a lot of different laws that she has to know. And so for her to continue to do this job as a deputy clerk one is just, it's, can't be done. I mean, she, she can't continue to be required to know everything that she has to know. And the amount of time she spends doing it with the current pay and the current classification. Um, so that's my, my one ask that I'm asking for that, that position to be, um, moved from a deputy one to a deputy three. My second ask is, um, I currently have a vacancy in my office. It's been vacant since May. Um, there's long history as to why that's been vacant for as long as it has, but I'm here today. I need to hire for this position. And under the current job descriptions, essentially deputy clerk one, um, basically has, um. Answers phones, does very basic, um, has no decision making authority. Um, makes no individual, um, independent decisions in the office, and that is not, uh, what this position does. Um, the individual that left current was not doing that. She was making independent decisions. She worked the front counter. So anytime anyone came in, any document that comes across our counter, there is a massive amount of law that has to be known in order to. Process what has come, whether it's concealed handgun permits, land records, notary public, um, probates. Uh, I mean, there's just a myriad of things, civil filings, criminal filings that all come across our counter. And that person has to be able to know what to do with it, who to direct them to, um, record the documents if it, if it needs to be recorded. And so to hire someone at a deputy clerk one will not serve, um, the, they can't perform those job duties being a deputy clerk one. I really need to be able to hire someone with some experience, um, with some knowledge and background. And it just, it, I just cannot, um, have someone working in that position with that little amount of, um, experience.
Then go into the fiscal impact of these again. So, um, when this Treadway spoke about the first one, the deputy clerk one to a deputy clerk three. That would move that position up for pay bands, which is a five percent increase in between each going in between each pay band. So the request, this requested change would result in a eight thousand, one hundred and seventy nine dollar salary increase for this position. Um, that's the currently filled position. The other one, the, the second, second below. So this one's a little more, a little more complicated. The proposed reclass of this from a one to a two would move it from a pay ban ten to a pay ban twelve. And again, going five percent for each pay band, that would be a ten percent increase. So the previous employee in the position, considering, you know, that person was here for a while, uh, was paid, obviously was paid higher than what the current minimum. Was paid higher than what is currently the, the minimum for a current deputy two. So in the F Y twenty four budget, that reflects a, a budget amount for just the salary for piece thirty seven, six, oh, nine. So depending on where this hire comes in, let me go to the actual, the next chart. This shows it probably a little bit better. So here's the deputy one, um, going to deputy three again, that's the eight thousand dollar increase. So this is currently what was budget for the, for the vacant position. And again, going to the minimum or going to the maximum, you're either looking at, it's going to go down nine hundred and sixty eight dollars. Or it's going to go up, um, five thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars. So, so if the board approves both of these requests, it's going to require a budget increase of seventy two hundred dollars total for both up, or up to twelve thousand, seven, oh, six. Um, one thing for fiscal year twenty fourth, Miss Treadway noted, um. She has, she hasn't had the position filled all fiscal year, so there is enough savings in the fiscal, in this fiscal year. To cover the amounts, certainly for, for fiscal year twenty five, if both are approved, there would be an increase somewhere in the range of seventy two hundred dollars to twelve thousand and some change. Not including benefits, depending on where that individual's hired. Um, and again, just talking about, um, the requests, again, it's not changing the amount of staff in her office. And then just the blue kind of shows her current staffing levels. Two deputy ones, two deputy twos, two deputy threes, one chief deputy, and then the clerk of the circuit court. Again, what this would change is removing two deputy ones and then just putting one deputy one to a two and one deputy one to a three. Having the chief de- deputy and obviously the clerk, so the same amount of positions. Um, so like I said, I'm sure Miss Treadway can answer any, uh, technical questions regarding your office. And I have to answer any questions regarding the, the fiscal impact.
Question, Mike?
I can say from firsthand, having worked at the county for over five years, that I've seen the work of these people. And the staff member that you currently have that you want to take to a deputy three is well worth their weight in gold. And the staff member that you currently have that you want to take to a deputy three is well worth their weight in gold. And I would support this.
Eric, can you go forward one side real quick?
Yeah, one side, right there.
Um, sorry, to the, to the staffing numbers. Yeah. So with this, are we just, uh, to assume that basically those deputy one duties are being absorbed by everybody else and, 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 okay. Um, and if you go back to the first slide real quick, Eric, I just want to clarify something. I think I know the answer to this.
That chart right there?
Uh, it was the one that says to reclassify, um, yeah, next slide. Um, A, it says to reclassify a deputy clerk one to a deputy, we're not, sort of clarify, we're not changing the job description of a deputy clerk one. We're just essentially changing that employee from a deputy clerk one to a deputy.
Yes, yeah. I mean, we're, we're, we're basically getting rid of the deputy clerk one and moving them up to a deputy clerk. And same thing, deputy clerk one to deputy clerk two, is what the request does.
And it, it seems to me it's, it's. You know, we're not doing it. One of my concerns was that, all right, so then are we creating a precedence for all constitutional officers? But this isn't, cha, as you say, it's not, it's not changing anything about the grades. It's specific to this office and not say it doesn't exist in somebody else's office. Specific to this office, these are issues and concerns that are related to what those people have to do, not even to the people, but the positions. Um, and you know, the, the light came on for me when Trissy had pointed out to me that, um, it's, this is legal. Yeah, it's, it's, there's some stuff they're dealing with there that can get you in trouble if you didn't know what you're doing and have the right qualifications. So, um, let me ask you, if, so just like we're talking about, since a position hasn't been filled, um, you've got the money to fill out the rest of the year. And I, I don't know if I've seen this even be questioned. So even if you fill out the rest of the year, that means there's.
There's still many savings.
There's, what's that?
There'll probably still be savings in there at the end of the year.
And could that be figured in somewhat of a carryover, figured into what we would budget for?
I mean, all.
That becomes our general fund.
I mean, it goes back and.
Well, I know that, I know it's, I know it can. Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's just the money that's left over. I mean, yes, we could. That's when the schools come back to us and ask us for that carry.
You, 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 yes, you, technically you could take the, the savings and, and, and you could pay for whatever's left over, you could pay for one other year of difference. Again, at some point, you're going to have to recoup it via the tax, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and so, you know, I.
So it's really a wash either way.
It, it really, it really will be at, at some point. Again, I think, I think what is going to be left over would not be substantial at the end of the year. Again, you're talking.
Yeah.
But it, it'll, it'll be absorbable this year, but you know, there'll, there'll be some type of increase. I, I'm, I'm imagining we're not going to hire the deputy two at the minimum. So it'll, there'll be something slightly above that, but.
Right.
Anything else? Anybody have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Uh, I move that the board of supervisors approve the reclassification of a full-time deputy clerk one to a full-time deputy clerk three for the clerk of the circuit court's office.
You can just do one, do one motion at a time.
One at a time?
Yeah, we just do them one at a time.
I'll second that.
Okay, go, made the motion, Tim seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair. Board votes aye, passes five zero.
I'm, I'll make the motion in a second. I move the board of supervisors approve the reclassification of a full-time deputy clerk one to a full-time deputy clerk two position for the clerk of the circuit court's office.
I'll second.
Tim, uh, made the motion, seconded by the younger of the mics. All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Board votes aye, passes five zero.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Item O, ambulance CIP funding for the Department of Emergency Services.
Yeah, so I will let Mr. True.
Jim True.
Mr. Jim True, EMS supervisor, come up and talk about his, uh, his fleet.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, members of the board, coming to you this evening, requesting clarification and or funding, preferably funding to purchase a demo unit, twenty twenty-two uh, F five fifty four-wheel drive that is currently in service. Um, to add to our fleet as we have had numerous issues. Um, what is presented, I have the unit forty-five, which is currently out of service. It is a four by two with a hundred sixty thousand, approximately a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. The life expectancy of that engine is actually two hundred thousand miles. The ambulance forty-six is a twenty nineteen rebuild, which is a four by four.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Um, diesel with less than fifty thousand miles on it at this time. Um, it was purchased by the rescue squad for us and put in service within the last couple of weeks. Diesel engine life expectancy is going to be three hundred thousand miles on that particular unit. Next slide. Forty-eight is currently our primary unit stationed out of Palmyra. It is a twenty seventeen four fifty four by four with approximately a hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. Hundred and seventy thousand miles, one seventy-one. Um, with a diesel life expectancy of three hundred thousand. It is also a four-wheel drive. Uh, forty-nine is currently out of service. It is a two thousand eleven F four fifty four by four, two hundred and fifty thousand miles, which is currently at Goodman's in Amelia, having its engine and transmission replaced due to a blown engine. We're anticipated return date of January first. It had the diesel engine life expectancy will be three hundred thousand miles. And over the course of time, it's had several repairs made to it, um, due to maintenance costs. What I'm asking.
Yeah, and again, again, due to the current condition of the fleet and numerous ambulances going out for repairs, the counties had to borrow ambulances from other agencies within the last month. I mean, Lake Monticello's that we've had to borrow some.
We borrowed from Lake Monticello, we borrowed a unit from Nelson County. Um, and we also borrowed a unit from Buckingham, um, over the course of one weekend. When all the units decided they wanted to take a little siesta all at the same time. Um, we were very grateful to those units, but again, we had several, um, out of county units that were actually in county running calls for us.
And then currently, um, in FY twenty-three, there was money for a new ambulance. And so one's been ordered, but we don't take delivery of it until November twenty twenty-four.
Correct. And that'll replace which one?
That is going to, depending on the decision tonight, will replace forty-five.
So under the two options, again, option A or option B, option A doesn't require any funding if, if the board remembers there was a resolution passed for a hundred twenty-five thousand nine oh seven, money was, uh, transferred from the Cynthia L. Morgan Stern Trust, which was transferred to the county due to the dissolution of Savannah County Rescue Squad. And again, so if the board approves that, then Mr. True would use a hundred twenty-five thousand nine oh seven to purchase a used ambulance. Option B is utilize the same hundred twenty-five thousand nine oh seven above, but would also require additional county funding, uh, in the neighborhood of a hundred eighty-four thousand oh ninety-three. And we would recommend for that to come from unassigned fund balance. So this is what the demo model would look like in F five fifty four by four demo.
That is actual pictures of the demo unit being considered.
And then certainly if we were looking at a used, a used unit, it would be something more along the lines of that. Again, this one's fifty-nine thousand. So you know, maybe you could buy a couple like that if you find them, or maybe this one's not available by the time we find, and maybe one's a little bit more. So you're really looking at a used ambulance versus a demo. And I'm sure, uh, Mr. True would, would, would inform you of what his preference would be.
Excuse me. Uh, the demo is obviously going to be a preference. The example you have in front of you should, yeah, that's the, um, demo that is actually in process. Um, I've been discussing with a salesman, those are actual pictures taken of the unit, including, as you can see, the odometer that currently reads seven hundred and six thousand, seven hundred.
Sixty, I think sixty.
Seven sixty.
Yeah, seven hundred and sixty current miles on it, um, and will be available for immediate delivery. It is a four by four unit as well, which does bode well in our county backroads.
So whichever one of these we choose, which ambulance will you then replace with this?
So this one will become a frontline and forty-six will go to a secondary line as during the winter time, with the inclement weather coming into the area, it will then return to a frontline and forty-eight and forty-nine will go into reserves.
Cause right now we only have four ambulances. No, no, we have four.
We have four with it. Yes, you are correct.
The one's being worked, one's being worked on.
Forty-five is currently out of service with no anticipated return date. There's a national shortage on the lower body bushings on the box.
So what you're saying is you have four now and whichever option we choose, you're going to have five at the end of this.
Yes.
We will own five, yes, with forty-five going for sale.
Would that not create future cost down the road, replacement costs? Cause we've increased the size of our fleet?
I mean, it would. The only thing I would say is with some of the age of the fleet and, and, and again, down the road, once we get a newer fleet, we'll have to look, once we get down the road, you know, does, does EMS services need to expand? We don't know. We'll have to see. Or, or do we have a little extra reserve right now, knowing, knowing the issues that we've had with some of the older ambulances? So maybe once we get a newer fleet, if we keep the same kind of structure in place, maybe we only need four at that point. Mr. True would maybe say, maybe say different.
I see what you're saying about adding an extra truck.
Yeah.
But now, we've had a habit quite often in other agencies within the county of taking vehicles as we put them out of service and then repurposing them. And it becomes another truck for us to buy because
Yes.
we have quite a few. I'm trying not to step on toes. We have quite a few that have way more trucks than they started out with.
Yes.
Um, but I will say this much, the one thing about this is we don't want to be where we're short on rescue squads. And if we ever do fill the third station, which I hope, pray one day we do, um, since that's the closest station we have to us is fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
And, uh, so if we fill that third station, having two trucks in reserves is going to be almost mandatory. And if we can get our hands on a truck right now with the way that the trucks are going, those fire trucks, rescue squads, lease cars, everything. Well, they're not only going up, you just can't get them. I mean, we've been waiting for trucks, fire trucks and rescue squads. He just said, when did we order the last rescue squad?
So right now, the anticipated delivery of.
When did we order? The anticipated.
July of last year.
And so it's a year and a third.
Yeah.
And we got that one in an old contract.
Sixteen months.
So my next question would be this, if you're this, you're going to replace forty-five and then you're going to replace with forty-six. So forty-five is the new one, forty-six would be this one. Where, where in the CIP is forty-seven, forty-eight? How many years are we looking at on those?
So the anticipation, we have asked in next year CIP for replacement of forty-five and forty-eight. With the replacement of the demo, that would be an upstep to currently replace it at approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost difference over buying brand new next year. And then forty-eight would be in the next line for next year CIP. And at that point, it would put us on a three-year rotation, approximately a three-year rotation to exchange units out to maintain a newer fleet.
And what's the industry standard on the life expectancy for a unit?
Three to five years.
Three to five years.
So with either option A or option B, we're going from four to five, correct? Am I understanding that correctly? Now, if all four of those were functioning adequately enough to get out there and be on the road and we weren't barring, would there be a need to go to five? Or are we looking at this because we're currently having issues with the four we have, or because we need to go from four to five? Guesses.
Current issues, right? Current issues, and then to me, it would be forward thinking, because when you go to three buildings, I mean, right now, Lake Montella has, what, four trucks?
John, four.
Four trucks. They have four trucks for one building. We now have one and a half trucks.
Right.
At Fork Union, one and a half trucks in Palmyra because of the age and use of them. So, I mean, yeah. It would be going to five, but there's a matter of time before we'll have to fill that station.
So in reality, we would have, of the five the county owns, two would be in Palmyra, two in Fork Union and one in Kent Store.
I'm sorry, the question.
So you're saying you have, the goal would be five apparatus, you'd put two in Palmyra, two in Fork Union and one in Kent Store?
Yes, that would be correct.
That seems equitable.
So that leaves us to decide between A and B.
So you might have said this, I meant, if, if you did, I missed it. For option B, what's the new cost of that unit?
Approximately three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
You said the new, the new cost of it?
The new cost.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But you buy a brand new one today. Yeah.
So if we were looking to, in option B, if we were looking for that particular unit in twenty twenty-five, it would be anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-six months in delivery, anywhere from three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And does that include the?
That is just the unit. That does not include the thirty thousand dollars for the power load system.
So in, for in the, the request for the, for the demo, you can see this does not have a power load system. That amount includes a thirty thousand dollar power load system as well.
Does. Um, we, I'm not asking for stretcher in regards to the power load system. We currently have a service contract with Stryker that will allow us to keep our current parts in rotation. So as units rotate out, they go out for service, we would pull that equipment out of the, um, downed unit, if you will, and move that over to the currently in-service unit.
And the thing about the power lifts is it keeps you from affecting a lot more people. Because you, you've never used one of those. First time I used it, I was like, jump back. But you can lift a five hundred pound person. Okay. I was shocked because I'm used to being the person that has to pick that thing up.
Yes.
It, you just hit a button.
I agree with Mike. That's a must too.
And, and it's, it keeps you from having to tone your fire department all the time or lift assist. Thank you.
Uh, how many miles does option, I'm sorry, Mr. Sheridan, were you done?
I cut the hiccups.
Um, we may have covered this. I may have missed it. Oh, I was crunching some numbers. Um, option A, how many miles does that one have on it?
That particular unit has a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and that's what I'm finding in a significant amount of the used vehicles. Um, they've got previous damage. They are generally a high mileage unit. Um, anywhere from eighty to a hundred and fifty, depending on the vehicle you're looking at, um, and then the different types.
And you don't know the condition.
I, I will tell you this much, and I've not driven it as much as Jim. But when you get a ambulance or vehicle, I'm sorry, guys, I got a hiccup. So you get a vehicle of this type, once it's had an accident, it, it's really hard to fix. I mean, you're going to have issues with it because of that.
It's similar to the remounting process. You have a tendency to create gremlins that you have a hard time locating.
To me, I mean, boy, I hate to put in extra money, but if this was an NFS vehicle, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy a hundred and twenty-two thousand mile vehicle, you know, or something that I don't know.
What issues it has.
Yeah. How many, yeah, how many, you know, if you're, you, you save, let's call it a hundred and fifty thousand, just for simplicity purposes, you save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance by going with option A, but how much of that, and you, we may never notice, how much of that do you end up spending in repairs? Um, you know, for that, um, is, is another way to look at it too. So.
And downtime and.
I would argue that if we're looking at it from an investment standpoint, you know, in long-term investment, I mean, sounds like. Well, and then too, just from an efficiency, I mean, again, Mr. True's having to, he's having to go all over the place to, to shuttle ambulances here and there and figure out, you know, where are we going to borrow one from? Versus he could be spending his time doing trainings and, and other things like that for, for, for the EMS providers, rather than trying to, to be a fleet technician or, or a fleet chauffeur.
None, none of the existing ambulances have, you know, they're all half, past half-life anyhow, not thirds of life. So, you know, we've got it in the CIP budget for next year. Maybe we pass it this year. Maybe they pick it up the next year after that. We can revisit that CIP budget next year. It seems like either way, we were going to buy a new one.
Yeah.
Buy the demo at a hundred thousand dollar discount is a pretty good deal.
Yep.
I was the first person to put a dent in forty-eight zero.
Hmm.
Deer ran right in the side of me. I would not see a truck with the lights going, the sirens going. Key bong. He bones.
Anything else? I'll make a motion if you like.
So you have A or B there, yep.
I move the board of supervisors approve a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Emergency Services for an ambulance purchase in the amount of. Three hundred and ten thousand to purchase a one to two-year-old demo ambulance and power load system. With one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars of funding to come from the Cynthia L. Morgan Stern Trust with the. Funding to come from.
I think there was a double copy there.
That was transferred to the county due to the dissolution of Fluvanna County Rescue Squad Incorporated. And a hundred and eighty-four thousand and ninety-three dollars to come from unassigned fund balance.
I'll second that and say it's kind of appropriate. We do this four days after Gloria's family.
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Mr. Hodge, seconded by Mr. Sheridan, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Chair votes aye, passes five.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. On to.
So, yeah, are we going with the new schedule?
You will know, yeah, now, now we're on amended budget here.
Yeah. Uh, we, we approved the amended budget thing until the seventh of February.
Remember? Well, no, this one should be correct down here. Yeah, cause.
Yes.
This, this one's correct and you're just wasn't correct on the other, on the other.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. At the last meeting, the board discussed some time changes for the starts of meetings and location changes for just work sessions. So you'll see the location changes are highlighted in yellow with them being in the Morris room. And the twenty-fourth, that budget work session will start at five PM and all other work session only will start at five thirty in the Morris room.
Let, let me just ask the board one thing. For the twenty-fourth. For all the nonprofit presentations, would you rather have, we, we had proposed the Morris room for simplicity unless you'd rather have them here?
I think.
Go more similar, okay. So that, that's what we had proposed. I just wanna make sure that's the case.
And they, oh, sorry.
So next week, we're at the Morris room and then I'm looking here and I'll maybe have a different one than the amended, cause some of these say Kerry's Brook where it says Morris room, so. I'll, I'll wait.
Yeah.
My only concern would be moving it around to create confusion.
But that's only for us.
Yeah, these are work session only. So it just.
But the citizens can.
Somebody may have already. The, the Arts Council may be using this on the table.
The only, the only downfall, as I said, you're thinking about having the nonprofits, cause we have approximately how many?
I think it's twenty-four.
If we have twenty-four nonprofits.
Total.
Total, the Morris room could be a little tight potentially. I mean, I think we could fit them all in there, but it would be. That's the only downfall about having next week in the Morris room. I think we could do it, but it would be, it would be tied or we have it here.
I mean, why not do it here?
We can. Uh, the one thing I would say is, is if we do that, um, definitely when we have just the work session nights of just. Regular work session nights besides a lot of people coming, I would definitely say let's do those in the Morris room where we don't have a regular meeting. Before or after. And so those are the other items that are highlighted there in yellow.
I guess some of it comes, I mean, if all. If everybody who has the opportunity shows up, then as you said, that's gonna be a full room. I mean, unless we have reason not to, by not for that one, go ahead and meet here.
I was just thinking the amount of setup you guys have to do. It's a couple hours on the county staff. You got grounds guys moving tables and chairs and the clerks setting the. The tablecloths and you got the IT guy setting the stuff up.
I mean, if we go to the Morris.
No, no, versus Morris room would eliminate all that.
We, we could squeeze, we could squeeze them in. We, we could get them in there. We get twenty-four people in there.
All right. Is that what we're saying?
Yep. We'll, we'll, we'll do Morris room for, for next week and then the only changes are, are the Morris room. Um, for those, for the work sessions only on there and those are highlighted in yellow and those are in the board package.
Do we need to vote on this?
What was?
There is a motion.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Hodge, were you getting ready to say something?
The February twenty-eighth county agency briefs and constitutional officers, how long do you think that'll last?
Um.
Not hearing.
Depends on how long one of them talks.
See, I got training at six that night. That was one of the ones I asked to move.
Can't imagine it's gonna, Mr. Doll, you know, probably have more finger on that, but it doesn't usually last. More than five minutes usually. Ten minutes.
No, it's probably a little bit longer than that. I mean, you got probably about five agency briefs. I mean, you're probably looking on, at that one. Because again, this is the one that we combine constitutional officers and agencies together because we weren't doing the.
Oh, that's right, because we, I forgot about the agencies. I was thinking just constant.
No, because we got rid of the fourteenth meeting, so this is doing kind of a double meeting. So, I mean, you're probably looking at, that would probably be a couple hours.
Yeah.
Um, if you wanted to move it, I would probably. If you wanted to move it, I would probably suggest, not knowing what's on the calendar, I would probably do the Thursday.
That was what I suggested, move it to the Thursday.
We had talked about moving one of them to the Thursday. That's twenty-nine.
The Morris room on, on February, uh, no March.
I can tell you, I came in at night.
This year, lead year. Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah, yeah. We're good, February twenty-nine. So we can do Thursday, February twenty-ninth at, at five-thirty in the Morris room for those briefs if, if the board wants to do that.
I agree with that.
You won't be there?
What about Tuesday?
What, what's Tuesday, the twenty-seventh?
Can we go to five?
Oh, you're gone the whole week.
But he still won't give it all.
Oh, he said he's not gonna be here the whole week.
Gone that whole week, so.
So he's gonna miss either way, so.
So let's do Thursday.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion?
Tori, I hope you're taking good notes. I made the change right here and, and, and Miss Leese too will send out, um, all these dates, um, on. Uh, on the calendar.
Yeah. All right, anybody wanna make a motion?
Uh, do we need the motion numbers? I move that the board of supervisors approve the amended FY twenty-five budget calendar as presented.
So.
Now.
With the changes.
What changes? The amended change, the amended FY. Budget calendar with the changes to those amendments as presented, or to those amendments.
The amended amendments.
Second. I gotta stop doing that, cause I confuse you. I'm asking for a second, but it, um. Okay, I'm there for you. Motion made by, um.
One Mike, young Mike.
Young Mike. Seconded by much older Mike. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Okay, and now we have a board appointments and I think we potentially get through this before we have the seven PM public hearing. Okay, sweet, cause I confused the rest.
All right, next, next item is appointments to board commission and committee. Mr. Doll?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chair, again, this is a, um, for the Thomas Jefferson Water Resources Protection Foundation. Again, we have, um, it's a citizen representative appointment. Uh, John Easter, who is the current appointee, um, incumbent, he is requesting to be reappointed. And then there are also, um, uh, James Schoenster and Mr. Christopher, uh, Al Baca Senior. Um, who was, who was requested appointment, um, and I don't, I know Mr. Bach is here, so if you wanna hear from Mr. Bach, Mr. Baca, you certainly.
And Mr. Shonster just walked in.
Okay. Yeah, if you wanna hear from them, just kinda.
And I don't think Mr. Easter's here.
Um, don't believe he is.
So, let's just go in order, uh, Mr. Shonster, anything you'd like to say?
Sure, first of all, uh, like I said before, I'm looking for ways to serve the county and I asked both past and current board members for recommendations and. This is one I got from a current board member, uh, as a place that I could serve the county and. It's a concern of mine that we protect our resources, especially water. The ravanna is very important and. This board gives me an opportunity to learn more about the easements that we work on to. Due to exactly that, protect our water. So, uh, if it would be. At the pleasure, pleasure of the board, I'd be happy to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Baca?
Good evening, Board Chair and members of the board. Um, I'm very interested in serving as well. He stole my thunder. But, uh, um, I'm, I'm very interested in continuing service to the county in different ways and, um. Being on this foundation would give me a lot of opportunity to. Uh, support the efforts of the county, uh, in working with other counties and other agencies, um, to make sure that we continue to have. Clean water and that the, uh, farmers and ranchers and, um. Foresters are doing what they're supposed to do to keep in, in regards to the law. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, well, but it's just like anything else.
Yeah, you had just conversation on.
Any comments or questions?
I don't know, Mr. Easter, so I can't comment on that. I know Mr. Baca and Mr. Shonster. Um, uh, both are great people. Of course, Mr. Shonster's been pretty active about asking if he can participate and we know the. You know, put a lot of energy and effort and trying to certain the county as a board supervisor, so. Yeah, certainly weigh that heavily in terms of. You know, uh, enthusiasm and excitement. Uh, but again, Mr. Baca's doing a lot of things for the county as well too, and Mr. Easter may be doing a very fine job. Those are my comments.
I was gonna say, I probably know Mr. Easter as long as anybody's kids. His son's played football for me a long time ago, but, um. He's done a fine job. I don't think we've had any issues. That we've heard about with him on the board, so. How, how long? Has he been on, do we know? It's a long, it's a two terms, I think.
I know James is part of.
Two thousand eight.
As part of James's campaign, he was very active on the waterfront.
On the waterfront?
Yes.
He, 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 he worked hard. I mean, he's a farmer. Yeah, he does other stuff, but he has a big farm down in the ravanna. I mean, James, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah.
I can drive it, I might not be able to tell you, but I'm doing a lot better than I did Saturday with dead of gratitude.
Well, I can tell you, I went to Noggin's Door, but he had a no trespass to sign up, so I didn't, I didn't go through there, but, uh, but, um, you know. I, I see that he has, you know, been serving for eight years and his resume has a lot of, sixteen, two terms.
Yeah.
Four.
No, they got.
Two thousand eight, yeah.
Okay, oh, it's two thousand eight, okay. Um, has a lot of experience there, um. He, I guess he didn't send any sort of letter or anything like that. Do you? Do you see any reason why we wouldn't let him continue in that and perhaps continue and explore opportunities for Mr. Shonster and Mr. Baca that would come up? Um, or, I mean, you, you've known him the longest and.
I, I think you probably hit the nail on the head there, cause I, I just love the fact that we have great people. That are hardworking and wanna be involved. That are signing up for these things. And when it makes it hard on us to do this, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's almost like a, to me, it's almost like the conversation about terminals.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I look at, I know, I've known John a long time also and I've known that he's. Pretty darn involved in this. I mean, he's not a passive participant and, um. He, uh, when you and I went to the, uh, thing at, um. Uh, not Montelli, what did, um?
Um, Monroe, yeah.
Yeah, James and Rose House.
Yeah.
For, it was for this organization, wasn't it? Wasn't this what it was?
Yeah, it was, it was this organization, yeah. Um, and, and was he there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and. When he caught my attention and started talking to me about this. It just was almost like. Um. It cer- it certainly showed he's been there a long time. Um, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the tough, I've heard Mr. Sheridan say this a lot during employment section, the toughest thing is when you have. Good people that wanna serve, you gotta choose between one of those three people. It's hard, it's hard to say to the incumbent, you know, hey. Unless we have a reason to, to move on to someone else, I think we oughta give them the opportunity to.
And I can.
Continue doing that.
In our terms, we've had, we've been sitting here before with nobody applying.
Yeah.
And it's nice to have multiple people.
It is. It would be interesting to do sort of a, just a summary of. Incumbents and how long they've been in their place and, you know, just. As a metric, just understand it a little bit better, you know. Not, not knocking the, the value of an incumbent at all, but also just saying that, you know. Sometimes a fresh set of eyes can make a difference too.
No, I completely agree.
Anybody wanna make a motion? It's your district, Mr. Go.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Uh, I make a motion that we recommend, uh, that we appoint, let's see, what's the one here? Let me get to my spot.
John.
Uh, appoint Mr. John Easter as the Thomas Jefferson Water Resources, uh, Foundation Fluvanna Citizen Representative.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Go, seconded by Mr. Sheridan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board votes aye, that's a five.
Um, so, so we have one, well. We had one item that we didn't do, it's a presentation from CSA, but we're at past seven o'clock when we want to start a public hearing, so.
So you, you wanna go ahead into public hearing, you're saying?
That's, that's entirely. They're advertised for seven, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Oops, that would be tab, uh, let's see. We'll go to the public hearing for tab G. Um.
Yep.
All right, um. So we have a staff.
Yep, yes.
Does enter for I and G?
Yep.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. Um, this would be a relatively quick presentation, um, so the planning, the. Planning Commission received a, uh, application for the creation of a new agricultural forest district.
Speak up a little bit.
Be created in the Cunningham Election District. Um. In short, the AFD Committee recommended approval five zero and the Planning Commission also. Concurd and recommends approval of the creation of the new district, meets all the criteria for an AFD. Um, to protect land significant, that has significant agricultural and forestal value, uh, meets all other criteria.
All right.
That's.
That's about all you gotta say about that.
Really about it, yes.
Questions for the board?
So these, these are the proposed, um, parcels that are, um, proposed to be in the AFD and that's, uh.
It's about four hundred acres altogether.
Off Nahor Manor.
Off Nahor Manor.
Fifty-three be out to your right.
Yeah.
When you're looking at the map.
Correct. Let's see if there's any. Yeah, but you can see, this is fifty-three right up there. You can see where there's Mary Oaks Lane. Here's Nahor Manor Road right here, the karate studio would probably be and then kind of Village Oaks right over here somewhere.
Yep.
And the county code and state code do require that the board passes an ordinance, so I drafted an ordinance which was added. Uh, to the online packet. So when we do the motion, we need to make sure that we're approving ordinance to create the district.
Thank you, Dan, and I'm sure that ordinance is better than the one I crafted while sitting in the.
No, of course. I tried to call you earlier, but I couldn't catch you.
All right. Is there any, um, applicant that would like to say anything?
The applicant is here, Pastor Dave. No, not this one, Pastor Dave. Mr. Van Otten Ritter.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Overstreet for his professionalism in this matter. Holding my hand and showing me everything that is to be done and in fact, doing all of the work. Charming gentleman to work with, with a sense of humor. Rather pleasant. Uh, none of this would have been possible without. The famous Susie Morris. Um, never have I met somebody who cares so much about. Land. County, the people that live here. Just an endearing. Individual. It's all due to her. Uh, I want to remind anybody who is listening that in no way does this reduce. Real estate taxes. And, um, because of this. Proposal. Farmers dealing with seasons. As opposed to. And the calendar, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars in capital improvements have already been committed. And are being spent right now to improve farmland. Which would not have been spent had any of us thought. A housing project or another commercial development was coming into the area. That's a hundred thousand dollars that will be spent over the next calendar month. And I guarantee you, it'll be another hundred thousand dollars on top of that in capital improvements. Um, besides lime and fertilizer, a new well. Um, besides lime and fertilizer, a new well, uh, almost ten thousand feet of water lined for watering livestock, fencing, new machines, that sort of thing, so. The person who feels that this is taking it out of development, well, we're still spending money that would not have been spent at all. Had not this concept be brought up to us, and I thank everybody here for.
Any questions?
Oh, any questions?
All right. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board.
Good evening, I'm Tom Diggs. I live at nine forty-seven Jefferson Drive. And uh, first Suzie Morris regrets not being here. Uh, she had farm issues which prevented her from coming. But I want to let you know that I share her desire to provide protection to rural property and trust that you will approve this uh, designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, any questions or comments on the board?
Um, I move to approve AFD twenty-three oh one, a request to create an agricultural forestal district in the A-one Agricultural General District under three dot one dash four on four hundred and four plus or minus acres and known as Tax Map sixteen, section A, parcels thirty-seven and forty-two. Tax Map seventeen, section A, parcel twenty-seven.
A second. If you could, oh, sorry, if you could add ordinance, I move to approve the ordinance to create.
I move to approve the ordinance to create as well.
My second.
Motion made by Mr. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Hodge, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Chair votes aye, passes five zero. All right, we'll go to um, item H. S U P twenty-three dash ten, Antioch Baptist Church, Mr. Overstreet.
Uh, once again, good evening. Um, I hope it won't take as much as your time on the last item. Um, so this is a special use permit uh, to allow the creation of a daycare center in the Antioch Baptist Church.
Yeah.
The Cunningham District. Um, it's fairly straightforward. All their modifications have been made to the church, including an addition of doors outside. Um, got many letters of support from the community members. Um, the comp plan was will support the creation. Is it uh, the uses are? Congruent with the current uses or in accord with current uses. Um, Pastor Dave is here to answer any questions, the applicant for the church, the representative. Um, they propose to have thirty-six, up to thirty-six students enrolled um, Monday through Friday, and we've really added just three conditions, two of our general generic conditions and one other condition, um, the wealth that would uh, control the hours of operation. Um, it's at the crossroads of Antioch, in Antioch, the crossroads of Antioch and was that Rolling Road South?
Yeah.
On its south, yes. Um.
Any questions?
And this is, again, this is the property right here, again, as as Mr. Overstreet stated on the corner of Rolling and Antioch. Um. This is.
Last picture.
What's that?
Go back to last picture.
Sure.
I believe that property, you see the little corner up there? I think that's Mr. Bieber.
Right up there.
Yeah. You can tell by the solar panels on the roof. And the high-speed internet. I'm sorry. But yeah, um. Or any, any questions from you all?
No.
Applicant? They're all good? All right, so no questions for the applicant to have a motion?
No.
That's what we're here for.
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Let's see. Yeah, it, um. Anyone wishing to make public comment, please come to the podium. Keep your comments five minutes. Seeing none, any questions from or comments from the board?
Close it.
Hmm?
Close there, public comments.
Do I have to formally close it if nobody came?
We just say now the public hearing is closed.
Yeah. Okay, public hearings closed. Any questions or comments from the board?
I moved that the board of supervisors approve S U P twenty-three ten, a request to permit a daycare center with respect to nine point three plus minus acres of tax map twenty-six, section A, parcel fifteen, with the three conditions described in the staff report.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Goode, seconded by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Four votes aye, passes five zero. DTA twenty-three dash zero one Marina Point at Lake Monticello Incorporated, Kelly Harris.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Little different capacity tonight, so I'm gonna ask your gentleness with me. Um, for your consideration tonight, there is the zoning text amendment twenty-three oh one, um, brought forward by Marina Point at Lake Monticello Incorporated. Followed by um, a request for a special use permit twenty-three oh seven, also from Marina Point. That will depend on what you do with the ZTA. Um, before I begin, I want to um, bring to your attention that the applicant has requested um, deferring this until a later date. Uh, we received a letter on January fourth from the applicant's attorney. Um, stating that this is what they would like to do. Um, and our county attorney um, reminded us that regarding our quest, request for deferral, the bylaws, your board bylaws have something to say about that, so. Uh, Mr. Witten, would you like to?
Yes, so basically in the bylaws, it states, once the public hearing has already been advertised, which it had already been advertised in the Pluvana Review, then only the chair with concurrence of the county administrator um, can defer the item at that time, and only if there's extreme mitigating circumstances. Um, so on January sixteenth, we did receive an additional letter detailing those circumstances. Um, we met, we had a phone call this morning with um, with the chair and um, and Eric have basically determined that there were not extreme mitigating circumstances. So under your bylaws, the board as a whole can defer the item um, at that, at this point, or the board can proceed with the public hearing and um, and then at that point either approved or denied or defer after the public hearing. So kind of now it's in the board's hands. The deferral letter has been sent to all the board members stating the circumstances, so it's now up to the board if you wanted to defer, defer at this time to a date certain, or if you want to proceed with the uh, presentation in the public hearing.
Any questions?
I would prefer to proceed.
So I, um, you know, I spoke a little bit with some of the parties involved and um, you know, I I think there's a there's a sense that uh, you know, there's a resolution that can be had, but they're not quite there. Um, you know, I know that we have some L M O A board members here, maybe they have something they'd like to say. Yellamoy withdrew its uh, letter of sort of quasi-support, I guess. Um, but I think that was due to some technicalities. Uh, I think, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think the intention is they'd like to try to find a resolution. I think that some of the people that are affected by this um, are looking to find a resolution with the developer as well. And I think that, uh, of course, the folks at Marina Point that have been trying to do this have also been trying to find a resolution as well. Uh, if we, if we, and I suspect it would be denied, I can't speak for my fellow board members, but if we go forward, given the facts where we are right now, it would probably be denied, which means that it can't be heard for another two years. And again, as I kind of put it, I think that everybody's looking for a resolution, so I suggested to them that they push for a deferral. Uh, so that's, that's my point. Yeah, that's uh, I would be in favor of deferring just to give them the opportunity to get to that point. Uh, and then come back and present it accordingly.
So for them to make substantial changes, would that require it to go back through the planning commission?
Yes, if there were substantial changes made and the board determined they are substantial, then they could remand it back to the planning commission.
It might even have to go all the way back to the T R C.
Depending on the changes.
Which means that they would have to be advertised for the planning commission, advertised for us.
Only with the T R C, is it right?
Well, no, no, because if it goes to the T R C, it has to go back to the planning commission, which then you're gonna have to advertise again, have another public hearing. And then it'll have to come before us. We'll have to advertise again, have another public hearing.
Well, an applicant would have to pay this cost.
Yeah, since the applicants were requesting the deferral, they would, they would be on the hook for the cost for, for re-advertisements and then the process.
Is there a timeframe that they're wanting to come back, or is this gonna be Damocles swords that's gonna hang over?
The applicant's attorney's here if she wants to speak as to what time frame she's requesting.
And did I understand right, up to two, two years?
Usually it's a year.
I I said two, but I thought it, I thought it was.
Usually it's standards a year.
But I don't know backwards and forwards, that's for sure. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, good evening. Um, my name is Anne Neil Cosby. I am counsel for Marina Point. Thank you for letting me address the board. Um, and uh, Mr. O'Brien is right, we are requesting the deferral. You know, this has been, uh, you know, a long process. We've tried so many different ways to make this, you know, a good situation for the developer, for the community, for the county. We've gone. We were here before the board and the board were denied the original um, version of sort of this text amendment, said go back and try again, you know, so we, we went back, tried again, you know, the planning commission didn't support that. You know, we see that, we don't disagree, you know, that, oh, we don't think right now, you know, this board is supportive of our application and we accept that, but we do want to work with the community. Um, we'd like to work with staff to see if there is a resolution, um, because I think we're, you know, we're, we're close and if we can just have a little bit more time, then we can, you know, try, you know, one last bite at the apple and come before you. Um, so, and if not, then of course, you know, we would be barred from bringing back substantially the same application, so we do. Um, you know, and as for when it would come back, um, you know, we could take several months. The last time it was, we were deferred for a year. We understand that the county's working through the comprehensive plan, so if and I know that there were residents who were wanting to see more of the comprehensive plan work done, and and we understand that, too. We, we, you know, we wouldn't object to, you know, you know, waiting until that was a little further along for this area. Again, we want to do what's right. We want to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So whatever, you know, works is, is what we're asking, so, but we are asking for a deferral, so we can just sort of keep going just a little bit longer, that's all.
How familiar are you, are you with the financials of this?
Of the, um.
So, so my, the crux of the question is this, if you were to change the development in such a way as not to require the ZTA, would it still be financially feasible? Because quite often in the past, we've got hung up. Um, Bill Jokes, they didn't want to reduce the number. And we, Mr. Sheridan made it clear he'd like to see a lower number. The residents like to see it, and they said, thanks, but no, thanks, it's not economically viable. So if, if you went with a lower number that didn't require the ZTA, is it still economically viable?
Well, right now, as it is under the current zoning, we can't do anymore. You know, condominiums, so, um, you know, some is better than none, so, you know, but that would be, you know, so right now, our density is completely capped. You know, we were trying to find sort of a, you know, um, something that made sense, you know, so I, but I think that that's, you know, something that we could certainly look at if it's not, you know, the additional dwellings we asked for, you know, it might be a lower number, and so that could be something that we could talk about. But right now, we can't have anything.
I'm now, and and Ms. Cosby's probably tired of looking at me, but I'm sitting, I'm sitting through my third.
Up here.
My third public hearing. No, no, no. Um, I'm, I'm sitting through my third public hearing on this. Um, the, you know, we heard it twice on the planning commission. We deferred it the first time. Um, I would venture to say, you know, I don't want to speculate, you were talking about speculating, I don't want to speculate what the vote would have been that first night had we deferred. I would assume it probably wouldn't have passed. Um, the planning commission, obviously, it can still come to the board at that point. It came back to the planning commission, it was a pretty emphatic, you know, zero to five, and and a lot of the conversation that occurred there was over the context, uh, more so over the zone text amendment than necessarily what was trying to be accomplished there. Um, and I think maybe some of the unattended consequences that can come with a, a zone text amendment such as that. Um, we're now, you know, hearing it here tonight and reading the reasons for the deferrals. You mentioned some other options beside the present option. Again, I don't want to speculate, you know, what the vote would be if we were to, to, to move forward with this tonight, but if this board is, is, is leaning towards a no, would we not want to let them know, hey, this option's off the table, maybe look at something else? That would, that would be my option, and I think, too. We've already had two public hearings on it from, from the planning commission. I mean, maybe, maybe at least listen to what the people have to say. We would still, if we wanted to have the option to defer at the end of the public hearing, um, would we?
Correct.
And I mean, it's one of the options that you're looking at changing the zone into R three?
Yeah.
And would that not be spot zoning?
Yeah, because it, I I asked that at the planning commission, uh, and and I was basically told by Mr. Miles emphatically that that would be.
If you look at the G I S map, there's R three zoning, maybe a hundred, two hundred feet away, right below the dam. There's a fourteen acre parcel that was rezoned by the board in twenty sixteen to R three zoning.
And the board owns that, right?
No.
No.
It's owned by.
It's, it's owned in between the county, it looks like, and and I believe, uh, Lake Monticello, there's there's that one developed.
We're going to do townhouses there.
Right up there on the curve. Between Riverside and the swamp.
Yeah.
I mean, the river. Not well, in the sewer plant.
It was right, if, if you're, if you're going through, um.
When you go up the hill behind the pond, there's a little pole.
I remember that.
And I, you know, and again, I think there's sort of two different discussions with the zoning text amendment and what they're presenting at I, I understand that they're correlated, but, you know, from the perspective of the board, whenever you have a special use permit that's being put in place, whenever you're making a decision in terms of modifying or allowing higher density, that's a decision the board makes, it's not an automatic yes to anybody. So, you know, without having heard what the planning commission uh, felt that that was a concern there. To me, that, that just seems like it's a different discussion than what they're trying to accomplish, and yes, you can say maybe this is quote-unquote spot zoning. They were also zoned out, you know, based on the change that the lake made. Uh, uh, at that point in time. So it's just, it's, it's just a really, to me, it's just, I, I feel terrible for the folks at Marina Point. I feel bad for the neighbors who have to go through this every couple of years with no resolution, and I think that there's, you know, the lake itself, the, the lake board itself is recognizing that this is a, a problem that, you know, they're going to have to ultimately address one way or another. Uh, so it's a very, it's a very unique situation. I don't think the, the county loses anything by having the zoning text amendment. There may be other opportunities where we choose to put in higher density. Um, so it's just a tool, it's a flexibility that we have. Um, so that's kind of the way I look at it from that standpoint. But again, that's, you know, I'm just, that's my opinion, that's what I'm saying, and uh, you know, the board can proceed with the hearing and listen to the different folks that want to present, and what we can do there so in six months, or we can do so a year from now and.
I suggest we go ahead and open up the public hearing and finish our comments after once we've heard from the people.
Do we need a motion to open the public hearing?
No, I think we, we would just move on with.
As soon as we're done asking questions, he'll open up.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, it's open to public hearing, well, well, yeah. I thought you were done, sorry.
No, no, so we have to go through the.
Jump to the, okay.
So, again, the first part was, do you want to move forward? Now we just kind of go through the normal presentation from the county standpoint, then the applicant would present, and then public hearing. So, Ms. Harris.
All right, next slide, please. So this is a request for a zoning text amendment, um, to amend, um, chapter twenty-two. Uh, article eight of the Pluvana County Code, and the section is twenty-two dash eight dash dash three. This addresses the um, zoning, sorry, density regulations. It adds, um, I think that the next one, I think, I'm not sure. I'm having trouble reading my, I'm reading that far away. So the current zoning ordinance um, only has two parts under the uh, residential density regulations, and this puts in place um, minimum requirements if you have um, connections to public water and sewer, or if you do not, if you do not have uh, connections, you must have two acres. If you do have connections or um, ability to connect, it's a fifteen thousand square feet. This request would add a third requirement. I think it's the next one. Um, or a third regulation that would allow a higher density to go up from two point nine dwelling units per acre to between two point nine and five units per acre by special use permit only, so it's not a by right, it is again by special. and five units per acre by special use permit only. So it's not a by right, it is again by special use. Next, please. So this shows areas in the county that are currently zoned R four that could potentially take advantage of the increased density. The, the lowest of the stars there is the, the property in question here, Marina Point. The star just above it is, and I'm sorry, I don't remember that, I think it's eleven acres that could potentially be, take advantage of the increased density. And the third is a parcel in Columbia. The parcel in Columbia, it does not meet the other requirements. It must meet all of the requirements, and it does not have water and sewer accessibility. So that parcel would be off. The, the star above Marina Point could potentially take advantage of the increased density because it does have the ability to connect to public water and sewer.
That's, that's the parcel right there as you're coming around the, the bend from the bridge. It's right before you go up the big steep hill going to Lake Monticello, under right hand side.
So reminding the board, in, in the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, it does address the Ravenna Community Planning Area, which makes up about forty percent of the county's population, probably a little bit more now. It is a traditional neighborhood design with single family detached. There are some single family attached as well. And it, and it indicates that the surrounding growth should be a mixture of uses and residential dwelling types that serve a variety of incomes. Neighborhood mixed uses needed to help offset the volume of single family residential developments in this community. Next, please. And just as the definition that Marina Point falls under the condominium definition, it is a multifamily dwelling. The planning analysis of this is that this request is in conformity with the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan in trying to promote flexibility for housing types, densities, income. Excuse me. Increasing the density in specific zoning districts would allow for additional housing options. I think we can all be fairly limited in the options at the moment, and this could help with this. And I didn't say this at the beginning, but just a reminder that though this is a request that is coming from a specific party to this, this would be a countywide, that would have countywide effect, which probably gathered that from all the other stuff I said. Don't want to really talk too much about the Lake Monticello Owners Association, whereas the board would not have any jurisdiction over that. But as a reminder, the Lake Monticello Owners Association, general rules and regulations would apply to this as well. With the exception that Lake Monticello would permit any, any increased density anywhere but Marina Point. I think I said that right. Next, please. I, the applicant also has a, a short presentation. If you are interested in seeing that, I will step aside.
Okay. The applicant?
Yes, thank you. I will try to keep this presentation brief because I know you've seen it before, and Mr. Goodson's seen it three, four, five, six times. But just some of the history, again, Lake Marina Point at Lake Monticello, which is the applicant here, owns approximately five acres of land in Lake Monticello, and that's the condominium association that's there. That community has been on the property since the mid eighties. And originally, the condominium development was established for forty-five units, and that's the amount of units that was in the recorded condominium documents that were filed with the clerk's office. So it was always intended to be forty-five units. In nineteen eighty-three, the Board of Supervisors had to undertake a zoning to allow the density to be forty-five units. It was originally R one, and so it had to be rezoned to R two. So, you know, the, the plan was always, you know, that these forty-five units would be allowed on this particular five acre property. So, uh, once it was rezoned and the condo docs were filed, then the first nine condominium units were built between eighty-five and ninety-one, and then the convertible land of the condo was converted to, to use. Additional units were built and sold by nineteen ninety-seven. So there was a total of fifteen units constructed with another thirty that were allowed to be constructed under, again, the condominium documents that are on file in the clerk's office. So that's happening out at Marina Point, and in the meantime, the county undertakes a comprehensive downzoning of certain areas of the county, which included bootstrap, if you will, the, you know, Marina Point's five acres, and so it was zoned R four, which immediately wiped out, decreased the density. And so it was capped at the five, the fifteen units that are currently established. So those additional thirty units, you know, under the zoning wasn't allowed. And so, so right now, that's where we are. We've, we've got these condominium documents that are over in the clerk's office and plans that have been, you know, with, within the developers, you know, that he's been working on for all of these decades, that they've been paying connection allocation fees to Aqua Virginia all of these years because there's still legal lots, if you will, under the Condominium Act. They've also been taxed at a higher rate by the county. So the taxes and, you know, the utilities are being paid, you know, sort of this anticipation that they would be built. So but for the rezoning, you know, you would have forty-five units out there. So over the years, the developer and the county have, and the community, you know, have all been trying in various ways, you know, through compromise legislation, you know, using the court system, trying to figure out, you know, what can be done. And I think most recently, we've been looking at a legislative fix. You know, coming to the board with the text amendment the first time, you know, with the support of staff, that was actually staff initiated to have a text amendment to increase the zoning in the R four uh, classification, you know, that didn't pass the board, you know, but the directive was, you know, maybe, maybe by special use permit, you know, maybe you can, maybe that might work. So the, so the applicant went back and filed these, the two zoning applications. The first one is the zoning text amendment that would increase the density. And I'm going on script here, increase the density in the R four zoning district up to five units per acre by special use permit only. So as you've seen, the, there are only limited areas in, in the county of R four where, you know, this density would be, you know, this could even work, those stars on the map. And then within that, the board would still have to issue a special use permit. So while it, it would be countywide under the R four zoning, it really would be very limited and then only approved on a specific case by case basis. So again, trying to come up with a way that is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. We know that this is, you know, it's, it's a problem for our acres, but in trying to find a fix, you know, we tried to, we had to do that within, you know, the parameters of what the county's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance allows. You know, we didn't, you know, we, we didn't want to undertake, and the county couldn't undertake yet spot zoning or, you know, or anything that, that didn't make sense for the county as a whole. So this, we thought was conforms with the comprehensive plan, the increased zoning in this area, but then also gave protections. And so the next, so, you know, is the higher density appropriate in Marina Point? And we think the answer is yes. And, you know, you've just heard, and I won't belabor it, there's language from the comprehensive plan about increased density and different housing types and multifamily being appropriate in, you know, the growth areas and then the lake, particularly in the Lake Monticello and Ravenna district. So it's not just us, that's language from the comprehensive plan, you know, is this a perfect solution to all of those? You know, the, the housing? No, of course it's not. We have five acres, but is it appropriate? The question is, is the density appropriate here? I think the answer would be yes. And so, and I think that's, but staff's conclusion as well and has been all along. So, again, just language from the comprehensive plan, which supports the increased density, and there's language from the land use chapter and the housing chapter. I won't belabor that. So we can just skip through those slides because I think everybody has heard that. Again, those are just summaries. The zoning text amendment would increase the density up to five units by special use permit only. And then our, the second task is the special use permit if the text amendment were approved, and that would allow the construction of only ten additional units, but no more. And so that was, you know, again, part of the compromise position that we, you know, under the condominium documents, although it says we could build another thirty. You know, we knew that there wasn't support for that. We were willing, to your point about the finances, you know, what, you know, we were willing, the, the owner was willing to say, okay, you know, I will go as low as ten if there's some support for that, if we can figure out a way to do that, you know, so he's willing to forego developing twenty extra units if we can get this through. And so, you know, then you come, so that's, you know, sort of the compromise that, that we were, have looked at as part of this process. There's the language, again, that increases the additional density. Again, it would only apply to approximately forty acres countywide and then only by S U P. The, the next slide is just related to our special use permit application. Here's what the potential site plan would look like. And the, it's kind of hard, the conditions would require that we building substantial conformance with that plan. We are and continue to work with the neighbors across the street, you know, to try to see if we can shift buildings to, you know, to better sightlines, and we will continue to do that, you know, as part of the site plan process. You know, we could, you know, this would be, you know, what is, would be approved if the S U P were approved, but we would continue to work, you know, with those neighbors up until site plan to see what's the, the very best we can do. And we are, you know, we've been doing that. We've had different versions, you know, none of them have maybe been perfect, but we continue to do that. So there's, there's a landscaping plan, you know, that would be part of the site plan that would have landscaping along the frontage and also along the interior of the property. There, the key conditions of the S U P, number one is only ten additional units could be constructed on the property. So again, the developer is willing to give up those, you know, the twenty that, you know, might be available under the condominium act. Prior to the development of the site, we would need to provide that site plan that, that meets county requirements. We would, the development would be generally in accordance with the site plan that you just saw. The next conditions are, well, those are the conditions that we've been trying to listen since this first started to the neighbors to try to minimize the impacts on the, you know, across the street. And so, you know, the roof heights will be minimized to the extent possible of the new condominiums, the landscaping again, which I mentioned, and trying to integrate the building into the existing hillside are all steps that, you know, that, that we're wanting to take. And that is, again, the presentation, and I appreciate your time again. And again, we would ask for a deferral. We understand what the board's position is, but hope we can continue to, you know, continue to work and try to come to a compromise. We think, we think one is there, we just need a little bit more time, but we appreciate staff and the planning commission and the board's patience and, and listening and, and I know this is painful and, but, but thank you very much. And the community as well. I'm, I'm sorry, and I appreciate them coming out in the cold, and I, I just want to acknowledge that, and they've been very respectful of us. And so I respect their time and, again, their willingness to participate in this conversation. So, thank you.
Any more questions? For the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and directed to the board. Yes, sir.
Evening, y'all. My name's Wayne Nye, and I live at one seventy-six Village Boulevard in the villages of Neighborboro. I hope we're all getting frequent flyer miles for this. Please deny.
Wayne, can I ask you just to speak up a little bit?
Sure. Please deny the proposed zoning text amendment twenty-three oh one, which would affect any current areas of zones R four and any future areas that could be rezoned R four in this county that Aqua Virginia would care to expand and build a big blue water storage tank. Until the colonial circle development has been completed and the effects of this development on the county's infrastructure and costs can be fully understood, I believe there should be no changes to the current zoning ordinances that would permit any additional density for residential construction. Taxes. In a past issue of the Flavanna County Review, County Supervisor Chris Fairchild's letter to the editor states, quote, "To control taxes, you must control growth." Homes raise taxes. A recent study showed that in the state of Virginia, for every one dollar in residential tax revenue, it costs one dollar and eighteen cents in community services such as schools, social services, fire trucks, et cetera, and. Mr. Fairchild has done his own work. Has the county done theirs? Is there a specific study or impact analysis done by our county that would show that colonial circle or any other proposed residential development would not raise taxes? If yes, by all means, let's share this information with all county residents. But if not, where will the money come from to meet those increased infrastructure costs? It will come from all of us. I want to talk a minute about safety in the county. I'd like to read you a recent post from the social media site called Nextdoor. The post starts, "Question for any residents that try to exit onto Lake Monticello Road from either Profton or Cherokee. We are to the point we can only make right turns. Cars are flying around the curb and you cannot see them. I've come close now, three times, to either being T-boned or rear-ended. What are we going to do when the colonial development is complete?" There are thirty-eight comments to this post so far. Let me read you just a couple. Comment, "Add Riverside to the problem access points, please." Comment, "It's all the new development with no infrastructure." Comment, "None of the roads were improved to accommodate all those new homes." Comment, "Speeding in all of our roads is out of control. We need intervention now." Comment, "People have been complaining about the speeding inside the lake and outside it, but it seems to be falling into dustman's ears." Probably because of a law enforcement shortage, I'm guessing, or until something dreadful happens. Comment, "I'm praying no accidents happen to Crofton Insurance. They're going at least sixty-five down that hill that continues to worsen and colonial development is not even finished." Comment, "It's a kill zone." Comment, "We just need to be able to exit safely." These are the words of our fellow Flavanna County citizens. These words beg for safety, for law enforcement, and for a county infrastructure that supports our present density of residential housing. They beg for more foresight and more control in county planning. Until the colonial circle development has been completed and the effects of this development on the county's existing infrastructure and costs can be fully understood, there should be no changes to current zoning ordinances that would permit any additional density for residential construction. This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is not appropriate for the public necessity, for the public convenience, or for the general welfare of the public. Please deny zoning text amendment twenty-three oh one. And thank you for all coming out on this cold, dark night. It's going to be a long day. You know, be careful driving home.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Gary Anafin. I live at nine fifty-three Jefferson Drive East. I am one of the neighbors that is affected directly by the, the new buildings. So I'd like to just read my viewpoints. My wife and I moved to Lake Monticello in nineteen ninety-two. We asked about the development across the street and were told because of a court case, the fact that the area already had more people than it was zoned for living there, and only with a hundred percent yes vote by the people living in the condos, could there be more buildings put there? And that would only be a very slim chance of further development. We later met with the head of the Marina Point condo association, Saul Kaplan. We later met with the head of the Marina Point condo association, Saul Kaplan, who also confirmed those conditions. He added, he felt no one in their right mind living at Marina Point condos would vote for more construction around them. But here we are over thirty years later and Dice Hammer and group are still trying to take away my, my neighbors and the Lake Monticello community's view of the lake. There are only three views on Jefferson Drive of the lake itself. Jefferson Drive is our main road. There is the view from the dam. There is the, my view and the view of my neighbors. If this development is approved as is, two of the three views of the lake would be taken away. For me, every three to five years, the last thirty years, Mr. Hammer and his developer have been trying to take these views of the lake away from the Lake Monticello community. And not once was there ever meeting between Mr. Hammer and his developer and the community around the Marina Point condos, trying to come up with some kind of equitable solution to this development issue. The resolution, I feel, is really quite simple. Dice Hammer's solution to this development is, uh, Dice Hammer wants to build more buildings on this land in order to make the last bit of money he can from this area he owns. The people living at the Marina Point condo associate now feel that they need more money to fix structural problems they didn't put enough money aside for. My feeling is build your buildings on top of the hill next to the buildings that already exist there. And everyone will at least get what they need from this situation. Mr. Hammer will have more homes to sell. Marina Point people will hopefully get the money that they need for the repairs. And I, my neighbors and the Lake Monticello community will still have the only three views from Jefferson Drive of our lake. So my request now is to please turn down this new zoning for the new development at Marina Point and force Mr. Hammer and his developer to work with the community and come up with a compromise solution we can all be happy with. This really can be done. We just have to get together and really develop to listen to what we would like. And we are already, I am already willing and understand that they need to come up with some kind of resolution for the, their money needs. So I'm willing to say, okay, I will work with you. You can have your buildings. Just be careful about where you place them. Listen to us about that. I don't think that's asking a lot. And like you said, Mr. O'Brien, maybe it's time everyone sat down and did a serious discussion about this situation. And come up with a reasonable compromise we can all live with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, good evening, Chairman and Board members. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk about the lake, this, uh, Marina Point. My name is John Dana. Uh, my wife and I moved here in I'm sorry, nine five one Jefferson Drive, which is great, right across the street from Marina Point. My wife and I moved here in, uh, two thousand and seven and, um, which is directly across, as I said. But I urge you tonight to deny both the ZTA and the supplement, the special use permit tonight. Prior to buying our house, our due diligence also determined that there were several legal and procedural reasons which did not permit any further building, uh, including, uh, Marina Point, including our four zoning. For several years now, this, this issue has been addressed by other commissions, boards and by the Flavanna County Circuit Court originally at one time, which denied any further development after the developer did not build within the established guidelines for, for decades. The prior members of the Marina Point Association refused to give unanimous approval to the developers to build more units. So nothing was built. Finally, they actually did get approval from, uh, the existing current, some of the current members there that live there, the owners. So they were able to perceive what they're doing now, what they've been doing for a year or two. Uh, and then, as you know, as most recently, our planning commission voted five to zero to recommend denial to you tonight. I would like to highlight some factor, some other factors which prevent further building there. My understanding is not in conformance with the Flavanna County Comprehensive Plan as it stands right now. It does not improve the public welfare or, or it is not a necessity. Any further building would violate the existing Marina Point deed restrictions, which restrict what we have. The Marina Point is subject to the Virginia Condominium Act, permission from the Virginia Condominium Act for a conversion of convertible land there. That Marina Point expired almost thirty years ago on May thirty-one, nineteen ninety-six. Past claims by the developer that the new units would address a variety of age groups and income levels. These, this just does not apply here. These are three level townhouses, uh, three level duplexes with two car garages with over thirty-eight hundred, thirty-eight hundred square feet. The cost of these, uh, homes, which I don't know what it would be, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars, would be beyond the reach of most working families here in Flavanna County, as well as our elderly and families needing affordable homes, affordable housing. In the developer's application for the special use permit, in fact, the, um, the section concerning the protection of adjoining properties is not addressed at all. No consideration has been given to the three property owners who will experience a loss in our property values if this project does go forward. I, I suggest to you that you should not change the R four zoning for the entire county to enable the current Marina Point owners to have the developer replace their bulkhead, which is what the, the primary repairs need to be done. I do not believe the majority of the Lake Monticello, uh, Lake Monticello residents as a whole would vote to change the density at the lake if it came before the Lake Monticello Board of Directors for action. I sympathize, sympathize with the current Marina Point owners, but these costs that they're trying to get through this new construction are normally covered by funded reserves and condominium associations, which, which were not funded, particularly reportedly in this, in this community. And that's a bit, I thank you very much for the time to present you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Smith. I live at six Sunset Court. Uh, we moved there in, uh, two thousand and ten and it seems like it's almost that long this case has been going on. Uh, I urge you to deny it, not to defer it. I heard this evening that, um, they're referring to the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan and that this is in conformance with that. That plan is dead. Nothing in the two thousand forty comprehensive plan has changed that will allow for this particular construction or development. They showed a map of the county that showed the areas that this zoning might affect. One of those was in Cunningham. You'll recall zoning R four requires public water, public sewer. There's no public water, no public sewer in Cunningham. This to me looks like a typical case of spot zoning for a very small percent of your population. And I think it would be contested on that, uh, particular case. There may be a need to put additional units there. They're talking about trying to get it rezoned to R three. Give them a chance, give them a year, like it's happened before, to come back with a case that you can consider and give a fair consideration one time. This has been going on for, I want to say a year and a half. I know I've been to at least four or five of these. Your planning commission voted five to zero to deny it. I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tom Diggs. I live at nine forty-seven Jefferson Drive. I'm speaking in my personal capacity and not as Chair of LMOA's Community Development Committee. And before my comments, thank you, your air conditioning works fine. I am opposed to ZTA twenty-three oh-one and I'm asking you to follow the unanimous recommendation of the planning commission to deny it. Any change to the zoning ordinance needs to be in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Further, any change should be considered based on whether the potential outcome of the change will be good for the county as a whole and not whether it is good for a single property owner. I believe ZTA twenty-three oh-one is not in conformity with the comprehensive plan and that its potential outcome will not be good for the county as a whole. Page twenty-eight of the comprehensive plan states, quote, "There must be valid reasons for any zoning amendment that are substantially related to the public welfare and necessity." It is not sufficient that an applicant merely show that there is no neighborhood objection to the requested amendment. Neither Marina Point's application nor the staff report provide any reasons that are substantially related to the public welfare and necessity. In fact, Marina Point did not include a rationale specific to the ZTA twenty-three oh-one or present any valid reasons. Further, there are neighborhood objections to the amendment. The comprehensive plan's discussion of the Revanna CPA references increasing density and developments surrounding Lake Monticello and strongly suggests increasing, increased density should be tied to open space, affordable housing and transfer of development rights. ZTA does none, nothing to promote affordable housing, nor does it address open space. Nothing in R four addresses affordable housing or requires open space or specified amenities, all of which should be in any affordable housing development. All three strategies in the comprehensive plan's implementation goal of providing most housing in the CPAs are relevant here. One, and these are quotes, "Create zoning that enables increased residential density in the growth areas and allows for mixed use and mixed income developments, including residences above storefronts." Two, "Consider well-planned holistic developments within growth areas and near-supporting infrastructure such as schools, utilities, emergency services, parks and natural areas in order to create balanced communities, maximize land use and minimize negative environmental impacts." Three, "Encourage housing in close proximity to commercial development so that the need for transportation to work is lessened." Nothing in ZTA twenty-three oh-one supports any of these three strategies. Strategy one appears to be written for PUDs since there's no other zoning district that addresses residences above storefronts. Strategy two's focus is on issues not required in R four. Strategy three's focus on housing close to commercial developments is suited for R three developments and PUDs since both require commercial areas, while R four by right, commercial use is limited to home occupations. ZTA eighteen oh-five added the provision to increase the maximum density in the R three zoning district to ten units per acre, subject to special use permit. Colonial Circle is the only development that has been granted an R three SUP for increased density. It will likely be at least a year before anyone moves into property there and it could be several years before the commercial space is leased, built and occupied. Flavanna County should not approve any changes to the zoning ordinance that increase density in any zoning districts until there has been time to determine the effect of the R three SUP that permits increased density. Marina Point's application is nothing more than a single page with no discussion or analysis directly related to why ZTA twenty-three oh-one is appropriate to Flavanna County. This may be all that is required for an application, but significantly more is needed to justify the request and give support to having you adopt it. I find it significant Marina Point has not provided any new documentation since the planning commission first considered its application in October. Ms. Cosby's presentation a few minutes ago only addressed the SUP portion of, uh, their application and not how the ZTA will affect the county as a whole. Thank you. Please try and.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or more conversation from the board?
I had, I had some points I wanted to raise on this. Increasing the development, I can see several issues. I live in the Aqua area and the water and sewer over the last eight years has only gotten worse. And I don't see Aqua doing anything in the short term to make it better. And over the past year, when I've been out talking to residents and my opponent in the same way, a lot of people expressed concern on that. Um, in the comments, people brought up about traffic. Traffic is a problem. I drive those roads every single day. They're making improvements at the bottom of Lake Monticello Road and South Boston Road and it's not going to make it any better. And when we asked V Doc, there was any way, would they look at any other options? They were dead set that what they were going to do was the only choice. When in reality, you need those turn lanes coming down the hill. Taxes is another one. It was brought up. I, I can only see this would make it worse. Somebody once said to me, once you develop a parcel, you can't undevelop it. So if we get on this path, we're, we're set that way. And the citizens, the ones, the people that spoke tonight, there was nobody come in favor of it. We only had people that were going to be impinged their views and other stuff. And when they bought those properties, they almost had it. They knew what they were buying into and for us to approve the ZTA, it, it could impact, and I know you say the LM A board has no intention now to change its rules, but that doesn't mean we, we would be opening the door for a future HOA board to change that and that could have an impact. And lastly, Charles Fields recently went through some density changes and there was one property that was on TV. It was like eight hundred square foot and the value of the property went over six hundred thousand simply because of the land it was sitting on was more valuable to tear it down and put apartments or duplexes or triplexes. And I think that would be a side effect of this ZTA. I just cannot see it. I couldn't see myself in any circumstance approving this ZTA, whether it's today in a year's time and five years' time. I campaigned on this. I heard the citizens loud and clear and almost, they were almost unanimous that the water's gotten worse, the sewer's gotten worse, the traffic's gotten worse and they want to see something done about it. And it wasn't just me. They, you know, it's not just the people that voted for me. It was people that voted for my opponent also. He was a big advocate of Aqua and water. So for my district, I can say that this is not what the people want. And, and these people are my constituents that stood up.
I'll, I'll echo some of that as well. You know, we talk about flexibility, flexibility, flexibility. I think Colonial Circle shows that we have enough flexibility in our current zoning to achieve, um, some of the goals we have with regard to flexibility when it comes to housing. And, um, you know, Tim brought up the point of taxes, um, you know, and, and the gentleman, you know, shared the quote, uh, with, with Mr. Fairchild's point that he made in the Flavanna Review. I think this also shows that, you know, yes, we're talking about a specific special use permit here, if, if the ZTA were to pass. However, I'm concerned about unintended consequences. Tim brought up one of those unintended consequences. You're looking at an R four, um, um, parcel that's buildable there. If the LM A were to change, we don't, you know, we don't know what they're going to do in the future. And who knows that we're going to have the infrastructure that's ready to build there. And, um, I think this just shows, you know, we had a conversation about Aqua earlier with regarding a resolution with the lawsuit there. And citizens in that area, which, you know, I have, um, Sycamore Square, I've broken island. A lot of those folks are on Aqua as well. And, and, you know, we continue to say we're concerned about what Aqua's doing, but we're going to continue to build. I just think that shows that some of their concerns are falling on deaf ears. And, and the last point I'll make is, you know, I, I, I've hesitated bringing up this point. you know, I, I, I've hesitated bringing up this point, okay, but we've got to make one, one of two motions sans going on a deferral here. And one of those says, if we were to make a move to pass it, it said, "Finding that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is appropriate for the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, and is good zoning practice." Okay? We're up here to ask tough questions, and I'm not saying that I, I, I necessarily have the answer to this. Okay, but I want to pose this question. And again, I've hesitated doing it, but we're here to ask difficult questions. Would this zone text amendment be for the necessity of Marina Point or the necessity of the general welfare and the public good of the people of Flavanna County? And I'll, I'll leave my, my remarks there.
And one of my other notes I took down here, for them to get the additional ten units versus forty-five, it would be a sixty percent increase in condominium fees. So a sixty percent increase, is that really going to solve any of their problems?
There were a lot of concessions that were made by the developer to help support the existing people that are there. So it's not just that component of it. It's actually upgrading and fixing some of the problems that they have.
But, but even with that, it still doesn't mitigate the other issues.
Well, you know, that, uh, I don't think that the county has made a very good argument so far in terms of defending, you know, why an R three change like this would be good overall. I think they could present a good case for it. I think that there'll be opportunities when we look at the science crossroads areas, we're having more flexibility in the type of zonings that we have, which we don't have very many, and R three with special use permit gives us a little bit more, because R four does not give us that. You know, Mr. Diggs's point about, well, maybe that should be a P U D and how it's tied to the commercial aspect is an important one. Again, I don't know that the county has made that argument particularly well. But I do see the future value of the R three. You know, as far as growth goes, you know, it's a two, it's a two-edged sword, right? In this case, probably the people that would be moving in there would be, you know, wealthy retirees. They would be taxing services from that standpoint, and we would be generating tax revenue from those properties both in personal property and residential property taxes as well, too. You know, I kind of view this and really have a hard time without, you know, the LM O A Board having a real position on this, because I think they, they should have a position on it. And, and so it's hard for me to sit here and argue those points, you know, specifically to say, you know, are we doing this for them or are we doing it for the county? I see two parts, and we have two, two public hearings. The ZTA aspect, which again gives us that tool and that flexibility, and then the actual SUP aspect, which gives them the opportunity to build those properties, which I don't think that's been resolved by any measure in talking to the neighbors and talking to those folks from that standpoint, or the board from that standpoint. So, you know, they're two different parts. But growth is going to happen because, and taxes are going to happen in two different ways. One, you can say, yeah, we're not putting in more properties, and so our taxes are lower. That's true, but you're artificially modifying the demand, which means that since there are less, the logical conclusion is the value goes up, which you may say that's great, but you're going to pay more taxes on the increased value. So you're still finding a way that people are paying more for housing by artificially restricting housing. That's happening in Charlotte. That's part of the reason why they're increasing density. That's happening in all of them. Same thing. You see those things happen from that standpoint. Second, you have by right development on A one. And right now, it comprehensive plan hasn't changed, so you still have cluster subdevelopment, which means that you're actually utilizing more land than less land by having those by right developments. Again, I think that comes back to our comprehensive plan, Planning Commission, and different types of zoning that we would have available to us. So, you know, that's a, that's an important question. These are important discussions. I don't know that they're complete. You know, if the county was to come in and say, yes, we need to have more discussion about the ZTA itself specifically and how it benefits the county. And so therefore, we would argue for deferral of that. I think that would be one position that could be taken. Or we deny it and, you know, some other down-the-road process happens where there is a different type of zoning put in place that gives us more flexibility. When it comes to science crossroads, this would be the type of zoning that would be beneficial. It would ultimately consolidate and meet all of the goals that are currently in the comprehensive plan that Mr. Diggs pointed out as, for example. So, you know, that, that's kind of the thing that I look at from that standpoint and say, you know, this is a complex issue. We have the ZTA and we have the SUP. I would probably say, you should probably have some flexibility here and vote for the ZTA, but I would probably defer or not vote for the SUP as it stands right now, because I don't know that they've met the goals with their neighbors so far. So that's kind of my point.
I agree with you, Tony, on sign crossroads is where this could happen, but you also mentioned taxes and with values going up because law supplying demand, but also the board has a tool to mitigate that, and that's called equalization. So even though the value went up, when we equalize the rate, because the services haven't changed, there's no reason that we would go with it other than to take advantage of saying, well, it's lower, but it's actually higher.
Sure, the, the county can do that, but make no mistake, people that are buying are paying a higher premium, right? So in other words, if the value increases by a hundred thousand dollars, your taxes might have only increased by two hundred dollars for the year, but now you're paying a hundred thousand dollars more. That is ultimately a form of a tax. When housing affordability becomes a problem, that is a tax. Whether the county benefits from it or not, it is a tax.
I've got a couple of comments. I'm just going to say, I'm going to take advantage of having a lot of folks from the lake, possibly from the board at the lake. Gentleman talked about driving into Riverside and Crofton. I do that every day in a school bus. Come out of there in a school bus and have to turn left. That's an interesting proposition. I will, I will ask that if they possibly can take a look at working with neighbors and moving security fences and, or safety fences and cutting limbs back, that would help a whole lot in those two intersections. As far as this goes, I don't really have, well, one of the sections is in my district, the one in Columbia. It's not being developed, has no sewer, and it, and it's in an area, right now, it's a long ways from anything like that ever happening. I just, we, we first deferred this how long ago? A year? A year and a half? Year and a half, and nothing's been done to it to change it, to make that's the issue I have. We said that a year and a half ago, we said.
Was it ZTA R four, though? That was R four changes.
Well, not a whole lot been done.
This is R four.
This is R four.
Yeah.
Saying that.
The change was made originally, it was normally by right, then increased density. Now the increased density is by SUP. That's the change that would.
By R four, so the original one was R three?
No, no, no.
By, okay.
By right.
Right.
Now it's by R four by SUP.
It's the same thing. They're asking for the same thing, but through an SUP. First time they said it was by right.
Correct. So that's where you'd have to have a separate public hearing.
But, but nothing's changed other than that. Anyway, that's all I want to say. I ain't going to talk all night.
Do, when, when did this go to court? You know, when, when it, was it early two thousands?
Long time ago.
Long time ago. Call it twenty years, so. I, I wonder, you know, I, I hear about, well, the courts denied it in, in nineteen ninety-two. Flavanna made some changes that, and, and I do understand adversely affected the developer more than thirty years ago. I, when I think of those dates and I hear how, you know, how this is affecting the residents of Marina Point, I wonder if anybody lived there twenty years ago when it went to court. I wonder, I'd be really surprised if somebody lived there ninety-two when this switched with the county. Maybe so. But it would sure be a minority, and so for the majority of those tenants or residents, I can't see how there's a hardship to buying something you knew was already there. And so in the same way to the residents that live across the street, especially since it had been to court, so it's, it's had the two negative events for Marina Point. Ninety-two, what the county did, and then the courts. So in the same way, the people who moved across the road had reason to believe that that wouldn't be there. So the decisions had already been made about what would be at Marina Point in my eyes, if I bought one of those properties. Regarding R four and, and doing anything that that spreads this across other parts of the county, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about R four tonight if it wasn't for Marina Point. This discussion would not be on tonight's agenda. So whatever benefits or not about R four, which I wouldn't vote for, but we are talking about one property affecting the entire county. And whether a court would rule that way or not, that to me is spot zoning we would not be here without. And even in the presentation made to the Board of Supervisors, it was stated by the applicant that the county planner was trying to help get this passed, however it was said, by affecting the way that it was worded and what, what came in front of the board. I don't believe the comprehensive plan calls for this, and if we're talking about what we're waiting for, I don't believe the comprehensive plan is going to get more liberal in this aspect when we finish the, the two thousand forty. So I don't see anything that says that there's hope coming from the comprehensive plan for the developer. Back to R four. I, I can't help but go again, especially because it came up tonight. I don't like to bring up old stuff, but when this came in front of the board before, I said, this Lake Monticello, it was said to us that some very minimal, like two properties or something in Flavanna County that this affected. Okay, so three. Lake Monticello, correct me if I'm wrong, is R four, right?
Yes.
So as I said then, and as we all know, one board of directors or whatever won't stop what the next board of directors feels is appropriate, and ten years from now, you know, what, once Lake Monticello is built out, where's the revenue come? The next revenue, the, the next revenue stream?
But I, but I, I'm trying to understand how they would even go about doing that, because the lake is almost fully built out. They'd have to basically buy up people's property in order to do that.
Having Realtor could do that, buy three or four adjoining parcels. And if you don't think people do that, look at Alan Powell. He's bought a lot of land around him in a very short period of time.
There's even single lots that would accommodate more than, say, a duplex. So how do you, how do you?
Comes with special use permit, right?
So, uh, I guess what, what, yeah, but exactly, but, but that's the, the board of the time. This board at the time could approve that. The board of Lake Monticello at the time could approve that. And so to say it doesn't affect about three properties, it certainly affects where more than forty percent of the residents of Flavanna County live. And all it takes is the right people at the right time, where suddenly we already have in Lake Monticello, tons of houses, not tons, we have houses that have been torn down to allow for a new house to be built. Well, tear it down and build a duplex, and in some cases, tear it down and build, you know, two over two.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a difficult thing, because yes, we can all have these hypotheticals. I mean, I suspect that the developer could say, well, obviously, I'm not going to be able to develop this land, so therefore, I'm going to give up my connection fees. I'm going to give up my zoning, I'm going to revert it to A one, and then I'm going to put pig farm on it. By right. I mean, so I don't think that's going to happen, but I'm just saying, you know, all things have some consequences related to them. You know, but certainly, if the message that we're sending to that developer is that land is worthless to you, you know, then so be it. The land is worthless. If it was my piece of land, I know what I'd do with it. I'd downzone it, because I'm not going to pay those higher taxes knowing I can't develop it.
But you still have to come before the board.
You still have to come before the board, and what's your justification for not downzone?
Because if you downzone that parcel, the development that's currently on it is taking up the allotted use. So you'd exceed the downzone. So if you turn that parcel to A one and it's five acres, you could have two properties on it. So if you parcel that right, well, there's more than two there now.
I mean, that's certainly a possibility, you know. I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just saying, you know, I have this land that I don't have any parcels on. I mean, I don't have anything on there. You know, I'm going to do something with it, and I, why am I going to continue to pay higher taxes on it when I can't use it?
I mean, you can make that same argument like in, in my neighborhood where it is a cluster development and you have one parcel that's the largest piece, and then the landowner go, well, hey, I just want to change it later. No. That was part of the original zoning.
That's right.
So these units are part of this R four zoning. You can't then downzone two acres of it. Because then you'll be over on the acreage you have left. So it'd be a nonstarter to begin with. And we would definitely, if we approved it or even attempted to approve it, we'd be open ourselves up to litigation.
I'll go back to, it's funny you missed said it, Chris. I've got written here as a question, not as a statement. I, I took yours as a statement, but as I said, were we, were we having a conversation about the need to change R four before Marina Point? Sounds like you're of the opinion that, no, we weren't having that. And I kind of asked a similar question when we were talking about the water line last week. Obviously, we don't want to get in a conversation about that, but to help better understand a little bit of the history of the stuff, I said, were we talking about extending that? Well, I had the same question here under the same, you know, it's analogous question. Were we having that conversation, the need to change R four before Marina Point? And I think that sort of maybe for me begins to answer the question of, is this something we're doing for one, one particular interest, or is this something we're doing for the general welfare for the, for the, you know, so I, maybe, maybe there were conversations prior to your time. I, I don't know about expanding R four, having more flexibility in R four. But I think that's an important question to ask and consider. Maybe, again, maybe that's a rhetorical question as, as we continue to look at this.
We will make a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion, yeah. So it's before we go on, so because the motions are big. So there's a motion, because the motions are slightly different, the verbiage is slightly just ever so different that Mr. Whitten drafted. So this screen shows a motion to approve. This screen shows a motion to deny. This screen shows a motion to defer for the ZTA. So I guess what? You can go forward one, one screen.
Right there.
Finding that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment is not appropriate for the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, and is not good zoning practice, a move that the Board of Supervisors denies ZTA twenty-three oh one and ordinance to amend chapter twenty-two zoning, article eight of the Flavanna County Code by the addition of the following text under section twenty-two dash eight dash three, see, the permitted residential density for such permitted uses meeting the requirements in twenty-two dash eight dash three B shall be between two and nine tenths, two point nine and five, five point oh units per acre by special use permit alone.
I second.
Motion made by Mr. Goode, seconded by Mr. Hodge. All those who say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Chair votes aye. I didn't.
I said aye.
Oh, uh.
I took deny.
Deny.
Yeah.
Okay. It's denied by a count of, by a vote of five. Five zero. Okay, and we have, uh, so we're at K, aren't we? Amend section.
Do we have to do J?
We don't have to do.
No, that's what I'm saying, we don't.
Item K, amend section twenty dash one dash five of the county code to authorize the treasurer to approve refunds up to ten thousand dollars. Mr. Whitten?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Give my powerpoint.
Please pull up like.
Hold on, no, I can play about the one quick. Caitlin, you know where to. We have to go into recess? No, I need to go too.
I need to go too.
We're in, we're, we're in between items. You want to do five minutes real quick?
We, we can.
I make a motion that the board recesses for five minutes.
Second.
Motion to recess motion made by Mr. Hodge, seconded by Mr. Goode. All in favor? None, I would, I almost opposed. Did you tell me last time there's one back there?
You go down the stairs, there's, there's two. Looks like Tim's beating.
What's I'm trying to be quick enough on the draw.
Told my dad I could. Oh, no, we're up ten. UBA is up ten right now. I think he gave the tickets to the postman, postmaster. I was dying. Besides empty. There's.
Yeah, no, I wasn't sure.
The Journal Assembly.
Yeah. No, I'm not red saying I'm trying to blink out, so I'll go really quick here.
Clearly, I've invested in getting first impressions. Are you gonna cut that? What's the date again? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the ordinance basically to given the authority to the treasurer to issue refunds of a higher amount, twenty-five hundred to two thousand dollars.
Can I ask people to keep it a little quiet? Is there a restart in the meeting? Thank you.
Excellent. So Virginia Code Section fifty-eight point one dash thirty-nine eighty-one was amended in two thousand and twenty-two to increase the maximum amount that treasurer can refund without board approval to ten thousand dollars as the result of an erroneous assessment. So the proposal is to amend County Code Section twenty dash one dash five to raise the authorized refund amount from twenty-five hundred to ten thousand. The treasurer would have the authority to approve refunds up to ten thousand dollars without the approval of the board upon certification of the commissioner revenue with the consent of the county attorney as such refund is the result of an erroneous assessment. So normally the refunds do when the residents moved out of the county prior to the tax year where the owner is qualified for the disabled veterans relief during the tax year. The treasurer would still report the refund to the board by the end of the month, which the refund is issued. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tony, you have any questions?
I looked out and I got ready to say, well, the treasurer is right here, but she's not the treasurer anymore.
And again, in the ordinance, you can see the if it'll pull up, you can see the only change is the amount.
And I did talk to the new treasurer and she is supportive. It's the change.
I was gonna say it's a public hearing if she wants to come up and give her perspective.
I know this happens a lot with the veterans and I know and that's probably ones that are your bigger ones. And I'm getting the head nod from a young lady that might have a little knowledge about that.
We just had one other day for around twenty-seven hundred and that for me to sign off on, I was like, we can't sign off on it. It has to go to the board. So that's why it came up, you know, we can raise this to ten thousand if we wanted to.
So I have a quick question. One, why do we duplicate state code when there's no necessity to unless we're trying to be more restricted?
It's optional authority.
Optional, okay. And could we could we exceed what the state authorizes? I didn't think so. So we can make it lower, but same rate or lower. Okay.
I have no questions.
So you remember you got to open a public hearing.
Opening the public hearing, please keep your comments to the five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearings. Any questions or comments from the board? Nope. They have a motion?
I move that the board supervisors approve the ordinance to amend Section twenty dash one dash five of the Flavanna County Code to authorize the treasurer in accordance with Virginia Code Section fifty-eight point one dash three-nine eight-one A to approve refunds up to ten thousand dollars without the approval of the board of supervisors upon certification of the commissioner of the revenue with the consent of the county attorney that such refund is a result of an erroneous assessment.
Second. Second, you said motion made by Mr. Goode, seconded by Mr. Sheridan. All who vote aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote against? Spare votes aye, passes five zero. We're going back to S, aren't we?
L, L.
One more. Oh, yeah. Item L, public hearing to enact Section four dash two dash five of the county code to prohibit dogs from running off-leash on certain county properties.
So I'll make the presentation then. I'll suspend our Sarah Kaisersen questions as well. So over the past several years, there's been a number of dogs running off-leash in Pleasant Grove Park. And we're starting to get many complaints about patrons on the trail being bit down by dogs off-leash. And we're also getting complaints about individuals with multiple dogs that are off-leash and not within their view. And so we're also getting complaints about dogs on and around the soccer fields at Pleasant Grove. And at the library parking lot, it's also been an issue where people just let the dogs out of their cars to run straight to the trail, which can cause issues. So I mean, the difference, first one, talk about the difference in running a large ordinance and leash law ordinance. So running a large ordinance is what the board passed last year countywide. And that says basically the dog has to be underneath, under your control. So I run the trails at the park quite a bit and saw a lot of, a lot of times I'll see dogs, they'll be, you know, ten, twenty feet in front of their owner, but they'll call the dog back to them, they'll grab their collar, they'll put them on a leash. They're under their control, so they're not running at large. For a leash law, actually, you'll have to have a leash to actually physically attach to your dog, whether it be a flexi leash, a six, a six-foot leash. Is the basically difference.
So essentially they're obviously with the leash law, you need a leash with the running at large. You generally have to be in the same vicinity. So what I'm gathering is that the issue is, is that there's just dogs that are owned by people running around and there's no owner anywhere.
And a lot, well, a lot of times the dog will be within ten, twenty feet. The other day I was running up the trail, saw a German shepherd. I waited a few seconds, kind of stopped and the owner appeared in view, grabbed the dog's collar and I ran by the dog. But other times there's been issues, especially on the ball fields where the dogs are just running around kids and the owners are nowhere in sight. So you kind of have two types of issues and two types of dog matters is what the scenarios that the animal control officer has talked about. And I guess Aaron can bring to a few other, I guess, situations he's seen or heard about at the park.
Yeah, I mean, they're basically what you said. I mean, there's some like a dog that chased an animal out of the woods and the owner doesn't even have an idea where the dog's at because the dog took off after a deer or something else. So and then you're trying to find the dog's owner and the dog's owner doesn't even know where the dog's at. Some places like that, like stuff like that. I've had people come to me, say they've been on the trail and they got bit in the leg by a small dog that wasn't on a leash. And their county residents, they say they don't want to come back on our trails because they don't feel safe on our trails. Because people can't control their dogs. And it's not everybody, don't get me wrong. There are a lot of people that are able to control their dogs, but there are many that can't too. And if you let the many they can't out there, then we could have a big issue. And that's what we're trying not to have. And the park is busier than it used to be in the past. Like before COVID, the park wasn't used as much, but now people want to get outdoors. So we have a lot more people coming to the park just to hang out as a family or do an event or more sports. I mean, it's gotten bigger. It's gotten a lot, a lot more people using the park.
So right now the policy states dogs have to be on a leash at all times except and designated off-leash areas. And so right now it's a policy, it's not an ordinance. Excellent. And so right now, under the policy, the ball fields, dogs can't be on the ball fields at the horse trailer parking lot. And right now they can be off-leash at Sandy Beach or the dog park. Or next slide. Or to the right of that red line. Basically, everything to the right, they can be on those trails off-leash. Everything to the left, they have.
And running a large law applies there as well.
Correct. Running a large is countywide. So as long as you're, you can get control of your dog again, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, then your dog is not running at large. So if it were current policy, we're unable to enforce any offenses except to charge the owner of trespassing, which is a class one misdemeanor because it's not an ordinance violation. So if there was an ordinance, we could actually have civil penalties as a small civil penalty as an option. So what's being proposed is the area to the, basically to the right of the library. It's where Rock Brook and Heritage Trail intersect down there, everything to the right. So the dogs would still be able to go on that part of Heritage, that part on Rock Brook, part of Hall of Horseshoe, River Bluff Trail. And Discovery Trail would all be off-leash. And then also this front field at the main entrance to Pleasant Grove, you know, there's a little parking lot to the right where you'll see people parking. Everything from there to the that's still be able to.
From the bottom up.
That's not, yeah, that's not acres in the front of the park.
It's like, yeah, there's like a little drainage area swell right there.
Everything's not.
The square four and then the length of five.
What do we call it? The meadows.
Yeah, everything's not in the meadows would be off.
And that, that area would actually be designated by resolution. If the ordinance passed tonight, then at the next meeting, the board would pass a resolution where it would actually approve the maps that show the designated off-leash areas because the ordinance does not go into effect for thirty days. You have time to publicize it.
So when that area right there on the screen, what do we do when cross-country is running through there?
So cross-country won't run through there. They run at the top. That's why I made the thing at the bottom towards the road because all the cross-country parks up top above that.
Okay.
Up in there. And then they run the trails up top. They run in the trails up top.
They used to run that front field.
They used to, but they don't anymore.
Right across and go down those trails you see.
Yeah, but they don't anymore. They run there and then they run past the soccer fields, the ball fields and back and then behind the house. So we, we proposed that and that way it wouldn't interfere with that. And there's no trail access from the front field unless you would go through the briars and actually get on the trail. But there is no trailhead.
Thank you. I noticed this real quick before we move on. I saw after board discussion, correct me, was this, did y'all talk about this before Tim and I came on?
Correct.
Yeah. And, and so are these updated slides with feedback from from then, did y'all have discussions about where these off-leash things would be?
Yeah, I think we had in the front.
This is added.
Originally it was just this.
To the right.
This area to the right. Then there was some discussion from the board. So we went back and tried to determine what would be another good spot.
So many people use that area right there.
That way we're still giving patrons some of the Pleasant Grove Park to use and they don't have to go to the dog park if they wanted to run their dog at the park. They still have nine acres at the park they can use.
Off-leash.
Off-leash.
And y'all, it was a deferral last year, right?
We just, yes, we deferred it. We'll wait. We're gonna have a new board instead of doing it at the very end. We just said, okay. Just let you guys have it.
All right. Thank you.
So under the ordinance, so basically it states no dog shall run unrestricted. And what unrestricted means, it's only on county property. Basically means not under the control of owner or agent by leash cord chain or primary enclosure. Went off the property of the owner custodian and an electronic device is not qualified. So a shock collar doesn't qualify. So any person who's found, who's owner or custodian, the dog found unrestricted in the county on county property shall be in violation of the section. Any dog found unrestricted should be impounded except that the owner of the dog can be immediately found and the owner can have custody of the animal. But may still be subject to the penalty. So there are exemptions. There are exemptions for service dogs. His handler is unable because of a disability to use the leash or harness. Or it would interfere in the service dog's performance. Law enforcement dogs, dogs have been county designated off-leash trails, dog park and off-leash exercise areas. And a county approved obedience training classes, agility training or field trials. I believe they do some training classes out there at Pleasant Grove.
We have the community center too. We have a dog, we have a dog class at the community center inside.
And I'm not sure if they've ever done field trials or anything like that, but.
We, we don't, we see people out there going, but we don't.
Let me ask the question, quick question. I just thought about this. I know that they bring the bloodhounds sometimes.
They're always leashed. They're never unleashed. I've never seen them unleashed. They've always been, yeah, they've always been leashed.
I'm just checking. That's the only other time I know of. It's not a field trial.
Would they be law enforcement?
Yeah, law enforcement would, would that fall?
But everyone I've always seen, they've had the long
Thirty foot.
Thirty foot, yeah. Thick leash on.
Yeah, because those are kind of big.
Yeah.
And we don't have, some counties had like a six-foot leash requirement, but right now we, I didn't put any language there about a specific length. So if you have a ten or fifteen foot flexi leash, that would be fine. They could go up to like thirty feet flexi leashes.
That, one more real quick. Yeah, one more. I'm trying to understand this just because I'm so county approved events, including obedience. So does that mean anybody could take their dog to a certain county approved thing and then be allowed to have that dog off?
This is if they're participating in this particular.
Like a class, I think.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a clinic, a class or something like that, I think is what they're trying to.
So it was like some big giant agility course.
I was thinking you could go like get your off-leash license by clinic obedience class or something. Okay, no, that makes sense.
Then bring it to farm day and turn it loose.
Well, I mean, like the fair, we have them come in the fair and we try to ask them not to, but it's hard. We, it's hard to say you can't.
So the penalty, basically we're doing this similar to running at large. Where after you've had three or more violations within two years, then it results in a civil penalty of fifty dollars. So basically you get two warnings before, you know, a civil penalty. So we're not trying to penalize people. We're just trying to educate people and stop the issue. So I looked at the leash law and surrounding localities. So Almaral County says all pets should be kept on a leash, under control while county parks except designated areas. Butchlin County says no person shall have on a county property, any dog unless it's caged, panned or on a leash. Any person using a long leash, they'll shorten the dog's lead when passing another person. So it shows, you know, other surrounding counties have a similar ordinance to this. So the ordinance would be effective thirty days after adoption. And the board would still be able to approve a resolution on, at the February seventh meeting, which actually designates off-leash areas. And then the Parks Direct Department would then publicize that next week, put up all the signs. So that would give time to those separate parks.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Open for public hearing. Please keep the comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board.
Good evening, chairman and other board of supervisors. My name is Patricia Beers Block and I live at one zero through Island Tail Road in Palmyra. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed rule that will prohibit dogs from running off-leash on most of Pleasant Grove at this point. I posted comments to my two cents and I appreciate the feedback that you've provided and other county representatives have provided. And I do want to add some comments that might help enhance the viability of the proposed code. With the recent passage of Section four point two point two, which affects the whole county with prohibits the running at large of there is no public space except the Pleasant Grove Park where, and its trails, where an off-leash dog can with its owner, you know, really traverse the county. Unless you have your own property that's substantial or you have, you know, a closed-in yard, there's nowhere that they can, a dog off-leash can, can go. And that's a bit of a problem in that a dog off-leash is really critical to the dog's safety. Understanding the parameters and the limitations of being off-leash is really important to the dog's safety as well as the owner allowing the dog to be, to work independently. If a dog doesn't respond to a command to come when it's in a serious potential event that where it might get hurt, that dog could, could in fact get hurt. So it's important that dogs be compliant. I, I would like to acknowledge that this proposal is noted will allow for certain trails to be managed as off-leash trails. But the, unfortunately, the vast majority of the trails will not be permitted, at least according to this map, to have engage in off-leash activities. Many trails offered that are not on this proposal offer the topography that mimics many hunting areas and more open terrain that can be helpful for better dog management. E.g., dogs and the owners can prevent unpleasant encounters via a very visible landscape and escape routes. Some of the trails that are proposed have very limited visibility and you don't know that there's going to be an encounter up ahead until you actually are engaged in that encounter. And they don't have escape routes. There's no way to go off into a meadow to protect your, the owner couldn't protect their owner themselves and the dog or a resident couldn't, couldn't protect themselves. So I would like to propose two possible ideas for consideration relative to this proposed county rule. The first is that the county or Pleasant Grove in particular, consider creating a written permit requirement for off-leash dog owner activities that requires all owners interested in interacting with their dog off-leash to submit to park officials or county representative, a form that registers the owner or handler and their dog for this activity at the Pleasant Grove Park. This permit can be modeled after the county dog tag law where all off-leash dogs would need to bear a tag that identifies as registered with the park or the county, however it may be, for off-leash activities. This permit should also include a behavioral assessment portion, a test, for example, that would need to be successfully completed by the owner handler and the dog under the supervision or guidance of a designated county person that could be a park ranger or some other county representative. Only dogs and owner handlers that demonstrate compliance with appropriate obedience commands will be issued a park permit that will allow off-leash engagements on all park trails. So that would give the the owner the opportunity to take the dog on all the trails that are presently available. And I am one of those people and I just enjoy it completely. And I would really like to see that all the trails remain open, but with this caveat that there'd be some protection of residents who don't want an encounter. They don't have, the owner is not appropriately managing the, their own dog. The second possibility is to revise the, if, if we do go through with having limited trails for off-leash use, that the revised park area be include, this is my time, I'm sorry. Can I just complete this one little section?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. That it include additional trails and that would be the Boulder Forest Trail, the Rock Brook Trail and the Heritage Trail that connects Rock Brook Trail and Fern Valley. These are all trails that are within close proximity to the sheriff's office and to the, the the park museum. I just want to mention that Pleasant Grove provides an excellent service to the county residents and visitors who want to engage in responsible off-leash activities, limiting public access or public land to owners who are capable and competent and control their dogs really is a big disservice to the community. So I would like to propose that the vote be postponed until a consideration be given to some other possible ways in which we could control off-leash problems. And thank you so much for the opportunity to take a little bit of extra time and to present my ideas about this.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for waiting.
I hate to interrupt and I'm not trying to, but I need to. We started, so do we need to extend?
No, I mean.
Works best. So that's why I wanted to make sure. Okay, so we're good.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Patricia Grunow. I live on Gravel Hill Road. I appreciate the ideas that were brought here and I also am a big fan of walking at Pleasant Grove with my dog. And I think that was my German shepherd that
It was a very sweet German shepherd. It was, it was fine.
He's lovely. I do nose work with him. And I'm trying, I'm hoping, I don't know, I'm, I'm an older woman, but I'm hoping maybe one day to do some cadaver work with him. And the county Pleasant Grove is all, just an incredible resource that we have here. I've been walking these trails for twelve years, five days a week. And I've gotten, you know, because I've walked the Appalachian Trail up and down several times, I guess you could say. But one of the things that I have noticed and I think all of these concerns are very, very valid. People that are afraid of dogs, I, I understand. It's just, it's very difficult. Getting out the library where so many of these things have happened, especially near the sheriff's office. There is a lack of clear signage all over the trails even, and, and you probably know this too, you can get lost on the trails even having a trail map that just, you walk them too, you know what I'm talking about. But people getting out of their car at the library just let their dogs loose. And then right to the left there, it says off-trail area, off-trail area. It is, I think the new proposal is very restrictive. And I would also like to see, even if they were going to have that portion, there's a couple other sections of the trail down from the library they could open because like she said, when you're looking ahead to see if there's a person coming or another dog coming. If you can't see them, you can't just grab your dog. My dog thankfully is, you know, well, he listens to me and comes when I need him to, but I hope that you guys will respectfully consider expanding the area some. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman and board members, my name is Amy Floyd. I live at forty-seven, forty-six Rolling Road South. This is the first time I've ever attended one of these meetings, so I hope that shows how important this issue is to me. Back in May of two thousand and twenty, my husband and I adopted a cute little brindled mutt dog. And although I'd lived in the county since two thousand and three, I had never walked at Pleasant Grove. And having this dog gave me the opportunity to explore this amazing area. And four or five days a week, we would walk. And most of those times we don't run into anybody. And that was one of the amazing things about Pleasant Grove. And when we did run into people or their dogs, we've never had an incident that caused me to be fearful. My dog doesn't listen as well as he should. And I admit that, but we're working on it. He, his name is Tiger Bear and he hops like a tiger. And when we're going for a walk, that's what he does in our house. He's like, he's so excited to get out and to go running. And he runs and he sniffs and he doesn't cause any trouble. He doesn't like other dogs. I don't, he learned it when, before we rescued him. So he doesn't do the dog park. He doesn't play frisbee. He doesn't fetch. He runs and that's what he likes to do. I would be curious, I don't know enough about the background that's done, that's come up with this, like what were the incidents? How many incidents has it been? Is it just a small group of dogs? Like how many dogs use Pleasant Grove? How many of them are causing trouble? Please keep that in mind. I would hate for the majority of the good dogs to be punished or restricted because of the bad behavior of some dogs. I did meet a gentleman just a couple of weeks ago whose wife won't walk with him anymore at Pleasant Grove because she was charged by a dog and that is awful. And I've also read recently that LaCicello has had issues with dogs running at large. And again, I would hate to be somebody who got injured by someone else's dog or had my dog injured by someone else's dog. But the majority of dogs that I see and that I run into are not those dogs. So I would ask you to please deny this amendment because not all dogs are bad and please don't punish the good ones. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
I'm Gary Grunow, three forty-two Gravel Hill Road. I'm her other half. And Hans is our dog. We don't go to the dog park because we find there's a lot of dogs in it that can't behave. And we don't want to expose our dog to where he, he has to defend himself or defend my wife. So that can be a problem there too. But a possible suggestion is could there be time periods that would be available during certain hours of the day, certain trails are available to be off-leash? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board?
I think there was some decent points brought up with regard to, I guess, restrictiveness of this. And I'll be honest with you. You know, you walk in here and sometimes you think something's a check in the box for you, but the people get up that have concerns that you may not have foreseen or make you think about concerns that you may have if you were in their shoes. or make you think about concerns that you may have if you were in their shoes. For example, I have a red healer at home who is almost twelve years old, but still will run for days and days and days fetching a ball. I'm fortunate that I live on campus at Fuma and we have a big field out and I can go throw her her ball and let her run around. And we have trails all over private property at Fuma that my wife can go run on with the dog anytime she wants. Other people, especially when Mr. and Ms. Grunow live, there's not a ton of open space over there, you know, for them. If someone doesn't have a ton of property for their dog to go out. And so, you know, I had never kind of considered thinking more broadly about this until some of these folks spoke. Because in my perspective, I never had issues because I'm, you know, blessed to be able to go toss the ball in a two-acre field across from where I live. And can go, like I said, my wife can go run on those trails anytime. I guess what I would, I think, would try to, this is gonna, if you guys already have your minds made up, I mean, it is what it is. I just think, is there things we can sit and consider that might make this a little less restrictive but still achieve the same ends that we want? I don't know that it's the right answer, but I thought the best thing that was proposed was maybe certain times of the day. We could look at having trails open to off-leash. That way people know, hey, between such and such o'clock, if I don't, if I don't want to have this, or, you know, I can go out here and I, or I should be able to go out at this time and know all dogs should be on a leash. I don't know that the open space, I've never been one to be able to conceptualize how big an open space is by a red line on a tax map. Is that open space enough for several people to have their dogs out at one time, you know, throwing the ball around? I don't know, you know, so I would kind of leave it there and, you know, understand if there's not much room for negotiation here. But I would, I would say at least on behalf of some folks, if there's room to have some of those conversations, I'd be, you know, interested in hearing what y'all have to say.
I'll add, so my son and wife and dog, who's the brother of my lab, we're living in Lake Monticello the past three years and especially during COVID, but some of that's changed. Living in Lake Monticello, no less than three, four times a week, Hunter would call me and say he's taking Huck over to Pleasant Grove. And, you know, you're talking about a ninety-pound dog living on a quarter acre in the lake, who's just, at the end of the day, looking at him like, dude, I've been waiting on you. I'm gonna, you know, spontaneously combust. And he'd take him out there and get the energy out of him. And, you know, we've been there a couple times with both the dogs. I've been there a couple times just with Moose. If I, with the dogs, saw another dog there before, I don't remember it. We, I can think of one time that we didn't have the dogs, that we came up on one other dog. And my initial somewhat emotional response to this was, dang, go on it. We live in a one-stop-like county. I live in a country where dogs can run and play and roam and so on. At the same time, somewhat of a rebuttal, we're growing and the density is growing. And so there's more people that the animals are having to interact with. There's more chance and opportunity that the animals could hurt somebody. And I take staff's concerns and the amount of time that staff, along with the sheriff's department and so on, has put into thinking about these questions about dog safety and, we gotta. With all that said, similar to what Mike said, the comments tonight, you know, and having read all of what you all have put in my two cents and so on, and you read it and you go, ah, yes, that's great points. And you look at other possibilities that are mentioned, and then you come back to, well, staff really with thought in this, we've had the conversation about it. But then I hear these things and I go, yeah, I do hope that there might be some movement here, whatever it looks like. And the best thing I heard tonight, not to put everybody through more of this, but this idea I heard was to defer and go back to drawing board a little bit. We're not gonna figure out the best option or answer here tonight if we don't. I mean, let's just say, we're not gonna, if there was a fix or a change, I don't suspect we're gonna make that change here tonight after nine o'clock. I would suggest that we defer, maybe take some of the ideas that citizens have said that them, be it whatever more trails, the time, so on, and then let's come back together.
And I'll say some of the things that were floated around, like I mentioned that maybe, maybe there's a reason that's not the best, the best solution. I do have some concerns about going through more permitting and more paperwork and, and, and the money that that could cost if people are doing this in droves. But I, I think, as you said, if we defer and kind of maybe let Dan bring us back some things that could make this a little less restrictive but achieve the same goals. Because I, I, I do think that something needs to be done here. I would rather be less restrictive and come back and say, that wasn't quite working. We need to tighten it up more than so restrictive that we just kind of shut out some concerns that people have and say, just write them all.
The counterargument to that is, if we defer, you leave it open for someone to get bit or injured in the intervening time. Now, we can be as restrictive as we want now and then expand those areas in the future to open that up if possible. I mean, I was here in the audience the last time you heard this. And I listened to the animal control officer and I listened to Aaron's concerns and the amount of times he had incidents there in the park. My fear would be that we defer or don't do anything, and then a child or somebody gets seriously injured. And through our lack of activity, that we didn't address those concerns. And there were people turned up previously and people have submitted stuff previously that expressed that this was a concern.
I'll just tell you, I know where a lot of them came from at one point in time. And I am a dog person. I got six of them at the house. So, trust me, restricting dogs is not something I like doing. But the cross-country team.
Yeah.
They were having kids get bit. And, as I say, we're running through the woods. Of course, you know, it's different between somebody walking and somebody running. And all of a sudden, you run up on a dog by accident, and it just startles them. We can come back at any time and expand this one, if correct.
Well, I mean.
Also, you're not designating the map tonight. So at the next meeting, if you wanted to designate additional trails, like Boulder Forest, Fern Valley, you know, you could do that at that point.
So what are we establishing tonight?
Tonight, you're establishing the leash law ordinance. Basically, you're not designating the off-leash areas tonight.
All right, so, so the ordinance.
Four times.
Tonight, and then.
Times, that would require a change.
Yes.
So you're not doing times, so that wouldn't.
That's the one thing that I heard.
The problem with times is, no matter, sorry to interrupt, but if we say it's in the mornings and people say they want it in the afternoons. And I don't think we can win there.
And we have multiple areas where they can go out there and be outside of the fence at the dog park. There's four acres at the dog park across from the parking, and then there's. Okay, well, counting the fenced-in area here.
Nope.
Yeah, so you, you got the one along fifty-three, and then you got the one going over the hill.
The one at fifty-three is, does that, that's going to extend all the way down to the woods, correct?
At the dog park?
No, up at.
At the park, yes, that would go all up, that would be the first half of the field.
Entire area up there, that is.
That's four acres.
So you're talking ten total acres at this point?
It would be nine acres at the park, up at the front of the park, it'd be nine acres with the field in the stretch down fifty-three. That's nine acres. And then at the dog park, you have, I think, one and a half acres down along fifty-three, and then you go over the hill. As you're going down to the sandy beach, and I think that's about five, I think that's about between four and five acres. So there's about six or so acres.
Toss the ball, my red healer.
There, there are about six acres there, and then we're, we're, we have about two-point-eight miles of trails that we designated so far for off-leash.
Do you, do you see any, let me say this, I'm not, I, I think to Tim's question of, of timing and, and, you know, you stand the chance if you defer of someone getting bit. I'm, I'm okay, I think, probably saying, let's go ahead and pass the ordinance. But we need to have a discussion perhaps. I think there's enough open space there probably for, for people to utilize that for, you know, that. Sounded like most of people were concerned about the amount of trail space. So I, I think I could probably go for the ordinance if we can have.
And that's where we have a lot of our issues too, is on the trails.
So.
So that's where we need to really think.
Over where that line is in the eastern part of the trails that are not included, how much of that's in the frisbee golf course?
Right now?
Yeah.
None.
None of it's in the frisbee, none of it's in.
No, no, what I'm saying, just to the west of it.
If you move the line.
Yeah, if I, if you move the line a bit, because I've went out there and there's, were dogs out on those trails while I was playing frisbee golf.
Frisbee golf doesn't start till you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's room to add more over there if you need it.
Possibly, yeah. The reason why we chose that location is because there's a one place where you come in and off that trail, and we can have a one place where you say, off-leash or on-leash, yeah.
I'll say something, and Aaron may not agree with this. I did talk about one other location, but people would have to have their dogs on leash until they got there. Then they could take their dogs off-leash. It's this area down here that's on the other side, across the creek.
It's a, it's, that, we talked about that.
We talked about that. I mean, again, you come in by the pole barns, you'd have to keep your dog on leash going down the hill. And then once you cross Burke Creek, in this area here, you could have your dogs off-leash in that area. That's.
I think we didn't add that because you had to put them on leash first to get them there. And I think that was one of the, that was one of the concerns. The other places, you could go straight off, out of your car.
Would that change the text, would that, would that change the wording of the ordinance?
No, because, because the ordinance is, is what it is. The board would, at the later meeting, be approving the, the map that goes along with the ordinance.
And the board could change the map.
Yeah.
They could say, we want to, you know, more trails or less trails.
Change the ordinance, you have to re-advertise, right? I mean, and in a way, I think, you know, and I've talked about this before, and I understand that, you know, part of the goal is to provide a contained area where they can manage the dogs, you know. And so I always thought it was a bit restrictive. And then when you have people that use the park regularly, you know, limiting them to two-point-eight miles of trails when you have a park that has, how many miles?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two miles seems like a disservice to, to, to them because they can't explore and take their dogs in other parts of the trail as well, too. I'm also a dog owner. I personally like the idea of, you know, set times that, and that those times don't have to be the same times every day. So you could say, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it's mornings, and Tuesday, Thursdays, it's evenings. And, you know, and people know at that point in time, like, if you're afraid of dogs and, and you're concerned, which is absolutely understandable, then, you know, don't go, don't go at these times. You know, that's okay. If you're not afraid of them, then you can go at those times.
I'd be concerned that you're gonna have more violators if you have a moving target.
Yes, enforcement's gonna be a problem regardless. I mean, you're, you're, you're still gonna end up, the idea is to create a process where there's public awareness and there's mitigation. I mean, at fifty dollars, you have to get busted three times, basically. You know, how many ti, you know, you're, you're, you're maybe gonna target the one person who is just a total jerk, right? And is doing that, and that's great. You want to get rid of that one person, but you don't want to get rid of the freedoms that other people experience just for that one person. You know, from that standpoint, so.
Yeah.
I just, I think, I think times makes a lot of sense. I, I don't like the, I mean, it's not that I don't like the idea, but it would be very difficult and somewhat arbitrary to enforce. Well, you are a person who has shown control of your dog, and so therefore you have a special permit that lets you do this. I think that's difficult to enforce. I think it's relatively easy to enforce areas that are off-leash all the time. So you have this place to walk, and then certain times of the day when you can explore the rest of the park off-leash as well and have those adjusted. Personally, I think that meets kind of everybody's goals of being able to use the park when they want to use the park and feel safe to use the park.
So, so cue, cue, sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, if you're gonna do times, I would recommend morning times because kids are in there and most of them are in the afternoons. So that's, I think, and it's not as busy in the mornings. So if you're gonna do it, I would recommend eight to twelve or eleven, something. I would recommend mornings. And not on the weekends either, because we're really busy on the weekends. So I would do weekdays mornings if you're gonna do.
You're talking about five hundred kids on soccer field, softball field, seventy-five to a hundred running.
And maybe you're expanding, you know, maybe there are areas that are still specifically, you know, leashed areas.
I mean, that, that, that's the only issue I find with doing an afternoon unless you do it. And they're, but they're in the park until, I see, because I've talked about the lights being on, they're in the park till eight, nine o'clock.
Nine-thirty is when we turn the lights off. Yeah, I mean, I, 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 again, I think, you know, the, the people that were, are walking the trails with their dog on a regular basis, they're not hanging out necessarily at the fields per se. I mean, some of them do, they might go explore through that part. But also makes common sense regardless, if you're gonna be around a lot of other people, to go ahead and put your dog on a leash at that point in time. If there's gonna be a lot of other dogs running around. So there's some common sense aspect to that. Walking on trails where generally it's pretty isolated, you do come across a couple of people. But, you know, if you go on a, on a, on a walk in typical day, you might run across five or six people, maybe two of them have a dog, something like that. You know, expanding those areas, I think there could be more flexibility from that. I understand that it's, you know, it adds burden in a sense to animal control and to the sheriff's office and to you, Parks and Rec to enforce it, but I still think enforcement's gonna be a challenge no matter how you go about it. The only reason I recommend alternating times is, you know, some people work. So you just said Monday through Friday, eight to eleven, they're not gonna go, right? You know, they might be able to enjoy it at a later time, so. And that would be something that Parks and Rec could explore and talk about and say, well, would this make sense based on the feedback that we have? And I just, I would be concerned about using weekends for flexing times because of the amount of bits and rentals and everything we have on the weekends, that would be a concern. That's, I mean, I think that's, that's fair concern.
And, and devil's advocate with it when it comes to, you know, I know I talked about the times, the more we talk about it, you kind of weigh pros and cons. Starting to seem to maybe make more sense to me, and again, I know we can do this at later meetings, to say, at all times of the day, these certain portions of the park are open to people running. Maybe we consider expanding that, that, that area. But as far as enforcement, it seems to me it would be easier to say you're in the right, wrong part of the park off-leash rather than, well, you're, it's eight oh two and this ended at eight, but, you know, it's, it's.
What if you're way back on these trails, back at the river, and it's twenty minutes till your period's over? But I haven't seen anybody out here all day, or I thought it would take me less time.
You run that risk, right?
We're making something that's unmanageable. Yeah, right.
How many, how many miles are in that blue and purple trail up there below the park?
Yeah, Burke Heights, what do you think, Aaron?
That would be at least another two points, probably three. I've had to go down there with people in the fire department looking for folks.
Back there before, it's probably a good.
That's the best.
Yeah, going down to the creek, or you're going all the way on the back.
Well, going from the creek, then going up the hill.
Right there, so you can see all those lines right there together on that backside trail.
Nine thousand one hundred feet.
Two, so almost two miles.
Under, just under.
One point eight, so.
That would be four miles.
Yeah.
There's the average, we, we have to be considerate of the fact that the average citizen, in my opinion, there's so many things we do that we go, well, it's up to the people or not. But we're here representing them, and the average person, again, is putting, making sure their kids are fed and putting them to bed and blah, 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 all these different things that they've given us the charge to enhance their lives. And if we say, well, you should know that it's Monday at so-and-so time, but not Thursday, and I am not gonna know that. And, you know, and it's gonna make me, it's gonna make me less likely to meet whatever those rules are and more likely to go, I don't hardly ever see anybody out there anyway, so just catch me. I feel like just put a little bit more of a moving target for.
And there's only two creek crossings, so that's two signs that you'd have to put up beyond this.
That's why we, that's why.
Yeah.
What do you think about that, Aaron?
Yeah, we were, I was told Mr. Doll, when we did it, I'd be good with that area. It's just the only concern that I had, you have to leash them to get back there and then off-leash them.
It'd be a long ways to go to go check on them, sorry.
Well, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, and it doesn't, I mean, not as many people hike Burke Heights as they do the rest of the park.
Oh, and it's, it's not like we're gonna lock somebody up, you know, it's.
We're trying to educate people, trying to keep people safe.
Simple, simple cutoffs that you know where you are.
I think that's the larger point is that we are just trying to educate people to be responsible and respectful of other people there. You 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 know, again, we can say, well, times do this. You know, or just limit into this, does this? I mean, in some way or another, there's a restriction that's being imposed regardless, right? So, you know, at the end of the day, um, in my opinion, you're gonna see people that. They're not gonna pay attention to the fact that, oh, my time is up in eight minutes and I'm all the way back here. They're gonna keep the dog off leash, but they're a responsible owner. You know, when they see, oh, there's a lot of mountain bikers coming in here, they're probably gonna put it on a leash at that point in time, because they know that. There's a possibility that staff comes in and says, hey, don't do this.
There are many people that don't even take a leash with them. And we've run over that, too. There are many people that. Says it's off leash. I don't need a leash. I don't even take one with me. And that that's an issue with those people. So I mean, it's not everybody.
I'm just trying to get down to what the people, the citizens that are the people who put us here. What's most manageable and understandable for them? What makes them most likely for success? And I think if you, whatever it is we do, if you create a moving target. Which times is, times certain days and so on. And I think we could. Uh, get the first part of that. If we said we're gonna make it associated with the particular trails. Then we could get the first part of this done tonight. And move on to.
I think it's important that we have this because. I think there's more people use the park and the trails that go out there without a dog. Than go out there with a dog. And and there's some people that are deathly scared of a dog, even a Chihuahua scare them. And I don't want to have people that don't use the park. For the fear that there's dogs out there running wild. At least if we put it in the areas. Then they can go where they know dogs will be on a leash. And if you're not afraid of dogs running wild, you go into those other areas. So I think both people, both parties, dog owners and non-dog owners can win. With the zones.
So it sounds like we want to go forward with the ordinance tonight. That sets the clock on the thirty days. I think we have enough meetings in the next two weeks. And we can probably hammer out this set, this extra part of the trail. So, um, we can probably, you got a a motion here. Um, I moved that the board of supervisors approved the ordinance to amend the Plowana County Code to enact section four dash two dash five. To prohibit dogs from running unrestricted within the boundaries of the property owned, leased, controlled, or operated by the county with exemptions for. I dogs within designated off-leash areas. I I service dogs. Number three, law enforcement canines, and number four, dogs and county-approved off-leash events.
I'll second.
Motion, the motion made by Mr. Goode, seconded by Mr. Hodge. All those who say aye. Any who say no? Chair votes yes, so passes five to zero. And I'm I'm gonna say to the citizens who stuck around through hours of this tonight to do this, thank you. And, uh, really good comments that did affect what we did tonight.
Yeah, and they waited a long time. So you know, it's important to them. And I can tell you, I wouldn't have brought up what I brought up if you hadn't come out. So, thank you.
All right, we're going to. Uh, Children's Services Act Semiannual Report, Mr. Muller.
I'm getting bored. Um, I know it's been a very long meeting. It's very, very interesting meeting, and that preceded a. Previous meeting that was also quite, uh, unique with its content. So I will try to breathe as brief as possible. Normally, this is a presentation that I do in November and December to talk about how things were going in the previous fiscal year. But I deferred it this year because we do have new board members. Uh, and I want to be able to give them as much information as possible about the Children's Services Act. Because as I tell a lot of people, this is one of the largest human services programs in the state that you've never heard about. So, um, typically at this meeting or in my, um, meeting in November, December. I typically talk about how we did last year from a fiscal, from a financial perspective. So last year. We were, um, uh, given approximately three million dollars to, or yeah, three, three million dollars. To perform the acts that we're supposed to do, which is to provide funding for service plans for youth that are at risk of being placed. Outside of their house, either by, because they have to enter foster care or residential treatment. Uh, as well as being able to provide funding for youth that need to be educated outside our public school systems. Because our school system cannot adequately meet their needs in order to be, for them to be adequately educated. So last year, the board, um, gave us about three million dollars to make that mission happen. Um, I'm pleased to say that we did not use anywhere near that. We used approximately a little over two and a half million dollars of that. Um, leaving approximately four hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, left over, uh, as a surplus. Compare that to last year or the year before that in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we actually spent twenty-one thousand dollars than we did in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Now, I want to mention that in those in, um, in those years, costs are going up. Private day schools are going up on an average fifteen percent year over year. Um, and that is our largest expense of, um, funding or the items that we fund through CSA. But that's also, um, rates for all of our other providers, our mentors, our counselors, um. Our foster care agencies, those rates are going up on an average of eight to nine percent. And in spite of all of that, despite the fact that we, the our numbers, our number of youth that we are serving in the county are relatively stable. We still spent less. So we're continuing, we continue to work smarter and not harder. Next slide. And what you had, what we see here is a trend of spending, um, year over year for about the past, um, fourteen, uh, fiscal years. And as you can see, um, up until about fiscal year twenty seventeen, our costs were out of control. Um, fiscal year eighteen is when, um, I came and took this position. And since then, we've been able to contain costs extraordinary, extremely well. Um, on average, we've been able to maintain relatively stable around the two and a half million dollar mark, which for locality, our size. And the number of youth that we serve is actually pretty impressive. Go to next slide. But how are those spent? How is that spending going? Uh, how are the spending trends going to look? That, um, trend line that you see there is average monthly spending over the past fifteen months. And as you can see, it's actually starting to decrease a little bit. And again, keep in mind. Number of youth we're spend or we're works, working with continues to remain relatively the same. Costs are starting to go up, but we're still finding ways, uh, to work smarter, not harder, and find savings, um, year after year. Next slide. But I I also wanted to give you a comparison as how we work with other, compared to other counties, because our. Every locality has its own CSA program. They have their own local policies, their own local procedures, their own philosophies over. Uh, which which youth they should serve and which ones that they feel, um, do not quite need the help with CSA yet. And as you can see here, on terms of, um, the amount we spend or number of youth we serve. We are very high for our population. The only number, the ones that come closer are Louisa and Orange County, and they have larger populations than we do. So we're actually trying, uh, we have a philosophy here of trying to help as many youth as possible with as many revenue streams as we have available to us. Um, but despite that, uh, we're also have one of the lowest per capita spending amounts. So, um, for every child that we spend here, we spend on average twenty-one thousand dollars. If you look at all of our neighbors, Alamo County is almost twice that. Buckingham County is exact, is twice what we spend. Um, year after year, the one only one that comes even close to how, uh, efficiently we're spending is Cumberland County. And they only work with maybe sixteen percent, um, of what we serve. So our system is designed to, or our program here is designed to be extremely efficient. Extremely cost-effective while being able to work with as many youth as possible, which, uh, from a state perspective. Is a little bit on, a little bit unusual, but you can see the number of work. Next slide. Um, and again, this is good because the need for it is not decreasing. The number of youth that we serve year over year continues to increase. When I took this position back in August of twenty seventeen, we were working with sixty-five children. Currently, we are now working with a hundred eighteen children each, uh, year. That is almost double the amount in a six-year period. Um, before that, the number increases we would see year after year would be about maybe five, six percent. Not this fifty percent that we've been seeing in only six years. Um, but despite that, we are, we are seeing an increase compared to last year. We're already working with eight, uh, nine percent more kids than we were the previous year. So there's definitely a a need out there. I would love to work myself out of a job to where we say we never need that. But it's gonna be a while before that happens. All right, next slide. Um, but just giving you of how that works, I just want to give you the long-term plan that was created by our community policy and management team. This is the team that actually creates the local, uh, policies for Flavanna County, as well as approves all funding. That is being requested for all of our youth that we currently serve. So we've got four goals. The first one is, is to improve parent participation. In fact, our family assessment and planning team, that's where a lot of the heavy lifting gets done for these service plans. That is where the plans are developed. That is where, um, the, um, are consists of the, um, members from each core agency, which consists of our. Community Services Board, our School District, Social Services, and our Court Services Unit. But they've come with staff that work directly with these families that really know what the needs are for these families are. The challenge we have is we really need that, we we need a, um, the best subject expert for that youth to come to those meetings. That's the parent. Right now, parent participation is extraordinarily low. Um, in the past, these five, six years, we've had maybe. Average between eighteen to twenty percent of our student, of our meetings. So. At any fat meeting, for every five cases that we see, we have one parent actually attend. We need more parents to be more involved and engaged in what we're providing their youth, because if we can get them engaged. They can be, they're more invested in the success of what we're providing as well as success of their youth. And that, um, improves the, um, the effectiveness of the services we're providing. And allows them to be or cause them to be in those services for a lesser period of time, saving money. As well as providing better outcomes for our, uh, families in the short and the long term. Um, what we're also doing that is also work to increase financial support to our families. Way I define, or metaphor I use when you talk about CSA is we have two buckets of of things we serve or fund. One is services, one is supports. Um, if we, if you imagine, uh, everything, the child to be like a potted plant, services. Uh, provide the food, the water, the air, the sun needed for that plant to grow. But if it's in a pot, it can only grow, but so big because of the size of the pot. Supports provide that bandwidth, that extra, um, that extra, um, opportunity. Needed for those families to be more engaged in those services we're funding. It expands the size of the pot. We're not, we, right now, we're not expanding those pots enough. We're not providing enough supports to our families. Um, that provide, that would give them better access, more opportunity to be participate in what we're funding. A third one is to increase the scope of population served. As you can see, we're already working a lot of, with a lot of our, our youth here in Flavanna County, a lot more. Um, compared to a lot of our other localities, but we can always work with more. There are other, plenty of opportunities because especially, um, when we're talking with younger youth, children between the ages of four and twelve. If we can identify problems and issues with youth and family at that younger, at that age. Then it's, uh, if we can divert them for even more expensive and more complicated issues, they have to resolve with more services, more supports. And more funding when they become adolescents. So that's been a big focus with us. And the last one is, again, to increase awareness and involvement in both regional statewide issues and state legislation impacting CSA. CSA is legislation. It gets, uh, it gets attempted to be modified every year. There are other parts of legislation from other core agencies that impact what we fund and what we can provide. It is important, I feel, for all localities in Virginia to have a voice in how that is crafted by, through the General Assembly. Right now, there is, I feel, an anemic level of participation on a state level from all localities. And so one I think I would like to work on, as well as our CPMT. Is to increase Flavanna County's voice in having a say in how this legislation is crafted, because again. The people that think about this stuff all the time are TSA coordinators in every locality. So if you look at that statewide, there are a hundred thirty of us, hundred thirty people that think about this. Forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year. Outside of that. Not many people, there's not much focus on that, at most ten hours a month. So we would be the subject experts. We would know what would be optimal for these, uh, for this legislation. Or what piece of legislation would work and what would actually, uh, hamper us. I'd like Flavanna County to, um, have their voice be. Recognized and heard more often in the Journal Assembly when it comes to CSA, you know, that matters related to that. So again, I've taken up a lot, I've taken up a good amount of your time. I know it's almost ten o'clock, so I want to thank you all for your time with this. Um, um, but before I do, I want to see if anyone had any questions about this. I know we have two new members here. Um, one of them is, uh, the board's representative on CPMT, and he's already had a good, uh, onboarding session with me on this. So I'm looking forward to, uh, how he contributes to our first meeting next Tuesday.
I have, I have, of course, if you go back two slides. On the top bit, that's the comparison for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Is the bottom one supposed to be fiscal year twenty-four? So this year?
Uh, yes, that's the type of my apologies. That should be fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
So with those numbers, are we on track to serve the same number of youth that around about?
We are actually on track to actually, um, serve more this year than last, than last fiscal year. Um, I mean, we always have youth coming into our program and youth that are leaving our program. Um, but historically, we usually see youth leave the pro, when we see youth leave the program. Um, is usually around February, March or whatnot. But by this time, we don't see the increases that we have now. So the numbers we see now might go down a little, might go down a little bit. But honestly, I think we're gonna see a higher, a higher cap census than, um, this, you know, this fiscal year compared to fiscal year twenty-three.
And my next question was for Eric. So when, um, Mr. Muller does not use all his funds, let's go back in the general fund.
They do, and remember, um, what what's the percentage of state to local funds?
Thank you. Forgot to mention that. So again, all this, all this funding is not, um, or the responsibility for this funding is not, uh. Falls contract totally on the shoulders of Flavanna account. Uh, there is a state portion that funds this, that, um, we get reimbursed for. Uh, the base is about sixty-two cents. So basically, for every dollar we spend, we get about sixty-two cents back. Um, in reality, we get a lot more back because we actually are incentivized to use, uh, community-based services. That are get paid, that'll get reimbursed at a higher rate. So our real, so our real reimbursement rate is closer to forty cents.
I've got two things. Well, three things. Number one, Abrams Academy, does that help? Uh, cut problems off sometime, I shouldn't say it that way, but does that help us avoid? Some of our commitment in CSA.
We feel that Abrams Academy is a u, is a useful, um, component of addressing that. But, uh, it is not the only, it is not the only component.
I'm not saying that, but that helps us, because when you talk about y'all are the only people to think about this, no. These guys are just getting their, uh, their first taste of it. Uh, what are they, about the third highest money getter? Besides Sheriff's Department and school system? Well, I mean, take away our, our, our individual budgets, but individually.
And social services up there, too.
And social services, but I'm saying that's one of our big money things that we have to think about. So. Just a lot of money can be spent really quick in CSA if we don't work with them and try to cut problems off.
The best thing I'm saying.
And I already, and I already work with, uh, several staff members there, um, practically, uh, practically full-time. Uh, with items that are CSA-related. Um, I would assert that there are components to the Abrams Academy that are underutilized. That, uh, that if I provide adequate funding and staffing, could really address a lot of the issues related to. Uh, related to, uh, some of the, the highest expenditure that we have year after year, which is private day placements. Um, in that, um, in that three million or two and a half million dollars that I talked about, one point two million of that was spent just for private day schools. Almost forty percent for private day schools. And, uh, in terms of, uh, percentage that's spent. On, um, our, our annual budget, that's a low amount for a lot of localities.
And and I think that's the one thing I'm saying is when they start talking about that program up there. It saves us money in the long run, what we invest there, because a one private day placement can be as much as what, two hundred thousand dollars?
About a hundred ten, a hundred twenty thousand dollars for our higher, our higher needs. On average, it's about sixty-five thousand dollars. So last year.
Well, hang on, I got one more question. The thirty-first, the first. And the second, I can't remember which days it is. We have our county government days that. The legislature, will you please let us know? You talk about your voice. I try to go down there and be heard as much as I can by our representatives. Please let me know what it is important to you and I'll pass it on.
Okay, Eric, you okay with that?
You got it. Same here. I I talked to our state senator and delegate.
We have, we talk to them a lot, so.
So CPMT is, so 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 just to just to respond to that, since it's really quick, CPMT is going to be meeting on the twenty-third. Um, but usually I bring up a legislative update with that, on, uh, on that. Um, I'd be happy to meet with you all, uh, later next week to, um, discuss what came out of CPMT and see, uh, what I'm, well, what. Uh, could be taken with you during those legislative days.
I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be tough for me to have time with the allotment of jobs. I hate to say it that way, but email me. Cause I will look at it, look it over and I will go forward with it.
Very good. Thank you.
Did you find that, um, last fiscal year, we funded, um, a mental health coordinator schools? Does that helped with the program somewhat?
At this point, it's a little too early uh to determine because typically when a position like that is or is created, the first two to three years is uh done over the um is taken up primarily by assessment, um planning or our design program design and then rolling out the program. Um the historically, mental health services and mental health positions in the or share say themselves infrastructure in the school has been very understaffed, and that is mainly because the schools have struggled to really adequately uh staff um positions that have been open for one, two, in some cases, three or four years. Um downgrading the position so that you can expand the pool qualified applicants has not worked. Um trying to read uh rewrite the description in a way that becomes more appealing to applicants has not worked. So I think um so we are talking about bringing someone in that's coming into looking at a system in the schools that has never ever been fully uh staffed, never been fully actualized. Um and then figuring out what is going to work best on there. So any gains that are going to come from the mental health coordinator, I think, will be coming forward. But I think it's going to be another at least one to two years before we actually see um our returns with that in terms of decreased CSA spending.
When that came up last year, if you remember, I said I asked, okay, so if we create that position with the schools, and if you remember, you advocated for that position. I said, then that doesn't that mean that that should reduce some of the funding on your side and whatever your response was to eventually, I understand. That if if it's three years to start seeing the return, just to see it, that's gonna that would I mean, if it is what it is, I mean, that's just the way it is, but to double to to give to this pot, you know, we're giving to this pot. And then, hey, if you give this pot, it should take away from this pot. Then for a number of years to have both pots and and not see one affect the other in the way that the hope was when we funded it, then that's just going to concern me that we've kind of doubled, we double funded without getting the the benefit on the on the first side that we're hoping for.
And I do rec and I do recognize that concern now. It's to go from uh to be able to like, like I say, take the savings from one pot uh uh are and apply it directly to another would be extremely effective were there a roadmap already in place, were there already a plan already in place. The problem is is that there really is no roadmap at this current time with Flannan County Public Schools in terms of developing the mental health infrastructure. Um and the all the coordinator would would have done was to be given this roadmap and to actually execute it. Um so right now, they're acting in terms of roadmap, they're acting as sort of a cartographer for that. They've got some ideas, they've got some, they've got staff in there that know what they're doing, and I should know because I work with them very closely on a day-to-day basis. Um but there is still a lot of uh of work to be done. Uh question is, what to what extent do they what extent of they need more additional support uh from a mental health and behavior health perspective um that they don't already have. Uh and I think those are big questions that our mental health coordinator is currently attempting to figure out because, again, we don't know what we don't know. And it's their job to try and figure out what is going to what is going to um what we do need to um figure out in order to uh get that pot to start to shrink.
So I don't I don't at all mean as in I got as I got you at all because it could sound like that, but I I feel like we didn't discuss that multi-year roadmap last year when this came up and when we talked about, well, you should be able to take from here if you're giving here. And uh again, I just as a as one person involved, I hope I hope when that prediction comes true, you let us know.
Abs- absolutely. I'm looking forward to it also. Um like I said, in terms of that funding spot, the pool that we use for the lot of those youth that are eligible for special education. Yeah, we are currently the fifth largest consumer of that in the in the entire Commonwealth. That includes a locality such as Fairfax, which has one thousand kids. That includes City Richmond, which has four hundred ninety-six kids. That includes uh Virginia Beach, which has three hundred twelve kids. Um those those are the size of the colleges we're talking about that use more wraparound funding than our than our modest county. So I would love to see it go down because I I know for a fact that there are going to be state agencies, they're going to start looking at that and going, well, why are they using it so much now of these other localities? So.
And I and I what we don't want is to have spent it, not see the results and then lose it. So start something that doesn't produce results and then you end up losing it. And so I think it's going to be important at some point for those results to create the sustainability of the schools having a program.
Interestingly enough, we actually get more money the more we the more we use. Um so the state agency that handles all this, the Office of Children's Services, um takes a look at uh how much is funding of that is used in the past three years, take an average of that and then allocate that much money to our locality. Um when two years ago, we were getting being allocated approximately seventy-eight thousand. This past year, we've been allocated a hundred seventy-six thousand. Is that going to be enough for what we're for what we're currently funding? Absolutely not, but as of right now, we are looking like uh to have a decreased amount of spending this year fiscal year compared to the uh two hundred eighty thousand that we actually spent last year.
I think another important part of that is, I mean, you've said it takes some time to build the program. But I think what's part of that discussion also includes the fact that you know, is that earlier intervention, that earlier capturing and identification. Talked a little bit about that at the time of, you know, really kind of having the feet on the ground at the high school with that. And with the mental health coordinator working in conjunction with the teachers to get that intervention sooner than later, that's really where if you can capture it earlier on, you can save not just in CSA, but potentially in, you know, sometimes it's, yeah, they get they get in trouble as well, too. So, you know, they end up in jail or you know, they end up in other programs as well. So, you know, they act out because they're having a mental health crisis of some sort or another. And uh trying to identify that's pretty important. So there's an intangible aspect that, you know, it's not just about the dollars. It's also about the quality of the service that's being delivered.
I do agree with that, but it it was the dollars that was specifically said to us of the the rate of return on one side, if you spend on the other.
Yeah.
So with that said, of in in addition to other indicators, as one voter on this, I'm going to be looking for that to be true. Just just playing that. Did that happen? And what how far into it? Does it need to be for it to be justified? To where before you start getting an ROI specifically on the dollars. I I was on CPMT for years and so and I I understand the softer sides of this.
It's in the school budget. It's in the school budget. So it's, in other words, it's in the budget at the school level. So it's the school board that have to come back to us and say, we don't want that position.
No, I I can decide how much that how much that is.
What they're asking, but.
No, I understand, but I can underfund by that amount. They can decide what they want to do with it.
Well, that that's right. They can. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I say.
As as a voting board member, if I don't start seeing what was sold to me a year ago of the financial return on investment on that, I will be one board member uh that will it will affect my vote for the schools budget.
One thing I will mention, and it also has an impact on this, is service capacity. That is how many private providers are out there that will serve Flannan County to provide mental behavioral health services for Flarn- Flannan County residents. And that's critical because some of them are indeed nonprofits. Um so um I do know that there you have heard some nonprofits uh this uh tonight to talk about some of their needs from a mental behavioral health issue. Um I would like to assert that CSA is the um one is is almost like the living definition of public-private partnership. And.
Man, or up for once. I apologize.
I got I make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven. Sorry, just didn't want to get us.
Second that.
No problem, no problem.
I made a motion in Mr. Hod's second.
Uh Mr. Sheridan made a motion, Mr. Hyde seconded all. Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against the chair votes aye. Okay, that's five to zero.
Uh sorry. My only thing I will say about that is going to be when you're talking about dealing with teenagers, every one of us there has been a parent. Mr. Go is having a whole lot of fun right now. I see him out there playing with Snowpuff and Little Rascal. But it's not like dealing with machinery. If you're dealing with a air conditioning unit, if it's running fine, it's running at one price. If it's broken, it runs in another. If it hasn't, that'd be the only thing I would say to you know, but we're we're going way past this conversation by talking about budget already. But that would be my one thing I would say. It's going to be really tough for us to sit here and go, well, this is a defense ball. Anyway.
Well, I I hear you, and I'm not the one who said that last year. That meaning that came to us. And so.
What was it? I think that was the most that was paid in CSA in the last ten years.
Uh three point two million dollars. That would have been that would have been in fiscal year twenty-seventeen.
A lot of difference.
Now, the other thing I'll keep in mind also is that uh is that the amount of spending that you're seeing uh doesn't also does not count for inflation. So that's not real dollars. So the amount that you're seeing for fiscal year seventeen would probably be approximately eight to ten percent higher in twenty-twenty-three dollars. So if you're looking, if you're preparing, if we're preparing apples to apples.
Be thirty-three percent.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's a good.
Exactly.
You like that.
Oh, yeah.
Just come with a bass and gun next time.
Any uh any other thoughts and questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Like hearing you talk about how it's going to be lower and not higher. There's been many times people have come back in here and asked for three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars more than what we had put in there when you have to dig in the general fund for that.
Yeah.
And getting back three to four hundred thousand dollars is a much better feeling.
Yeah, anyone can spend like a drunken sailor. It's this wise man that makes the dollars go the farthest and serves the customers and your people and get the services that you need. And I and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
We got a long, great, whole consent agenda.
Yeah, I mean, that's all we got left, isn't it? Well.
I mean, he motioned to eleven, so I felt like he was going to pick up.
Look, I've been around y'all a long time. I don't like keeping to make continue making motions. I almost wanted to do ten fifteen.
Yeah.
But, you know, I want to keep.
We can always quit early.
Exactly.
Do we have to read off every item on the consent?
It's not required.
There's anybody else.
That's what I think we just. Does anybody want to pull it? Um and only item I I pull is J.
Playground accessibility?
Yeah, so I talked to both Eric and Bunky today. And in the case of the fire controls, that was a break. So they had a an issue happen. Pleasant Grove, they had a break. And um as far as the well, as far as the playground goes, you know, I I asked Bunky, is that something that you're in jeopardy on right now? Um and what has changed between the last budget season? So why not just put it in in the budget if nothing has changed? And his honest answer was really, there's not been a law or a policy that's changed or anything. Um while they have had a couple more kids come in that have some needs. And so the reality is, is that they are likely within the law and code and so on on these. And it's how much was?
Forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
Now, here's my question. This isn't money that we're supplying. This is out of their capital reserve maintenance fund. So you're telling me you want to put it into CIP when you talk about savings for budget time? I I that's my question.
So why wouldn't you when it that way, it's not a reactionary item, it's a same spend.
It's under it's under fifty thousand dollars versus CIP is fifty thousand dollars. It's under fifty thousand dollars. CIP is over fifty thousand dollars. So that's one reason.
In this money we've set.
Wait a couple of months, it might be over fifty.
But wouldn't we set aside? If if there's a trend of setting aside less, wouldn't we set aside less? In other words, don't we use higher numbers to determine how much we should put in?
Are for the capital reserve maintenance, we totally underfunded.
It's.
It's not even close to.
No, but I'm just asking, how do we get to the number?
It's 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 a flat amount every year.
Fifty, two hundred or three hundred?
It's, I think, schools are two hundred, counties two fifty.
Yeah, one of them's two and one of them's two fifty. I couldn't remember which one's which. And I think theirs is at
one thousand right now. This is out of our capital reserve.
What's that?
It's.
No, this is. Yeah, this is for this is for um playgrounds at the school. This the schools. Is is the C uh capital reserve that the schools hold, is there any matching funds or is that strictly county?
That's all county.
And if there's anything left over in their capital reserve, does it come back to the county?
No, every year.
It just keeps rolling and they can do improvement.
It's deferred maintenance.
It's the rainy day fund.
It's a deferred maintenance fund. Basically, you know that in twenty years, you're going to have to paint this room.
Yeah, Wayne Stevens talked to me about that when I started with the county.
Cool scout capital reserve allocate carryover was two hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred from FY twenty-three. FY twenty-four, we allowed them two hundred thousand.
At four fifty-eight.
Yeah, yeah. And it's been twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand has been taken away and four thousand put back.
I think this is a good use if they think they need it.
I think this is when we leave, let them make that call.
Let's do it. That's all I have to say.
All right. Uh I make a motion that we approve the uh consent agenda as as presented. Yep, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Sheridan makes a motion, Mr. Go makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, five to zero.
I'm gonna bring up one thing. I'm not sure it's old business and new business. I brought it up one time before, but I think it's something worth talking about. Hang on. Yeah, where it does. I'm sorry. Apologize, Mr. Chairman. But uh speed cameras. I see the sheriff back there in the back. Do you mind if we ask him something about possibly doing that in the school zones? Because I know right now we have a limited amount of deputies and they're doing a great job. I mean, Deputy Herndon's sitting out there blocking me every time I come through in front of Sarah. Here is Brook Elementary with his little handheld radar gun.
So I I'm okay with it.
Is this under you or all? I mean, we talked about it before, so that's why I said, you know, we haven't talked about it in a while and never talked about it with the two of y'all.
Sheriff, would you?
Would you like to address that? Probably possibly.
So while he's coming up, I'll tell you, he and I talked about this the other day. And I my inclination was to be looking for facts that would justify um how it would affect the numbers historically, how what they've done in other municipalities. Um and and one of the questions I asked Eric, sorry to jump ahead of you.
Nope.
Sheriff asked was um that um do we know what tickets that are written in Flannan are in school zones? And I think the answer was not really always so well defined.
Not real clear to be able to track it like that. Um when Mr. Sheridan brought that up, I think it was last year.
Yeah, Blue Line.
Yeah, Blue Line, Blue Line.
They're always at Daco. It's a group that comes and speaks to us at breakfast.
And uh and we and speaking with some other sheriffs that are using the program, they're really pleased with the program. So uh if the board should so choose to have them come and do a speed study in our school zones and do a presentation to you all, it would be at no cost to you whatsoever.
Uh and I will tell you, when you talk about this, and I'm not going to bring up too much because I know I probably would say more than I'm supposed to. I was literally driving down the mile-long straight stretch right before you get to Caris Brook. And I'm just driving the bus down there. It's the last day of school before Thanksgiving break. I'm sitting here thinking about going hunting the next day. All of a sudden, I hear and I went, what the world? I looked in my rearview mirror. Little Fast and Furious cars in the process of passing three tractor trailers and two school buses. And right as it comes around to the the actual curve itself, past the double line, he whips it back in front of me. And so he's in between me and the bus in front of me and I reading his license plate was not an option. But it happened to be one of his officers were sitting there blocking the exit lane for Caris Brook. And I leaned out the window. I said, go get him. He just passed me another bus and three tractor trailers. And he went and I know that's one.
Were you his driving school teacher?
No, no, I absolutely was not. Although.
Right. And we don't get to uh to do the radar in the school zones as much as we should because we're usually helping with the traffic.
Okay, are the is it the SROs that would run the radar?
No, no, no. The SROs are helping uh at the entrances to the schools. And the the road deputies, when they're not on a call for service, they're they're asked to go and help like at the high schools, the biggest one getting getting the vehicles.
Yeah.
And this is just a guess on my part. And it's going to be unfathomable for us that went to school here when we were kids and rode the school bus. I'll bet you two hundred parents drop off at each school.
Oh, yeah.
Somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred parents. And then you add in three. Somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred parents. And then you add in three or four hundred drivers at the high school. That's why the high school, I tell the kids, that's the worst place to drive in the afternoon in Fluvano County.
I'd say let's allow it if it's no cost, if it's important.
If it's free and gives us information, yeah. I mean, it would, it would be a, a study that we wouldn't be able to perform for you all. Uh, they have the specialized equipment that they would set up and, and, uh, and do, like I say, I don't know anything.
They, they can tell you more about it than I can or them.
I really, I really can't tell you much about it other than I know the other sheriffs that are utilizing it in their school zones talk very highly of it. Especially.
They, they referred to it in three phases. The first one was gathering information. The second one, educating. So if you're caught speeding through that school zone at fifty miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone, you get warned. Then if it continues after a certain amount of time, you, you're not warned.
So let's, does everybody agree, let's, um, see if they'll come give us a presentation?
I think it would be well worthwhile. I've listened to them a couple of times.
Are you wanting to get it in during this budget season or do we wanna crowd up the schedule?
I, I, all I have to do is, uh, send an email and, and they will come and, and set up and do the study and.
How long's the study?
Uh, I, I would imagine a few weeks. They could probably have something for you, but is it, is this a good time for you to hear? And you've got a lot, a lot on your agenda.
That was my point. We've got a lot going on.
Right, you can tell me when it suits y'all best. You say April, I'll say, hey, can you come do this in April?
Sheriff, you would probably be helpful just to understand like what the presentation or what amount of time they need. It's probably what would be good to understand because if it's, if they fit it in under ten minutes or is it a half now or is it something more?
I imagine if they've gone to other boards and done it, it's probably within the normal limits, but I can, I'll double check that for you. Absolutely.
Because we could fit it in during a regular meeting.
It doesn't need to be during budget time because.
Yeah, it's either revenue producing or revenue neutral.
Well, yeah, I mean, i- if I remember hearing it, again, they're not doing it for free. They, they make money on it. And I think they take a percentage of the
The tickets.
Of the tickets that are written for it. And then locality gets burnt and then the company gets.
So it's not important that it's during the budget season?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's, let's just.
Defer until May. I'll try to set up something in May before school gets out.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
That would start it all.
And again, if you're talking about budget season, you know, we may not have a good gauge after so many months of really what it would bring in if.
Well, if they, if, if, if the sheriff, I mean, if they just do the study for free.
Yeah.
What's the harm in saying, do the study, you know, when convenient, present, obviously we want to do it during school time, you know, school season. Uh, so they present whenever the board schedule allows, but they'll have to study that.
Yeah, I, I think the purpose of it should be the safety of drivers and kids and not be revenue focused.
I don't disagree with that, but I, I, I'm just saying that from a budget perspective.
That's the way that they approach it is trying to educate just to make it. These guys are all retired police officers, if I, if I remember correctly. Without further ado.
And you need, there's one other thing I need to check with on VDOT. At, at one point, this was a while ago, the board authorized VDOT to do a, a study to determine if they could drop the speed limits in front of school zones, I thought, down to twenty-five.
Only one we're not twenty-five at is the high school.
Maybe that's one of them.
The high school's thirty-five.
There was a state code change last year or the year before where localities could drop it to twenty-five.
Yep.
But VDOT interpreted that to be only Arlington and RICO that had their own road systems. So there's another bill in this general assembly. Say any locality can drop the speed limit to twenty-five in areas after a speed.
One thing about the high school is they're far enough off the road. It's not really affecting kids. It's just the cars that are pulling out. And we've got officers that are standing there to stop traffic.
Right. So what are we saying we wanna do?
I wouldn't mind doing the speed.
So they'll do the study without coming in front of the board?
Pardon?
You don't know, probably. They'll do the study without coming in front of the board first?
No, the, the, uh, the email that I got, uh, after a phone call was, you know, that they would be glad to come and do the study. Uh, set up the equipment and come here and do a presentation on how they do business. And what were the speeds in your school zone during those times?
How about if I just work with the sheriff and, and see what, what the study, what the presentation looks like and then we'll, we'll bring it to the board accordingly based upon, you know, is it, is it ten minutes, is it a half now and something more in depth or something like that?
Yeah, cause they've, I mean, I'm telling you, I've listened to it before at VACO at breakfast. They come in at breakfast and while we're eating ten minute plans. They tell you what to do, why to do it.
Um, I have something I, and boy, I hate to bring it up at this time, but through the coming months, it's just gonna be every time, not associated with this, uh, sheriff. So thank you. So the solar hearings we've had, and that being a hot subject lately. I like what Appomattox has done in restricting it uh, utility scale out of, uh, A1, out of agriculture. And only allowing it in industrial. And it's giving them time to, to figure out what's going on, what the good, bad and the ugly is. And, um, and it gives clarity for those companies that are not gonna waste a lot of money coming in front of us. So I would like to know more, I, I mean, maybe we can say tonight just what the process would be for us to enact that and, um.
Well, if you, if you recall, I asked that, uh, if we were gonna do this, you know, presentation for the last group that we had, another group come in, another meeting present. Um, so that, uh, it was industry experts, not necessarily, uh, you know, a person that was putting in the, the process, but Dominion, uh, Nature Conservancy, a couple of the, of those other folks that could present to us so that we got additional facts. I, I personally didn't think that, um, some of the presentations that were made the other day were, uh, were really representative of the solar industry in general. Uh, so I didn't feel like I have enough information to make a decision based on, you know, what was presented then. And certainly, you know, it is a ongoing issue. Energy, right there, um, that we have to address. Uh, um, and so I'd like to know more and I'd like to see these other groups present, uh, as well too. So before we move forward with looking at zoning changes, I think it's important that we do that.
Would that change the nature of solar in itself? Solar to me seems less agricultural and more industrial.
It's, it's a totally different thing, right? I mean, you're talking about changing the land used into industrial, which has a higher tax revenue base to begin with, which is mine. There's nothing wrong with that.
According to commissioner revenue, both of them have the same tax rate. It's how it's assessed.
They have the same tax rate. It's how it's assessed, right? The value. So for example, agricultural is zoned at, I mean, is assessed at about four thousand dollars. Industrial is assessed at about a hundred thousand dollars per acre. Right? So there's a much higher tax burden. Now, that can be good for the county. I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing. On the other hand, we have very little land that is already set for industrial. So part of the process is that, you know, you'd have to go through a process of rezoning. And you'd have to do that. And then you have to ask yourself the question, if we resone to industrial, now you actually have another use that could be done for that unless that was, you know, limited by special use permit.
This is true.
Do that, so.
But I mean, some of the larger, uh, farms coming in, the actual landowners making in the tens of thousands per month.
I, I'd like to see how Appomattox wrote it, what, what, exactly what they're, what they enacted. And, um, and I hear you, Tony. So we, I said, and we've, I've said this each time we've talked about this. When we heard from the first group, I said, there's really almost nobody you can find who's in the middle. It's gonna just be hard to find balance in this conversation. And so then we heard from the second group to try to give balance. Well, you know, I felt like the first group was, uh, pro-solar. And therefore not all their information was, uh, valid while they brought some good points. You feel like this group, not everything they said was valid?
I thought some of them presented good. Some of them I thought were pretty biased.
And that's what I was gonna say. So, but they brought some good points. And now we're gonna go for a third group to come in front of us. And Dominion certainly has published gobs of pro-stuff that they're gonna do in solar. So how could we find that there, now, we're now looking for somebody in the middle?
So Dominion, Nature Conservancy, you know, that's certainly somebody, it's, it is, and this was part of the discussion that was had at VACO, it is really a very complex problem, you know, to meet these energy demands. It is not, you know, just, you know, about solar. It's about the alternative energies. Um, you know, when we talk about solar today, the efficiency levels of the solar panels today are not the efficiency levels of the solar panels tomorrow.
Yeah.
I was reading an article saying that there's a, you know, now technology's coming out where there's things that they can improve it by almost a thousand percent. You know, what does that mean in terms of the actual production? How's that gonna be done? How are they gonna meet the energy demands right now? Um, uh, I think I was reading an article today that basically said, oh, I think it was Sam Altman, who's the guy who came up with OpenAI. He said, we don't have the energy to meet AI's demands right now. It just doesn't, we don't have enough energy because it demands that much. So you could argue, you know, it's almost a, uh, uh, important from the perspective of if you wanna be in the forefront of AI, which you could look at as a security, you know, tool, right? Um, that we meet those energy. So I think it's important that we, you know, understand why is it that Dominion is pushing for this? Where are their sources coming from? How are you gonna get to that? What are the challenges that they have? Likewise, Nature Conservancy can come in and say, well, here's how we've seen better practices. Here's where we've seen agri-sol tip, you know, agri-voltig opportunities. Here are the companies that we think are doing a good job with that. You know, so there's lots of different ways to get that information and then make the decision rather than just saying, how do we come up with a way to restrict it to begin with?
But, but, but see, that's, that's what I'm saying. When, when we're, now we're talking about instead of companies that come up with ways to restrict it, and we got companies that are talking about for it. And we're now having a conversation again about why solar might be good and why we wanna be potentially for it. And that's, this is just gonna keep on.
I mean, we do ask for that presentation. I asked for that presentation. I think it's only appropriate that, you know, we have that presentation. So I didn't, I was not in favor of that presentation, as you know, because it's being brought by a group of individuals and not by industry experts per se. And I'm sorry, a planning commissioner is not an expert on solar necessarily, right?
The, the guy that runs, uh, nuclear for probably the world's largest testing.
Still not necessarily an expert on solar.
That's what we're, we're.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
And this is something that I don't know if we can ask, but we can ask and they can tell us though. How long ago did we put in the, that Sebeck put into two? The fifty acres and thirty, or fifty-two acres into forty-eight acres or whatever?
The, the one by Cunningham was put in there.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the first ones. Remember the governor came up to Zions Crossroads with us? Is that about ten years now? I was a chairman, so yeah.
I would say it was like fifteen as well.
Okay, well, however long it is, we've got a sample size. What I would like to know is something we don't know and, I mean, we saw examples of absolutely the worst. I'm sorry, but it looked like they dropped bowling balls through their fricking solar panels. How many of those solar panels have broken? Oh, and I, I mean, and I'm not talking about the chain that makes it tilt. I'm talking about the actual panels that had to be replaced. That's something that we could ask that's tangible, that's tangible.
Right.
Of, that they got the one at Shannon Hill and the one at Palmer. And Sebeck's the one that has both of them. They're both about fifty acres. They're both five megawatts. And so that's just, I, I'm just thinking in my head, we wanna have something concrete. Everything we've talked about has been superficial. Okay, the Lord. I, unquote, unquote, not industry experts. So that's fine. This is something where we can ask that's in our county.
Well, and I mean, I think, you know, that, you know, a lot of, we have received a lot of good information, a lot of information that says, you know, if you're gonna do this in your maintenance agreements or in your agreement, siting agreements, that you specify these particular rules that you specify. Here's how you have to recycle your panels. I mean, there are, there is a lot that is being brought forward to say, how can we do this better, right?
I'm, I'm not even going there. I'm just talking about, just find out how many have broken. We've had hailstorms. We've had tornadoes go through Fluvano County the last eight years. We've had all those natural disasters go through. How many, how many of those panels have had to be replaced? If it's twenty, if it's ten, we're, we're, that's not the ten thousand that we're.
I agree, I could give a, a, a small portion of the information. While at the same time, we have a small, one that's not even, um, at Cunningham, that's not even, uh, u- utility grade or utility scale. That had a almost forty thousand dollar, uh, fine on erosion. The next county over, there's a sixteen hundred acre solar farm. That's the poster child of the county for. So if we had one solar farm in Fluvano or two that didn't have erosion issues, and we looked at those and you see, that's with the panels, are we looking?
I'm not talking about erosion. I'm talking about, I know.
Hail damage.
I'm talking about one of the concerns, hail damage. Um, we could go off that, but then we have another concern, environmental, and it's just, so I, I'll, I'll just say that I believe this could go back and forth for a long time. Let's get the safety net in place. It takes some of the pressure off of us to learn.
It's not a safety net. It's just another hurdle that you're creating in order to make it so that it doesn't happen. That's not actually a safety net. The safety net is in the site and agreements. It's in the process that you're doing it. I mean, if you wanna create roadblocks, that's fine. You're creating a roadblock, but I wouldn't refer that as saying it's a safety.
We would disagree.
You know, here we as a board have that opportunity.
Conversation for another place.
We have that opportunity. To be a special use permit.
I agree. It's a conversation for another place.
Special use permit.
The conversation I'm having is putting this, what I feel to be protection in place to allow us the time to figure some of those things out, but.
Well, and yeah, and I, I, I know I've talked to you about this before, back when I was on the planning commission. I think there's also a, a, you know, we often, first off, I think we're sometimes looking for answers that we're never gonna get and that only history can provide when it comes to some of these things. Um, so, you know, when we toss around, should we have more groups come in? Should we have this? Should we have that? I mean, we're gonna do what we're gonna do, but at the end of the day, I don't think any of us are gonna feel like whether, I think all of us probably sit or lean one way or another on this. I don't think anybody's gonna come in that's gonna present something that's gonna make it be like, boom, damn, there's my emphatic moment. I know I feel better about this, or I feel worse about this, or that proves my point, or this proves my point. My second thing is, I think you have to look at it too from a, from a local perspective on, sometimes I have to take a step back and remind myself what our duties are here at the local level and, and, and it's, there's nothing in the comprehensive plan about it. There's nothing, you know, right now, we're basically just considering special use permits as they're applied and as they come in. And, you know, we would have had something on the agenda. Here we are having this conversation. And we could have had something on the agenda had the developer not decided to defer until March. We would have had something on the agenda probably tonight or last week. And instead we had a working, second working session. And I don't, I don't know particularly why the developer deferred. But my concern would be that we don't, we haven't, if we're gonna have it, not saying we should or shouldn't, okay? If we're gonna have it, doesn't it make sense to take a step back a little bit and say, maybe, maybe we start with more small scale. If that's the route we wanna go, maybe it's not, maybe it's nothing. Maybe it's utility scale everywhere. I don't know, but I think we need to have a conversation, especially with the comp plan that we're working on. And that can probably ease some of the fears. I think there's probably people you could go to in the county that if you told them that it was at least somewhat limited, that they might not be as hysterical about it as, as, as they are, as they are currently, because they know that it's, right now, it's just, hey, if the, if you've got a board up there that's gonna, that's gonna vote special use permits here, there and everywhere for solar, then you could see amounts and amounts of it. There's, some of our local counties have said, we're only setting aside this much land in these areas for these things. And to Chris's point, maybe that is a, uh, one, or maybe that is industrial and not agricultural. I don't, I don't know. I think we can also look at what some other counties have done and really have that conversation about where we wanna go. I, I think my stance on this is I would caution against i- 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 I would probably be led to defer anything before we have those conversations.
I've, I've, I've heard one person talk about it at VACO. And they were like, well, you know, we put a limit of three percent. That's how much land you could put in.
I think that would, if, if those conversations would, people are most fearful that we're just kinda going into this head on and not having good conversations about it. And I can tell you, we tried to have some conversations on the planning commission. I, they, they gained a little bit of track. Um, I feel good that we're starting to have these conversations here because I wa- I was fearful that we were gonna start sort of peeling out back these layers before we ever addressed it on the front end. I, I felt like it was a cart before the horse issue.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that. I, I think that, you know, that it is a learning process, right? I mean, you know, the, the, to, to me, the objection that I had about the group that came in was that it was a non-expert group. And I think that that opens the door when you bring groups in that have, you know, an agenda, if you would, for a work session. So that was my objection.
Yeah.
Now, there were, you know, the guy from the Soil Conservation District, you know, he's an expert. I don't have any objection to that. You know, a guy on a planning commission, I don't know that I would qualify. You know, a guy on a planning commission, I don't know that I would qualify him as an expert. And I don't know that a guy who is throwing out information that is kind of scare tactics saying. Oh, look at these industrial, I mean, I'm sorry, solar accidents that just happened. When he was doing that, I Googled how many industrial accidents happen per year? I mean, or per per month, it was like eight hundred per month industrial accidents throughout the United States. So, you know. It it's, it's just, you know, it's one of those things that anybody can come up with reasons why you shouldn't, as you pointed out, you know, should. And you can come up with a decision, but getting informed, putting in place the agreements. Understanding how those agreements should be made. Um, understanding how like the sighting and how the buffers are gonna be. Those were all good points that were raised.
I mean.
There's, there's a solar farm going in, uh, maybe I just realized it was a solar farm, but right on two fifty in Almaro County, there's a big solar farm running right there.
Right down from the antique shop?
Right, right near that area right there. No, I don't think it's the antique shop, but I think it's a little further up.
Okay.
I think the antique shop. You can barely see it, you just go through it. You're not gonna be able to see.
I rode by and I knew exactly what that was.
Yeah, you can see it today, you can see it today, but.
And I would argue that in Fluvano, that's not an artery. I mean, I wouldn't say that's a main artery, obviously, but I mean, it's, it's, it's. They're gonna have to plant some trees to hide that thing.
They definitely, you know, and that's, I'm sure, part of what you would do in your signing agreement, go for that. I personally would love to see agrivoltig be a bigger part. I mean, at the end of the day, if you are able to tap a renewable source, you know. With very low cost and with the idea that, you know, yes, it is going to get better and better and better from a technology standpoint. That's a plus. That's a big plus for everybody, you know.
I've got two big things that weigh on my mind. Um, we're not in Texas, so we're all part of the national grid. And my, and my thinking is, why aren't you putting these in deserts? Or in brown sites where you're not affecting the agricultural land. And the second one, you have to remember, I've just went through a campaign for a whole year. Listening to citizens and my opponent, nature nurture.
Sure.
So whether you got him or me, we both are acutely aware. You know, I think of the people I talk to, I know them and the people that supported me, but the people that supported him were not overly. For seeing solar go in. I went to the Fork Union event. And that was not a room full of people, go solar.
I can tell you what the sentiment is in my district and 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 if 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 the. Comprehensive plan is a representation of the, what the people want to see as far as growth in the county. I mean, I. I've had my ear to the ground for for a year straight there and and even more than that. So on the solar stuff, um. You know, at least in my district for a while now, and um I'm not so sure that they're. Like I said, I think there's a fears that it's gonna be, um. It's gonna be runaway. It's it's it's, you know, um, and I think you heard that in Jason's speech, and I would argue that. You know, that I know Skylar, the Energy Right guy that came and spoke, solar companies literally pay him to come give those presentations. I don't know that there's any entity that's able to pay experts to come say why. Solar is bad. So I think there, I agree with you, Tony. I think there was probably some digging deep in there to say, how can we get somebody that's. Had some, at least some experience with this. Um, and um. Like I said, I I I think that there's, I don't wanna say a ground swell. There's a group of people that that have concerns with this and um. I think uh uh putting the cart before the horse makes, makes matters a lot worse.
I will just, I'm gonna say one last thing. That was the one thing and Mr. Gunn walked away and told me at the end. He didn't even get to talk about what he wanted to come up here and try to help us educate us about, and that was soil erosion. That was the things that you do to keep this stuff from happening. You know, uh, so that it wasn't so much that he was pro solar, the questions we asked led it that way. And the other fellow that came with him, well, he was pro solar. Period. That's the governor's guy. And uh, but he wanted to talk to us about citing agreements. He wanted to talk to us about runoff, retention ponds and everything else. The things that you have to do in order to protect the land.
Yep.
To keep the bad crap from happening. But no company wants to get fined. You don't wanna get fined a hundred thousand dollars for not following something. I I I'm just saying it in that direction.
Our solar and erosion fines are weak. Roger goes out all the time, puts a stop work order on, we fine him forty-five bucks, and guess what? They send the workers home for three days and come back and wait till Friday afternoon, clear more trees, plow more land under. And on Monday, it happens again. We give them another forty-five dollars. So Southern Development, Solar Energy, it doesn't matter who they are. That's baked into their cost of goods.
With the EPA, this must be the one. Who is it that's bringing these huge? DQ, DQ is bringing these huge fines.
Yeah. So.
But you have to get them out.
If I could bring us back to what I, I'm sorry, but.
Well, I'm I'm done.
If I could bring us back to the thing that I started with. Which is, again, we we, we would sit here and do this till two A M.
Yes.
Probably make no ground. And um. My point is, is to put something in place that, in my opinion. Gets some of the pressure off of us, puts a pause on it where we can, not only us, how much are we gonna figure this stuff out? This industry and municipalities are figuring a lot out quickly through experience. And um, I'm saying, I'm suggesting we put something in place. That gives more time for this conversation.
I agree. I I think there's room to go down the industrial question. Because most of these leases for these solar things are thirty years or more. So if you rezone to I, and at the end of the thirty years, you come back to some board in the future and wanna take it back to A, so be it.
Or it doesn't get rezone.
Or it doesn't get rezone.
Zone and it becomes something else, right?
And that's why I'm curious about how Appomattox did it, because did, did Appomattox restrict it to industrial zones? I think that's what happened.
Well. Two things. One is, you know, at the end of the day, the purpose of the public hearing is exactly for us to hear these different things, you know. What's being informed is important. Having biases is normal. Second, you know, the reason that the solar company is here is because there's a landowner who wishes to do something with their land. Right? That's, that's why they're there. They're, they're being offered money to use their land in a certain way.
But if we.
You know, now, I'm just, let me finish, okay? I know that we all love to say, hey, let's keep this all rural and pretty and all that nice, okay? Understand that. But I also am gonna say that, you know, if that same piece of land was being used for, you know, use this example again, a pig farm. Okay, the neighbors would have no say in it at all.
Exactly.
The person can do it. So, you know, at the end of the day, we have what, two, maybe three people that are trying to present with, to us about their objectives, their plans. For a solar opportunity in this county. It's not runaway yet. You know, doesn't mean that we don't gather more information in the process. But I don't think that we just run away and say, oh, let's throw up roadblocks, because every, every. One that is presented is going through a public hearing. And every one of us gets to vote on that. And whether we vote yes or no, it doesn't matter.
So why have zoning? If, if that's gonna be the case, if everything would have to go through the board. And why have growth zones and all this? Because it goes in front of the board, so why do all that? I don't mean to sarcastically, I know it sounds like, but why do all this setting things in place? Isn't zoning a barrier?
If it's agriculture one with special use permit, it's a little bit smaller of a barrier. Now you're gonna go for industrial with special use permit for. You know, uh, the the solar.
But whatever you wanna do.
Right.
It is a barrier.
Yeah, and it's a higher cost.
And so we, we put barriers in place to help. Prevent outside. Sources from changing our neighborhood, our community.
You know, I.
And and so I'm, I'm talking about a barrier that protects us, but I'll I'll stop, we'll go on.
You know, I I think that one of the things that we always need to ask ourselves, and I mean, it was said today as well too, is it's my view. Right? Well, it's not your view, you don't own that land there. You just happen to be able to look over it now and enjoy it the way you see it. If you own that land, then it is your view. Okay.
Did you go for the solar in Zion's Crossroads?
I did not. And there was a very specific reason I did not, right? Which is.
You're, you're, for your reason.
But no, I get, but the reason was it was generating zero revenue for us, and it was being put right in the middle of where we were investing. To bring in industry and it was tying up sixty-five acres or something like that for thirty years, and I thought that was a terrible investment for the county.
A terrible use of somebody else's.
Terrible investment for the county.
Now, if we, if we did go down the, in uh putting it with a special use permit and industrial. It would preclude it from going in the areas that we designate as rural preservation, would it not?
I mean, I mean.
Depends on your draft of ordinance, I mean. Yeah, usually you can't do industrial and rural preservation.
Yeah.
So you would, that would basically not allow solar at all in rural preservation.
But with it being A one with a special use, you could put it in that rural preservation.
Since, you know, in the locality I worked in prior, we had, you know, ordinance, you couldn't have solar, you know, and. Um, the rural preservation area. We we had that in citing policy and in the comp plan. So they, you know, so I mean, you can do stuff like that as well.
Should I, so I can make a motion during this new business, right?
They haven't, they haven't looked into it, they haven't done anything.
That's what I, that was what I was gonna ask was. How we get staff, how we. I mean, how we get down to that, that at least three of the five are wanna ask staff.
Uh, to start a zoning text amendment, either. Um, the planning commission passes a resolution or the board passes a resolution to start the process. So to do that, we'd have to put a resolution on future agenda.
I mean.
Or a plant commission would have to put it on.
Is there something that the board wants us to start looking into? And 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 again, if there's a majority of the board that wants us to look into it.
It'll have McQuack night, Chris, in the fifth hour of our meeting.
No, but. Well, so first of all, what meeting between now and April do you think is gonna end earlier? And I'm not, but that's not what I'm talking about doing. I would like to ask staff to pursue what Appomattox. Uh, has done, what statutes.
Looking to what, what they.
Yeah, cuz we're, we're, as far as how it would work and all this, we're just, and whether it would just be industrial zones or whatever, they've already invented the wheel. And they're, they are, they're in a, a similar county that's within a short distance. That's why I asked, so we can get past all this. How I should handle it, because if it was to a vote, I would want there to be a motion. Saying that we do that. That we pursue what Appomattox has done.
Explore is a a a CTA or an ordinance?
Just exploring. I think, I think just exploring what they're doing generally, generally speaking, for sure.
One county.
What I would suggest is.
I would agree, yeah.
Yeah, what I would suggest is that we make that part of that third presentation that we're gonna have with these other folks there and.
So can I make a motion as this chair?
No.
You have to step down.
You do have to hand me.
Just step down for a minute.
We wanna do it?
One thing, one quick point though, we did have a motion at the November fifteenth meeting to have a third work session as by the. With Farm Bureau, so just point that we have.
Well, Farm Bureau and other.
Farm Bureau.
I, I know, it's Farm Bureau, so if we're gonna have.
Bureau and other organizations.
So you're gonna pick which one you wanna hear?
The problem right now is for the next.
Somebody said Farm Bureau. Since then, I've put up Nature Conservancy.
The problem is for the next three months, I mean, we don't really have any time for another work session like this, because every, between every meeting. Unless we do, well, no, I mean, we basically have work sessions and board meetings every single week. In the days we have regular meetings, we have work sessions generally before or after.
Um, I make a motion. That we um, find out. Everything that staff find out everything they can about what. Uh, the county of Appomattox enacted regarding. Solar and A one.
Second. So we got a motion made by Mr. Fairchild, seconded by Mr. Goode.
Uh, but.
Uh, are there any comments or questions?
I would suggest that we or or amend the motion to include other counties and how they've approached zoning as well too.
And I don't know if we need, I don't know, I've got the gavel now, big guy.
Somebody might do.
I don't know if we need a motion just to do this, to ask them to bring us back information about it. That's more of a head nod thing, correct? Making a motion means we wanna bring back and enact exactly what they're doing.
That, that's what I want, exactly that. And because how, I don't wanna find out then what Campbell County and Charlotte County. And where do we stop this? I specifically find that to be a model I wanna know more about and, and if I would like to vote for that.
Essentially, are you looking to see what type of policy?
Yes. Not necessarily to adopt, I I wanna know more about.
Well, because that's what I'm saying, we don't need a motion to do that. If you get three head nuts to look at what they do, that's all you need. You don't need a motion. If you're making a motion, that's almost saying we're gonna adopt it.
I mean.
Presented a staff presentation. Say, here is what, here's the ordinance, I mean, I could look at right now what Appomattox passed.
Right.
Here's what, here's what Appomattox passed. And um, here are the steps they took to pass. I'm not sure they have a policy also or if they've changed the ordinance. But yes, staff would just, I would present it.
Well, and you don't know what the impact.
That, that's not, but I don't wanna know what the impact was. But if I have to make it as a motion though, then you can do that as.
No, that's the point of a presentation. The point of a presentation is so that we get information, right?
And find out more about solar for more people who have thoughts and opinions based upon where they fall in the industry. We will do this till.
As Mr. Wood pointed out, a motion has been made, that staff has been in in told to make a presentation, including other groups. So we will have that, right?
Yeah, but as far as this, this is why I want it to be, I want it to be a motion. I I I wanna, I I'm asking for, cuz we're just gonna keep going through this and and the lines of where. Where I think it should be are gonna be blurred by where somebody else thinks it should be.
But you don't wanna know what the impact of that zoning change was? You just wanna know how they did the zoning change? I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
I mean, the impact is they haven't had solar since they passed it. I think that's probably what he's trying to get at.
Yeah, dude, from last year to now, know what the impact was.
Well, I don't know.
And we can debate that.
Well, timeout, you just told Mr. Moller, he had to know what the impact was.
It within three years.
No, 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 you said I need to know this year, cuz you did it.
Yeah.
No, that's what Mr. Moller said.
I did, I didn't say that. And he made a present.
All right, nevermind.
I want us to do the thing.
All right, I've got a motion made by Mr. Fairchild, I got a motion seconded by Mr. Goode. All in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. Motion passes three two, cuz I don't think we'd box ourselves into one. Think we need to. Look at more than just one. We don't just pick the one that we.
And you need to know the impact.
Correct, but even when they bring the information back, we still have the option to approve, deny or defer.
I, I look.
I mean, it's pretty easy. Hey, you just got us new zola, you're gonna have to do I one. I don't know.
All right, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, wait, uh, cuz we're wasting. Oh, we gotta do public comments.
He wants to speak about solar.
I don't think so.
I think he's gotten tired and stretching his legs cuz he wants us to be.
All right, we got a motion, you made a motion?
No, we gotta do public comment.
Open a public.
Open, uh.
Public comment.
We will now move to our second round of public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board should come to the podium, state your name and address. Not even gonna read the rest. Would you, would you like to talk about solar? Okay. Saying, saying none. We will close the first, uh, the second round of public comments.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made by Mr. Sheridan, I think seconded first by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Chair votes aye.